No, you can do both. You can do both. Thank you.
I'll see as long as like 10, you know, about 10 minutes from now there won't be any parking in D.C.
Should they text you or do you want to go out? Yes, and I talked to Susan also on Thursday.
Rosalyn?
Yep.
Yes, sorry.
It's okay. Good morning. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting for September 26th to order. Rule call.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy. And Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the minutes of September 19th. So you need a motion?
There you go.
That's okay. Okay, please vote. Okay, that's an abstention. It passed. Okay, because you were absent. Okay, agenda review. Michael?
Thank you, Chair Zaragoza. Item 17, health gradency, VCMC. Authorization for the purchasing agent to reallocate funds approved for Ansaas software support, a nurse scheduling system provided by McKesson Technologies. A board letter has been submitted. Item 21, Sheriff's Office. Approval of contract number 7668 for the Sheriff's Civil Division Software and Services with Teliosoft, Inc. Agenda page six was revised to include recommendation number two. Finally, item 24, CEO's Office. Review and adopt guiding principles to end homelessness and affirm that county programs, activities, and investments in ending homelessness be reviewed by the countywide coordinating council. Board letter and exhibit one have been submitted. And that's it.
Thank you. Board members, any changes, concerns, and so forth? Okay, we still need a motion to approve. Motion by Long and second by Foy. Please vote. Thank you, and that's approved. And our next item is moment of inspiration by Melissa Livingston, Human Services Agency and Chief Deputy Director Jim McGee, Red Cross, Chief Executive Officer for the Central California Region. Welcome. Red Cross has done an excellent job for us, you know, throughout this different hurricanes and disasters and earthquakes, and welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Board, really nice to see you guys. First of all, on a personal note, I just want to thank Supervisor Bennett and all of you for honoring my wife after her passing back in June 7th. Joining the meeting in her memory, it meant a lot. I just want to thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
So it's really my honor today to provide a few inspiring comments along with my friend and Board Chair, Melissa Livingston. As you mentioned, Supervisor, the Red Cross has been active not only supporting our community here locally but also across the country. And I'd like to share a few names of residents from your districts who have given up either two weeks or four weeks of their lives in leaving their families to go and deploy both to Texas and Florida. I'll be following up with an email so that you'll have their contact information and names in case you want to do any additional follow-up. But I think it's just really inspiring to know that people are willing to not only serve their local communities but to serve friends and families across the country in really tough circumstances. So from Moore Park, Narita Cassu, who traveled to Texas and is now home after a two-week deployment. Sue Engler, a longtime volunteer way back Hurricane Katrina, from Thousand Oaks, who deployed to Texas. John Davis, here from Ventura, actually a staff member who deployed to Texas and led a large operation around the Information and Planning Unit. Brian Nims from Oxnard, actually drove one of our emergency response vehicles from Camarillo all the way to Florida. Very proud of him. Kelly Bessa Tolo, also from Ventura. I just spoke with her. She originally deployed to Puerto Rico, was diverted to Florida, and is now driving down to the Keys to lead all of the event-based volunteer work in the Keys now that we're handling recovery from Hurricane Irma. Luis Gomez from Oxnard, who was deployed to Texas. Javier Suarez from Ventura, also deployed to Texas and joined Brian Nims in that cross-country emergency response vehicle tour. Charlotte Henshaw from Moore Park, who was deployed to South Carolina in support of the work around Hurricane Irma. Mike Alaska from Ventura, who deployed to Florida. And a familiar name, Eleanor Guzik, who has been recognized as one of the top Red Cross volunteers over the last 20 years, started with us with Hurricane Irma. She was supporting for four weeks the fires in Northern California and Oregon and deployed to Texas. So she's now been gone for six weeks. And another thing I'll mention is we have a staff member from Santa Barbara, John Kurt Russell, who found his way to the Red Cross through 9/11 and now is deployed to Texas coming home today. And I mentioned some of our longtime volunteers who really built the Red Cross story during Hurricane Katrina or even unprecedented events like 9/11. And it's just great to be part of an organization where there's not just such tremendous sacrifice, but they're building kind of their own stories that we can share here that are going to impact others. And as we are now onboarding hundreds of new volunteers from this community, hundreds of people are calling and showing up at our offices wanting to go. To be able to put people like John and Eleanor in front of them and for them to be able to share their stories and talk about how those experiences shaped their lives and really built kind of a commitment to volunteerism and service, it's a really special thing. So I'll be following up with information with these folks in case you want to reach out. We are going to be hosting welcome, welcome home events in November, and we'll share those dates with you if you or anyone from your office would like to come. Not only is it just a great way to thank kind of these individuals for their service, but also the hundreds of volunteers that are here at home that are holding down the fort, you know, still doing amazing work. And I can share with you in my many years here, your presence and your thank yous make a big difference for them and their families and their service. So thanks for listening. Thanks for caring.
Thank you, Jim. Melissa?
Good morning. It's somewhat ironic that this is National Preparedness Month, and we have our good friend Kevin McGowan here to speak to that. But recognizing that, what a better time to talk about disaster and disaster relief. In the wake of Hurricane Harvey, Irma, Maria, the earthquake in Mexico, and the wildfires that we've been experiencing, I'm not sure your board is aware, but pretty much since July of this year, we've had our Red Crossers, boots on the ground, dealing with wildfires. And during that time, we recognized that our volunteer base was stretched very thinly addressing those wildfires. And now with the wake of the hurricanes and the deployment of staff, we're recognizing the value of the role that our Red Crossers play, our staff and our volunteers, and the need to augment our resources as it relates to building a stronger Red Cross through our volunteer network. And so I wanted to share with you that there's roles when people deploy. And as Jim said, there's roles for the deployment of actually boots on ground at the location as well as here virtually back home with lots of work to do. But some of the roles that people play when they are deployed is they're interacting with government officials. And in some instances, like Jim may be doing for a future deployment, because the deployments are going to continue for months, he may be creating respite for some of his colleagues that are exhausted from the events and working long days over weeks at a time. And the ability to bring in our resources who know the operations and can keep things going is providing respite is very helpful. Our Red Cross volunteers are also working with a number of our disaster partners. They're working with faith-based organizations and nonprofits in order to support the activities and events. And most importantly, delivering supplies that are most important for the comfort and care of individuals while they are in shelters and standing up shelters and managing the shelters and sometimes being at risk themselves. I'm not sure if you saw some of the news coverage, but some of our shelters flooded. And there we had people that we had rescued from floods, and there our Red Crossers were in those shelters dealing with floods even within the shelters themselves. So coming out, providing hope, care, and comfort to those victims of disasters, our volunteers and staff also put their lives at risk. Last week, Gail McGovern, the President and CEO of Red Cross, sent a thank you letter to all staff and volunteers. And I want to share with you the data that came from that letter. It was a very heartfelt extension of her appreciation for the work of all of the Red Crossers. But the data that came out of that shows the enormity of this event, and I wanted to share of these multiple events. And I wanted to share that with you. That over the last four weeks and working with community partners, more than 5,300 dedicated Red Crossers have provided over 985,000 overnight stays in eight states, Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands. They've served over more than 3.6 million meals and snacks, and they've distributed over 1 million relief items and comfort kits. These numbers are staggering. It's truly amazing and valuable, the work that our Red Crossers are doing, boots on the ground in these locations. And we want to thank them for that. But at the same time, we want to recognize that we have volunteers here at home who are doing the daily Red Cross work. They're still collecting blood. They're still reaching out to our vets. They're communicating and calling to try to connect relatives of those who have not, who have lost contact with those that were impacted by the earthquake in Mexico City. So there's still a lot of work going on locally that we want to make sure that we celebrate and we recognize. And so lastly, I would also like to say that, you know, we would like, when things like this, our community comes together. And so for anyone who's listening, there are some things that people can do to step up. We've had a number of organizations throw some fundraisers, extend themselves, saying, "What can I do to help?" And here are some things you can do to help. Our community comes around, becomes resilient at these times, and want to offer a helping hand. And so you can give a gift. You can also educate yourself and go out and visit the Red Cross site and download some of the apps. And those apps help you become more educated and aware about disaster response and emergency preparedness. You can also attend this week's September 28th fair here at our county grounds where our Office of Emergency Services is sponsoring a preparedness fair to help educate our community. And lastly, you can make a difference in saving someone's lives by becoming a Red Cross volunteer. So we thank you for your support this morning.
Thank you.
And we also plan a welcoming home event in the fall, and we'll be engaging you all in that to provide special thanks to those who have been deployed.
Thank you, Jim and Melissa. You know, I really commend the Red Cross because if anything happens, whether it's putting up a smoke detector or somebody had a fire in one of our cities and/or to a hurricane, as you mentioned, also to earthquakes, you're there, the Red Cross. You can pick up the phone and you can count on the Red Cross for assistance and help. And you, Melissa, you know, have done an excellent job here for representing Ventura County and also helping in the communities. And Jim, you know, the leaders of the Red Cross, we commend you tremendously and thank you so much. And you said about contacting people. I was listening to the news yesterday. Some people in Puerto Rico have not contacted their relatives because of the lack of cell communication and so forth. And the folks over in Mexico City with the earthquake. And we just recently had a fire here, what, yesterday or so here in Los Angeles, you know. So I just want to commend you for the excellent work that you're doing for the community and the Red Cross throughout the world, for that matter.
I remember hearing also that there is actually a town in Mexico called Zaragoza. I didn't know that. But they are also damaged with the earthquake. But I just want to thank you for what you do. And really, we are so fortunate to have the American Red Cross. I know a lot of us would love to be able to go out there and help the victims and help them recover. And I was delighted when my daughter, between high school and college, decided to go to the Katrina through the American Red Cross and help the survivors there. But that you provide the training and you get them so that they are able to go out there and do that and do the good work. I know I had to twist her arm to actually now go to college. You need to leave and go to college. But there, I think it's such a wonderful experience for people who do volunteer, and it is so needed and so appreciated. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much for sharing this morning. Thank you. Okay, our next item is item seven. That's a consent of gen. Items 11 to 21. Any concerns or changes from or if not from the board? If not, we need a motion. Got a first and a second? Please vote. And that is approved. Our next item is public comments, and I have one speaker card. And speaker card is Kevin McCollin. Going to talk about... Some help is coming, right, Kevin?
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, board members. Mr. Powers, thank you for the opportunity to give a little presentation this morning or speak about our Ventura County Readiness Preparedness Fair. That's going to be on Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. First, I'd like to recognize the Red Cross and all the great work they've been doing recently. I would like to emphasize that a lot of what we do is successful because of a whole community approach to emergency preparedness, response, and recovery. And we wouldn't have that whole community if we didn't have all the volunteers that do such a significant amount of work when we're responding to and recovering from all the different hazards that we face in Ventura County. So special thanks to them and then all the other volunteer groups out there. In recognition of National Preparedness Month, which is every September, we're hosting a Preparedness Fair in the courtyard between the Hall of Administration and the Hall of Justice with 11 other organizations. And it's a great opportunity for people to come out and learn information about how they can prepare. They can make a kit, develop a plan, stay informed, seek training, and then also get involved. So a lot of the organizations that will be there will have opportunities for people to sign up to be volunteers with the Red Cross or other organizations. And lastly, we will, with a special donation from the Sheriff's Foundation, we have a couple of iPads that will be able to be raffled off by the Sheriff's Foundation that will be filled with all kinds of disaster applications that give people information from FEMA and local sources such as Ready VC and then also volunteer groups. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Kevin. And I think it's really important, too, that we convey to the public about earthquake preparedness. You know, because as you know, I think the Mexico earthquake is really a warning to us, you know, because what you're saying is not when, but it will happen.
Yeah, it's not if, but when.
There you go.
And we're definitely a county that faces a lot of hazards, earthquakes, floods, fires. We're at the peak of fire season now, so we're definitely always looking for ways for people to stay informed by signing up for our VC Alert program and then also visiting readyventuracounty.org or downloading our mobile app, Ready VC. And they can find all kinds of information on how they can be prepared for not just earthquakes but all the different hazards that we face.
And the other one, too, that's really important is the tsunami. Because, you know, with that earthquake, within we have the tsunami. So I know that we have a tsunami zone here in Ventura County that people need to understand that we do have that. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Chair Zaragoza. I was just going to mention also that I believe Kevin is going to work with SCAG and Dr. Lucy Jones as well on earthquake preparedness throughout countywide.
Yeah, it's been a great program. And we're actually going to have an update at our next emergency planning council on the efforts for how that Dr. Lucy Jones Foundation is partnering with SCAG and how we as a county can participate in that program.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Our next item is our board comments.
Yes, and a segue towards that, a hearing from Mr. McCollin. You realize that what Lucy Jones was bringing forward regarding earthquake preparedness, having people understand what it can do to your economy. You know, if you can't take a shower for a few weeks, you're going to leave town. You know, that businesses can't stay if they don't have the infrastructure. It's just so important that we do what we can to bolster that so that we don't end up in a situation where not only, you know, imperiling people's lives and property but also our economy. I attended a few events that I'll report on. One, I have a quick PowerPoint on. They had a ribbon cutting for the Old Meadows Center in Thousand Oaks, a park there, for a project that our Board of Supervisors donated some funds to. And if you recall, it was called the Dreamcatcher Playground, and it is a playground designed specifically for children with autism. If you could go to the next slide. So these are just some of the slides that show, and you can go ahead and do them with about one every few seconds. But it just shows the equipment that they purchased. And it's just so nice to see that the community came together. There were many volunteers that brought, that contributed funds. And as you see, they made it in a way that really is friendly for kids, give them comfort in that area. And it was just interesting to hear about the design elements that went into place. So we are delighted to be a part of that. And there's a big plaque recognition up on the walls there that mentions the county of Ventura also. We looked at, in terms of autism, that it is found that it is more prevalent in children who come from high-income families. They don't know why that is the case. But it is pretty fitting that it is out in the second district, which has higher incomes than other areas and probably a higher proportion of autistic children. Additionally, after that wonderful event, I attended this Casa Cano MAC meeting. And Senator Stern, who attended the Dreamcatcher ribbon cutting, also came to that. And the municipal advisory council was so pleased to get a state-of-the-state report from the senator. And I know at our next meeting, Assembly Member Irwin will be attending, too, and something the MACs really appreciate. We also had a supervisor, Zaragoza and I, were at the last LAFCO meeting where finally, after probably dozens of hearings, the North Bank Project was approved. One of the last holdouts for getting that approval was the concern for water in Ventura. They are really low there, and there was concern whether there would be sufficient water in the long term. So we made sure to let the LAFCO commissioners know about the water workshop that the board's having today at 1:30. And then Thursday was another big day. We had, I was able to attend with Supervisor Long, and I think Mr. Powers, too, on the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund event. And it's wonderful to see the contributions that we've given to the Ventura County Housing Trust are being put into helping people get homes. So that's exactly what we want there. It was a night of competing events. We had the Santa Rosa Valley MAC going that night as well as the Association of Water Agencies. So it's a time when we're all pretty busy. I also attended the American Association of University Women, AAUW, annual breakfast and got to hear their good works that they're doing. And then got to be at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy till about 11 o'clock last night. So nice and fresh this morning. I would ask that the Board of Supervisors pose in honor of the people on this list. And I just want to call out one individual. This is Richard Allen King. Richard Allen King was the owner of King's Barbershop in Newberry Park. And it states that he died peacefully and with conscious intention at the age of 87 on August 21st during the solar eclipse surrounded by his loving family. Mr. King served with the Marine Infantry in Korea. And on May 27th, 1951, he was awarded the Bronze Star for Heroic Achievement. And I know he will be very much missed. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. The two things I'd like to quickly point out is, one, we had a tragedy in Ojai yesterday, Topa Topa School. A large branch fell on a teacher and three students. And two of them are in critical condition. And certainly, our sympathies go out to the teacher and the three students and their families and then also everybody at Topa Topa School, the children and everything else. School is closed today there. And it's a tough situation. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we have here in the county of Ventura a lot to be concerned about if the current modification of the Affordable Care Act is approved. It looks like it's probably not going to be approved at this point in time. But if it was, the cuts in funding to California that would trickle down here to Ventura County. it was, the cuts in funding to California that would trickle down here to Ventura County would be enormous. And so, to whatever extent any of us can use our influence in the next few days to try to make sure that doesn't happen, and that if this doesn't, if this effort doesn't pass, then if we could have people truly get on board to affix that is a, affixed to the Affordable Care Act, that creates a stability that I think we all would like to have in the system at this point in time. So, thank you very much.
Okay Supervisor Long.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank Glenn Austin. He endured a ride along with me, and we were able to.
Endured?
Endured, yes. It's very stressful when you have a supervisor ride with you. I think I'm just Kelly, but maybe, whatever. I always ask questions, as you know, getting to know me. Anyways, he's with the Hazardous Waste and Code Enforcement, and so we were able to go to Canaho Funeral Home, and a dialysis lab, and some other places, which was fabulous just to understand what our employees are doing on a daily basis, and how much they have to do, and what the processes are. Because we talk about very high level here, but it's interesting to see what we do on the ground, boots on the ground. So, that's always important. Also, I attended the Ryan Ossler Memorial, and that was very heartfelt for the Station Forty-two. They did an absolutely fabulous job for the one-year memorial. There's the state and the federal memorials that are going on right now, and I just wanted to touch base on that. Also, congratulations to Glenda Ayew. I don't think I said her name correct. How's it?
Anyway.
Anyway, sorry, for her years of service with us. She had a retirement party, and so many people spoke on how much impact she was, and she'll truly be lost for our county. Secondly, everyone met, I think, with Tom Walters, our federal lobbyists. I think it's important that we are educated what is going on the state and federal level, and so that was good for everyone to get an update as to what's going on. Congress is very slow, and maybe not as fast as we would like, so that we can understand what the funding is. However, I think information is good. So, I appreciate everyone in all of our departments meeting with him. We had an EDC VC meeting in which they talked about e-commerce, and how that will be changing how we shop in our storefronts. And for Ventura County, that's very important as we're talking about industrial areas and building and so forth. It was very interesting that you could go to a subway in China right now and scan something on your phone, and by the time you get home, it's already there.
You know, that presentation on e-commerce was really eye-opener, you know.
Wasn't it fascinating?
Fascinating, e-commerce, how the Chinese had really excelled in that. My apologies for interrupting.
No, I, join in.
But it's just unbelievable what they've done, and how we have fallen behind what the Chinese are doing in other countries also.
Well, it's interesting, their farmer's market. So, getting fresh produce and so forth, but you can do it quickly because they have their storefront right here. And just different ways of buying, how it's going to, how is it going to impact us if everyone buys from Amazon, if certain retail stores will be changing what they do. Is it more interactive? Is it just scanners? But that also talks about employment, and how job forces will be changing. And that's something that we always have to keep an eye on with education and so forth. So, that's my tidbit on that. I attended the Association of Water, AWA Board Meeting. They had their annual meeting at the Reagan Library, and the best thing out of that meeting was seeing everyone talking to each other. And that also goes with the theme today that we're going to be speaking on water, but we are breaking down those silos, which is really important for Ventura County. As we've been in five years of drought, we need to be working together, and it was just wonderful to see everyone there doing that. Also, the state of Camarillo was on Friday. Great information as to how many houses will be built, 2,000 plus. They're talking about their innovations and safety and so forth, so that was good. Moonlight at the Ranch, I attended the eighties party. It's interesting, the themes. You forget what happens at the eighties, but it was a great foundation for the fire department. I will be attending the State Water Project Tour coming up, and also the Mobility Twenty-One. And that's all I can have to say.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy.
I want to adjourn the people on this list, but also, talking about housing, and it was great to see Camarillo doing some things about trying to solve housing. I was in Palo Alto last week, and I saw something that was really interesting. When you squeeze housing so tightly, and you saw people where they had their motorhomes parked along the roads, and not the, you know, they didn't have chairs out there, but they were just parked, and they were just, and now the city is trying to deal with this issue of there's no housing. Housing's so expensive for people making forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. If we get rid of the motorhomes, there's hundreds and hundreds of people doing this. And it just goes back to our thoughts. And as you talked about this e-commerce, and you're seeing more and more of the stores kind of going away because people are being delivered and all that kind of stuff. One of the things I think that would be interesting inside the cities is to see a lot of these malls and other areas rezoned, or dual-zoned, because I know that there's, you know, where you could have multi-use, some of the, because there's a lot of land that we don't have to add more land, but you can do some things in there. But there has to be this thing where the cities have to decide, you have to, it's kind of a multi-use deal, but you also have almost dual-zone, because once you rezone it, then somebody who wants to keep a shopping mall or something going and wants to build in there can't do that. So, it's a really outside-the-box thinking you've got to really look at, because a lot of these are just going to be vacant, as we're seeing more of the big box stores be vacant. But that does give us more land that we can build homes, because at some point, and we're already getting struggled, as you know, the government, all the state, but this is tough here. But you go see it in a city like that, where you're thinking about, well, the wealthy and all this stuff, and people are struggling. They're going, what do we do with these, with these motorhomes on the road? But we have no housing if they have to get up, and we have nobody that can work in the city. It was really a unique thing. So, it's just trying to figure out how to think outside the box on some of this, because it's coming quickly, or Amazon was talking about. For every one job they put in, they, three jobs go away, so.
Let me add a little bit to additional what they mentioned about e-commerce. Traditionally, you know, people in the urban areas go to the shopping centers, and now with the, with the phone, as Supervisor mentioned, people out there in rural areas, they just go out there and use their phone, order whatever they're going to buy, and pay on it. And it's delivered immediately, which is really phenomenal.
Look at that, you look at what this Amazon purchase of Whole Foods was not only just for Whole Foods, it was also to have warehousing in all these areas where they could store things and they could deliver from. So, it's a unique thing that we got to deal with, but we still have to deal with people and housing and all the things that come with it, within our own structure that we have in this county, so interesting times.
And just realizing too, the wave of technology that's coming, and how fast it comes, and what changes it makes, so that's one of the reasons why we're doing our Senior Summit this year, just on technology and senior citizens, so that they're not left behind too. And how easy life can be, when you're not frustrated with your apps, you know, to be able to, you know, go on your phone and end up having your bed delivered, having your groceries delivered, I mean, without, particularly if you're not as mobile as other people. So, it does have some incredible capabilities.
One thing, one of the, since you talked about that, because Gates talked about that, with how fast things come. He was talking about the things that you think, you see in front of you that will happen soon, take longer than you think, but the things you never think will happen, all of a sudden just come. And like some of the stuff we never thought would happen, you know, delivering groceries. I mean, I think we're at six or seven billion just for Walmart alone, on their deliveries, besides all these other things you're seeing, so.
And now they're going to come into your house and stock your fridge for you, is the next thing Walmart's doing, so you don't have.
Yeah, and then people are busy, and so what other things?
And your refrigerator can tell you what foods to get. You can probably just tell Walmart directly.
And that's what Elon Musk said, the only thing we have to really worry about is computers taking over and telling us what to do.
The robots are taking over now.
Can I mention something on that? And in certain areas right now with frontier, there's outages of internet on residential area. And people are extremely frustrated because they can't get their work done, their homework done, they can't order on Amazon. But we do have a broadband, Public Leadership Discussion going on, on Thursday, October 12th, at the Ventura County Community Foundation, from 8:30 to 11:30. And that's a, that's an interesting discussion as to how do we get broadband everywhere? And I just wanted to hit on that as well.
Thank you Supervisor.
Just in response to what Supervisor Foy was talking about, I really appreciate you pointing out that we have to be creative. And you know, most of the housing is going to go in the existing cities, you know, and but it is a challenge to try to get the cities to actually think creatively. Sort of a whole new kind of housing has to be built to meet this need. You have to think about housing completely different. I just, and I don't know how we kind of can engage and actually get that leadership moving, because that's really a key for Ventura County.
It really is.
For us to pull that off, and it's.
And when we have lots, as I talked to a couple of city council people about that, we have no land. I said, well, what about this thing? What do you, I mean, they just didn't even think about that. When you go into LA, I don't know if you read that article, that, you know, 25% five years old malls will be gone. Well, a lot of those malls are talking about tearing down and just building housing there and having a bunch of, you know, like the villages and all these kind of things, which opportunity.
The mixed use is the future.
Yeah, so, yeah, this idea that there's no land has always been the inappropriate view of it. It's how do you use?
How do you use that? Right, and do we have to think outside? Do we have to go a little taller? Do we have to do some other things? And like talk about the pools on roofs instead of taking land on the ground, I mean, just a lot of different things.
And I'm sure Palo Alto is kicking themselves that at some point in time, a decade or two ago, they didn't build housing for those forty and fifty thousand dollars.
Exactly.
They only built housing for one income group, and now they're sitting there going, we don't have any, anybody that can.
And you're right, and it's so, it's so difficult. Have you read that, where Zuckerberg had a house, and he tried to buy the four houses around him? Have you heard that? And he was going to tear them all down and build one big house, and they said, no, you can't do it. We can't get rid of housing, even at that level. You can't get rid of housing, because it's so desperate for housing, so. It's, we just don't want to get, we're already getting tight, but we got to start thinking, and the cities are, you're right, that's where most of that will go anyway.
And building that workforce housing is.
That's another one. Thank you for sharing. Okay, I'd like to also adjourn in the memory of those folks on this list, and I have a couple of items I'd like to report. We're talking about interacting and kind of relaxing and so forth. I belong to the Regional Defense Plan for the Twenty-First Century, that we advocate to save our naval base Ventura County. And the other night, we had a celebration, we had dinner over at Charlotte Craven's Home in Camarillo, and just interact, and you know, just have a couple of drinks of soda and so forth, and water and food. But it was great to, to be, and I just want to thank Charlotte and Jean Fisher, our co-chair, and also my wife attended with me, and also one of my assistants, Tracy. Also, I attended the, in Colonia, the Saturday, the Oxford Housing Authority Youth Murial Project, called Family and Community. At 1500 Commuto Del Sol, there was a couple of hundred people there with Oxford P.D. and Oxford Fire. We had the Housing Authority, we had elected officials, and this kid just painted a beautiful mural. I mean, it just, just outstanding, the things that they do. And one of the things that was mentioned, that mural is sacred. No graffiti, no graffiti. And some of the tough guys, you know, kind of talked about that, that they were going to protect that mural that these children put together. Additionally, I went and attended the Boys and Girls Club Greater Oxford Day for Kids. We had hundreds of kids, it must have been a thousand kids, and their parents, talking about having their parents get together with the children at least one day out of the year. But the whole theme, not just one day, every day is important for our youth. You know, they're so important for them, and they had games and facial paintings, and the fire department was there, Oxford Fire and Police were there, and the sheriffs, and the chief of police from Oxford and Wayneemi, and it was just great, you know, for the, Aaron does a good job, you know, for the Boys and Girls Club. And of course, I presented a certificate on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. And also, Sunday, I was very fortunate, I attended the Kennedy Legacy Dinner Award with my family and also with my staff members at the Crown Plaza here in Ventura. And I was very, very happy that I was selected the recipient of the Hank, remember Hank Lakai? The Hank Lakai, everybody remembers Hank Lakai. They had an inaugural Hank Lakai Award for an Outstanding Latino Leader, and I happened to be that person. I was really, really proud to get that.
Congratulations.
Thank you for that. So, it was just an honor for me to accept, and especially because of what Hank has done for the community, working with our youth, and also with the University of Channel Islands, and the Business Center that he had together, and he donated a lot of money and time for the community. So, it was just an honor for me to be that person for the inaugural.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And also, we were very fortunate to have Hannah Beth Jackson, Senator Jackson, she went and visited our Nylund Center. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it, but I lured this, one of my staff members, met with her, and Erin, and Mike Barber, and she was very impressed with the center, and thanked, you know, the Board of Supervisors for providing, helping with that Nylund Center for the children over in, in Nylund Acres Community, so. She was very, very impressed, according to her assistants. And this Saturday, I'll be celebrating over at the Banana, back up. I'll be over to celebrate at the Banana Festival at Port Wayneimi, and we're going to be honoring Joanna Barton Newton. She'll be turning 100 in November, and also, we're going to have another event on December 15th, and I think Supervisor Long and I are going to be attending that. It's a very special celebration to be also held at the Barton Mansion. Joanna will be honored on September 30th at the Port Wayneimi Banana Festival. On behalf of her father, Richard Bard, he was a father of the Wayneemi Harbor, and he was a county supervisor in 1874 to 1876. So, it's going to be an honor to be, to be there this weekend, and again, also on the, in December the 15th. And that's all I have. Thank you. Okay, Michael?
Thank you Chair Zaragoza. Board members, it was great to hear the report from Red Cross about the great work all the volunteers are doing, and in that same spirit, I just want to let you know, of course, as you know, we have many brave, generous folks who work at the county here, and four of our firefighters are going to Puerto Rico to help respond to Maria. And I just want to list their names. It's Ken Vanwig, Ken Bates, Jeff Carter, and Chad Cook. And Chad Cook is a nationally recognized expert in emergency response, so it's great to hear our troops here helping out all over the world, really. So, also want to recognize our Ventura County Healthcare Plan. They just had, went through a rigorous Department of Managed Care audits, and got some great scores on the quality measures. Pristine, good, thorough job. Staff went above and beyond. You should be training other plans in the state. Access, grievance, and appeals, you should write a guide for other plans. The creation of the healthcare plan clinics had a big impact on complaint reduction. So, congratulations to Dee, I see you there, Supervisor Bennett, Chair of the Board there, and just your whole team there at the healthcare plan. I know that's a, that's a tough, a lot of data there, so thank you for that. Speaking of data, last week, we talked about AV 1250, and the good status on that, a little work to do. And we talked about the importance of the data-driven response and objections to it. It wasn't just sort of, here's some stories, it was, here's some information our legislative leaders needed, the number of contracts, dollars we're talking about, the people served. And when you're dealing with a county, all of that is massive. It's not just a couple of contracts, it's thousands, and it's hundreds of millions of dollars. And I really want to recognize the folks I did last week, but also especially the Auditor's Office, Jeff Berg, Sandy Klein, and Doris Stanley. You know, you see the results in these beautiful spreadsheets, but it takes a lot of work to provide that credible, clear data. And so Jeff, you and your team, thank you so much. Obviously had a big impact. I want to let you know that.
Mike, before you go on that, I know you just made a big effort for that too, and for all of us, and up and down the state, and you were doing all you could do, so I appreciate you putting that big effort into it.
Thank you Supervisor. We had our first Farmer's Resource Program meeting on Friday, so the committee has kicked off, and they'll meet every two weeks, and we will, we will keep you posted. It seemed to go very well, good, healthy discussion by all. I also want to let you know, I attended the Museum of Ventura County State of the Museum yesterday evening, and heard, excuse me, they recognized their outgoing board members, but also impaneled a new set of board members, and a lot of strong community leaders, including our own Mike Sedell will be on there, Dick Rush, and a host of really other good, strong community leaders. So, good energy, and I certainly see like they're making some good progress there. And that's it, thank you.
Mike, let me add a little bit more too. I know you mentioned that, that we have our people that are helping out with the Red Cross. I just want to share with it, I don't care where I go, Mike, I don't care where I go, you know, our people are there. I went over to that mural over in Colonia, they were there. I went over to the Boys and Girls Club event, and they were there. I don't care where I go, our people are there, you know, supporting, and whether it's healthcare, whether it's probation, whoever, but the county is always there helping out, whether it's the Red Cross or whatever. But I just want to commend our people for doing that, and the agency directors that allow them to go out and participate and share with the people, and the good things that they were doing here in Ventura County. I just want to add that to your comments.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is Program Twelve. Okay, our next item is Program 27. This is a approval and authorization for the Dees office to sign a memorandum of agreement. Mr. DeAim?
Good morning, Chair Zerigo, members of the board.
Good morning.
Mr. Powers, Greg Todd, District Attorney. You know, prosecutors were often viewed in the popular culture and in the media as being interested in only one thing and that's locking people up. And in truth, our calling, our duty is to the cause of justice and to the safety of our community. And in, in that regard, part of our focus is to change behavior. And anytime we can change behavior and turn an individual who is kind of headed down that wrong path of committing crimes and engaging themselves in the criminal justice system and redirect them into a lawful path, that's a good thing from our standpoint. So we believe very strongly and very fervently in the value of intervention and rehabilitation. And to that end, I'm here today to seek your approval of a contract so we can implement for the first time here in Ventura County, a District Attorney-led diversion program that promises to help some of our lower-level offenders to avoid committing additional crimes. Our program is aimed at individuals who are typically first-time offenders. We know, studies have shown that when we can touch somebody up close and personal during their very first offense, that is our best opportunity to change behavior. And so what this program will do is in lieu of traditional prosecution, these offenders will be offered an opportunity to participate in group classes, similar to group counseling sessions that are designed to educate them about really the thought processes, their own thought processes, their own individual thought processes that led them to commit the crime in the first place. The classes are based upon a therapeutic concept known as cognitive behavioral therapy or CBT. And these classes, if you approve this contract, will be operated by Pacific Educational Services or PES, which is a statewide leader in diversion programming. And actually, we're fortunate to have with us this morning Walt Stockman, the president and CEO.
Welcome, Walt.
I've known Walt for probably at least two decades and he does a fabulous job. CBT techniques are used nationwide by counselors and therapists to teach people how their thought processes, whatever those may be, led them to commit the crime. The diversion classes are tailored to each individual offender's needs. They're not just a group speak kind of program. They impact topics such as what caused them to steal, what caused them to use drugs, what kind of anger management issues they may have, what life skills issues, you know, they may not know how to balance a checkbook. Things as simple as that. And also to recognize, and this is very fundamental to everything we do, we want the offender to recognize that their conduct impacts a victim and what that impact is on the victim. So through these classes, the participants learn techniques to avoid reoffending and to change their self-destructive behaviors and their behaviors that impact the justice system and the safety of our community. Those who choose to participate in the diversion program complete the requisite classes and also are required to pay any restitution that is owed to the victim and then will not be prosecuted by the District Attorney's Office. The pre-filing diversion program is entirely voluntary. They can choose not to participate in it and to have their case proceed in the justice system. And it is funded solely through the fees that the participants pay. There's neither a cost to the District Attorney's Office or a revenue benefit to the District Attorney's Office or the county for that matter. And we recognize that some of these offenders are indigent. And so part of our agreement with PES is to set aside a portion of those fees into an indigent fund so that those offenders who are truly indigent can still participate in the program even though they can't individually afford to pay the full fee. Additionally, those who elect not to participate or complete the program will face criminal charges in the ordinary course. And we've elected to pursue this program for several reasons. First, we recognize that the resource limitations that our justice system face really means that our very lowest-level offenders don't get a lot of resources. They don't get a lot of attention in terms of punishment, nor do they get a lot of attention in terms of rehabilitative assistance. At the same times, the demands on our prosecutors and really every component part in the criminal justice system have increased exponentially. Now with body cameras where officers are literally filming, videotaping every single encounter that they have in the field, not only with suspects, but with witnesses and other victims, we have a significantly higher level, increased volume of work and evidence that we have to review in our cases and that really impacts the amount of work we can do on these lower-level offenses. We have to concentrate our resources on those offenders that are committing more serious crimes. A second consideration is that research shows that Pacific Educational Services programs are effective. A study that was conducted in the Orange County District Attorney's Office examined recidivism by diversion participants as well as those who did not participate, chose not to participate in the diversion program. And what that study revealed is that of those who declined diversion, 22% committed a new offense within a year. Whereas those who accepted the diversion program, only 6% committed a new offense. So it has a proven value from the standpoint of reducing recidivism in our community. And so our diversion program, we believe, will help offenders avoid going down that road of becoming repeat offenders. The program, as I mentioned earlier, it's aimed at only low-level offenders that do not have recent criminal history. It is not open to those individuals who have been convicted of felonies or those individuals who have already been diverted in the courts diversion program within the past 10 years. Similarly, we're not going to offer diversion to certain types of more serious misdemeanors, things like driving under the influence. We know that's a crime that really warrants criminal justice involvement. Similarly, domestic violence, gang-related crimes that are only misdemeanors and other sophisticated crimes, misdemeanor crimes are not going to be the beneficiaries of this program. And finally, our last consideration, as I mentioned, is to impact the justice system and to impact the offenders in a positive way. And we're conservatively, at this point, estimating that at least 1,500 offenders here in Ventura County will be positively impacted by this program. It could wind up being higher. We've identified a larger number of those that may be eligible. It's going to depend upon how many people agree to participate. And also, it's going to depend upon our vetting of the case to make sure that it's a, the individual is a worthy candidate. This reduction will allow the court, our office, the probation department, the public defender, and really to focus our resources on more serious crimes and also accomplish, hopefully, favorable outcomes in these cases. So with that brief overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Mr. DeAim, they're going to have a choice then?
They're going to have a choice.
And in the same process, it's going to help us save some monies, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like a good program. Many, Bennett?
Excuse me. I really welcome the program and your leadership in terms of bringing this forward. My biggest concern is with those indigent populations because this program is paid for by the person who is going to be not, not charged. And I've just become so much more aware of how many people are sort of trapped. They're, they've got some kind of criminal record, they have to pay all the fees for their ankle bracelet and all this other stuff. Meanwhile, because of their criminal record, they can't work and they just get caught in this vicious cycle. And so this is a way for that not to happen. So I'd like to hear more about the funding for the indigent people and just some thoughts I had while you were talking about it is, you know, somebody that grew up in Ventura County and can't afford the program and this is their first time and they qualify for this, man, I'd want to, I would not want them to avoid that just because they didn't have the funds. Now, somebody that moved here six months ago, I'm not so sure, make the same investment, you know, in terms of, you know, our population. But I would, I would, one, like to hear more about that because I know, you know, you mentioned that that would be there, but the funds for this, my experience with, in other situations is there's never enough funding into, into an indigent program like that. But if we're actually saving money and, and we can turn these people around and we can cut recidivism from 17% down to 6%, I would be willing to at least consider an investment of some money into that indigent fund to make sure that we actually could touch those people that would most benefit from this, that qualify. So do you, can you tell me anymore about the indigent fund and where the funding's going to come for that and how much of it is? And your staff is starting to support you from behind here.
Mr. Hughes?
Chuck Hughes with the District Attorney's Office. One of the key elements of the program, Supervisor Bennett, is those that can't afford to pay the fees, they each pay an additional $50, which goes into the indigent fund. We are working out a sliding scale with PES, with our approval, that depending on a person's income level and additional factors that they will be looking at, if they have extraordinary expenses or if they have extraordinary assets, they'll pay, folks that qualify for the first level will only pay $125, folks that qualify for full support pay $25. Theory being, some investment into their future is beneficial to help them follow through with the program. It's something that we will be able to look at as we're moving forward. I've had discussions with representatives of the Public Defender's Office. If they're hearing from clients, hey, I wanted to do this, but I couldn't get in, I've encouraged them, give me that information because we have exactly the same view. If it's a beneficial program, we don't want people to be excluded because they can't afford it. So we're, we've got some ideas for how we're going to start out with that indigent fund, but it's subject to modification as we see how it's performing.
So I'd just like to ask that a year from now or when it's appropriate, a year, 18 months from now, if we could have a report back on the whole program and on this indigent fund, I think it'd be really valuable for us.
We want to, we want to have that analysis done because we want to, we want to make sure that it's producing the positive results that we believe it will produce. And our goal is not to turn anybody away regardless of their financial circumstances. The vicious cycle that you talked about, I think those of us that have been in the criminal justice system for a long time have seen that cycle played out over and over again. One of the common areas where it occurs is people who can't get their driver's license. And Mr. Stockman and his program has proven to be very effective at teaching those people how to get back into or get out of that vicious cycle. And that's one of our goals. When somebody's in that cycle, they're at greater risk of committing crimes. So our goal is to let anybody in the program that qualifies from a criminal justice standpoint without regard to the financial considerations.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. Well, I just think this is excellent and I do thank you for pushing this forward because this really can turn lives around. People, I would imagine a lot of people are in jail because of drugs. And the idea that we can help with cognitive behavioral therapy to help them see how they can change their behaviors so that they don't end up back into the system. It is proven, it does work. We have Dr. Lieberman here in Aron County who has helped written, write books on this subject matter. But I, I would like to see it expand if we can because you think about, you say, for example, people convicted of family violence would not qualify. Well, they may be perfect for something like this. So while you're looking at the levels and I realize there's only so much funds, you're looking at 1,500 or so people, this may be something that really can grow. And you think about the cost savings, not just for this program, but that person's not in jail. That's an expensive person when they're in jail because we're all taking care of them with our taxpayer dollars. So the idea of being able to end that cycle is really important and I do hope it grows beyond just the 1,500 that you're initially looking at.
And working with the public defenders is important, but also it's going to help the sheriff, you know, as Supervisor mentioned, you know, with the jail facilities. Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, no, Greg, I appreciate, I think it's great. There's no question that a lot of these people just need a little slap upside the head kind of in a sense and some way to pay, look, there's a different life out there and I appreciate what they've done and the success of that. And you talk about changing people's lives and you never know what those people are going to grow to be because you just go back and say, wow, these people cared and something changed and we've got great citizens. So I appreciate you taking leadership on it. Thank you.
And it's an opportunity because they have a choice. Michael?
Just to commend the District Attorney and Mr. Hughes, this is exactly what we should be doing and to hear cognitive behavioral therapy being used and that's a practice that's been proven effective and all the studies say, keep the low-level offenders out of the criminal justice system. So hats off to you. It's exciting. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Walt, for being here today.
And I'd just say, Supervisor Foy saying they'll make better citizens, they'll also make society better too because we're not, we're no longer the victims of the crimes that they are committing.
They're such a big piece of this that's so broad.
We want them to be tax-paying, law-abiding citizens with jobs and productive. And if we can do that, it's better for everybody.
Everybody, yeah.
And themselves too. Thank you, thank you, Mr. DeAim. Okay, we got a motion, second. Please vote. Thank you, Mr. DeAim. As approved. Our next item is Item 28. This is Recommendation of Supervisor Parks and Mr. Bennett. And this is AB 249.
Yes, okay. So this is asking the board to support the governor's signature on AB 249, which is the Clean Money Act. And it is designed to ensure that people have disclosure on campaign material of who the big funders are of that material and behind that campaign. So often we see literature that will have these nondescript names and positive names of what the organization is behind it, but it doesn't mean anything. And sometimes it's very deceptive. So this is a great way by giving disclosure for people to be able to follow the money. And I know it's taken many, many years to get to this point and I'm really hopeful that after passing through the legislature, that the governor will sign it. And Supervisor Bennett, if you had some comments to make too?
I think it's probably one, the one thing that unifies everybody in the country about campaign finance reform is that everybody thinks that, including the Supreme Court has consistently said, making sure people know where the money's coming from. You may not be able to regulate the money, but having it be clear where the money's coming from is fundamental to evaluating and understanding the message. And so that's why the Supreme Court's steadily in support of these kind of disclosure things in general.
Okay, so we have, got a motion in a second. Please vote. So we need, you got, that's approved. Thank you. Our next item, Item 20, Recommendation of Supervisor Long to approve the agreement for cash advance payment for the Fillmore Pirate Basin Ground Sustainability Agency.
We gave up giving up money.
No more money?
It's not. It's an advance. It will be paid back.
It's a loan.
Oh, those are fighting words.
So we need a motion?
I will definitely make the motion to approve this. Unfortunately, Tony Morgan from United and Mauricio from United aren't able to be here today. They're both on vacation. So do you have any questions on the groundwater? Actually, I would love to just let you know that our board is doing an excellent job. We are, I'm told, we are being ahead of the rest of the groundwater sustainability agencies. We are right now establishing our website. We are setting up our accounting procedures. We're working on our bylaws. We're doing, we're proposing our fees for the coming year in January. We'll be having some town halls early December to understand what the process is, how much... We'll be having some town halls early December, to understand what the process is, how much, how long it will take, what will be the effect to our Fillmore and Pyru pumpers. And we are all working well together. Oh, and also our outreach and our messaging, to make sure that that's, we're very transparent for this. So, we appreciate the advance. Thank you very much.
And you're going to pay with interest, I can see.
Yes, there is an interest that is paid based on our, our agreement on Section fourteen point three. And I would like to take a moment to thank all of our staff. I'm, I'm moving on, to thank our staff. It takes a lot to make any item up to this Board, is touched by many of our departments, and I appreciate all their hard work in doing that, so.
I just want to make one comment, that certainly, fine with this advance, but particularly the fact that it is an advance honors the concept that I think we're going to have with all of these groundwater agencies, which is that those people that pump the water are the ones that need to pay for the agency work, in terms of the regulation of this water. And so, this embraces that concept, and I just want to clarify that, that's the concept being used in all the other agencies, and so it should be the one used here, too.
Yes, correct.
Okay, please vote. And that is approved. Our next item, Brian, is what, ten o'clock time certain, so we'll take about a fifteen-minute break, and we'll be back at ten o'clock. Okay, let me rephrase that. We're going to have a closed session for about fifteen minutes. We're going to resume our board meeting, and we're going to go back to closed session in a while. But our next item is Item 22. This is Presentation Resolution Honoring Fire Prevention Week, October eighth through fourteenth, and we have Mr. Aragui. I'm going to read this resolution, and come on, come up. This is honoring Fire Prevention Week, October eighth through fourteenth, and this is where as Ventura County Fire Prevention District has joined the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, in reinforcing lifesaving messages as part of Fire Prevention Week, which is hosted annually in October, and where as U.S. Fire Department responded to three hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and where as U.S. fires resulted in two thousand five hundred sixty civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, seventy percent of all U.S. fire deaths. And where as many of today's products and furnishing burned faster, and produced toxic gases and smoke, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. Whereas this condition contributes to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire, or fire safety, with people having little as one to two minutes to escape from a time, a smoke detector alarm sounds, boy, that's minimal time. Whereas Ventura County Fire Protection District is committed to ensuring public safety and reducing home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education. And where as a home fire escape plan provides the skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. This plan includes two exist, two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside of each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and meeting place, and meeting place outside where everyone can meet after exiting. Whereas in 2017, Fire Prevention Week theme, Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan, with all members of the household practicing at least twice a year. Therefore be resolved, the County Ventura Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim October eighth to fourteenth, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week, and we urge everyone in Ventura County to develop a home fire escape plan, and practice at least twice a year with family members. The public is also invited to participate in open house activities hosted at two local fire stations through, during Fire Prevention Week 2017. Aragui? Where's the locations?
I'll go down. Good to be sitting. Well, good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Masood Aragui, Fire Marshal with Fire Protection District. It is with great pleasure to be here this morning honoring Fire Prevention Week. Some of the stuff that I'm going to mention, also, it was mentioned by, by you, Mr. Zaragoza. Fire Prevention Week, maybe a little, maybe not so well-known fact, is that, is on record as the longest-running public health observer, observance. It was established to commemorate a great Chicago fire that killed more than two hundred fifty people, left hundred thousand homeless, destroyed more than seventeen thousand four hundred structures, and burned more than two thousand acres. The fire began on October eighth of eighteen seventy-one, but continued and did most of its damage on October ninth. Fire Prevention Week this, this year is from October eighth through fourteenth. The theme, as you mentioned, is Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out. In a fire, seconds can mean the difference between life and death. So, most fatalities, we know it happens in residential occupancies. It is important to take the time during Fire Prevention Week, we encourage everyone to plan their escape, think ahead, draw a map of your home, make two, mark two exits from each room, and a path to the outside from each exit. Practice your home fire drills twice a year. Make sure to conduct one at night, and one during the day with everyone at home, and practice using different ways out. It's important to teach children how to get out, if the adults can't be there to help them. Make sure the number of your home is clear, clearly marked, and easy for fire department to find. Close fire doors behind you as you leave. This may slow the spread of smoke, heat, and fire. Once you get outside, stay outside, never go back to the burning building. More information can be found by visiting NFPA.org under Public Education tab. As you mentioned, we are having pancake breakfast this year, to honor Fire Prevention Week. The first one is going to be on Saturday, October seventh, at Fire Station Fifty-One, located at thirty-three oh-two turnout park circle in El Rio, and the second one on October fourteenth, at Fire Station Forty, located at forty-one eighty-five Cedar Springs Street in Moore Park. Both events are open to the public from nine a.m. to eleven a.m. There will be lots of cool teaching materials, games for kids. We invite public to come in, have breakfast, see the fire station, interact with fire department personnel. I have a couple of my folks here from Fire Prevention, they were able to come in. I want to thank them, I want to recognize their efforts behind the scene, doing all the work, getting the education, and enforcement out to the public. But I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aragui. I'd like a moment so we can take a photo.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much again. Pancakes again?
October seventh and October fourteenth.
I was telling you, Supervisor, I was so hungry, I saw a picture of the pancakes, and we should have brought some.
Definitely. We encourage everyone to come.
Thank you again for your excellent work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to look at each other. This is this way.
Thank you.
We're going to be facing. So that we can have the wording of the background for the voting. Listen. This is yours. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you for your good work. Absolutely. Firefighters are great, love them. Good job.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is Item twenty-three. This is Approval of the Concept, the Acceptance of Donations from the Ventura County Library Foundation of a Bookmobile Recognizing the Premier American Credit Union as a Primary and Private Founding Sponsor. Okay, how are you? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. I'm Nancy Schramm, the Deputy Library Director for the Ventura County Library System. The library is here today to ask for your approval, to accept in concept the donation of a bookmobile vehicle, to be absorbed into the county library fleet, and to recognize Premier America Credit Union as a primary and founding sponsor on the bookmobile vehicle. Bookmobiles in the Ventura County Library System have a long and rich history. In fact, within twenty years of the founding of the Ventura County Library, the county librarian at that time, Elizabeth Topping, acquired the first Ventura County bookmobile, which was the first bookmobile in the state of California. But unfortunately...
When was that, Nancy?
That was in nineteen thirty-six.
Because I remember the bookmobile, but not...
Yes.
That was in Oxnard.
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, interestingly, Elizabeth Topping, Elizabeth Topping taught herself to drive in order to drive the bookmobile around Ventura County. So, very interesting. She certainly recognized the need even back then, to getting library services out to where the community members lived, and bringing library services to people who couldn't otherwise get into the library, taking them, services out to migrant workers, to schools, to students. And today, we see many of those benefits being much of the same. However, unfortunately, a bookmobile has not been in operation in the Ventura County Library since the nineties, due to funding challenges. So, when the Library Foundation was formed in two thousand and twelve by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and Concerned Citizens, it became one of their first and foremost funding priorities to purchase a fuel-efficient and fully-equipped bookmobile vehicle for the Ventura County Library. Library staff has been working very closely with GSA Fleet Services, and has been getting various quotes and information, doing our research on bookmobiles. And our hope is to come back to your Board at some point in the future, next year, with a specific vehicle in mind, to ask for your approval to absorb that into the county fleet. At this time, we'd like approval of that in concept before a major fundraising and publicity push by the Ventura County Library Foundation. With that, I would like to introduce Patty Walker, who is our Ventura County Library Foundation President, and Patty is going to say a few words. Thank you so much.
Welcome, Patty.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, members of the Board. On behalf of the Ventura County Library Foundation, I'm here to introduce to you the bookmobile the Foundation desires to purchase and donate to the Ventura County Library System. The Foundation is researching the purchase of a twenty-nine-foot gas chassis step van body from Summit Body Works. Summit is a builder of specialty vehicles, and has provided bookmobiles to other libraries across the country. The bookmobile will be outfitted with state-of-the-art technology and a wheelchair lift. If you wish to accept this donation prior to ordering, we will work with the various departments of the county, from Fleet Services to library staff, who will oversee the bookmobile prior to our ordering, to assure that it fits the county's needs. The purpose of the bookmobile is to continue the commitment of the Board of Supervisors in providing library services throughout Ventura County, regardless of location. We recognize many in the county lack access to library services, and the Foundation is a firm believer that libraries provide a door to all levels of education. In order to further our fundraising and outreach, we will be hosting an event at the Ventura County Museum on January twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, featuring Lawrence Juber, the lead guitar from Wings. And we hope that you will take some time out and attend. As you were aware, the Foundation received a generous donation from Premier America Credit Union, whom we have identified as a founding sponsor. The Foundation is asking to allow Premier's name to be placed on the bookmobile, and identified along with the county and other founding sponsors, as a proud sponsor of the van. At this time, I'd like to introduce Christine Maderas and Donna McNeely with Premier, who are here today. Thank you.
Welcome. The credit union.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Hi, good morning, Honorable Chair and members of the Board. I'm Christina Maderas, the Director of Community Engagement at Premier America Credit Union.
And Donna McNeely, Senior Vice President of Member Experience.
Welcome.
Just on, thank you. On behalf of the credit union, we have a strong commitment to the community, and we just wanted to say that we're so excited for the bookmobile to be launched, and to hopefully get it into the community soon. We have been working with the Ventura County Library Foundation for a while to get this into action, and we really want barrier-free literacy to reach the local community. I think they said that it should go over to seventy communities, and reach that many people throughout, so we're really excited for it, and hope that we can get it launched.
And my understanding, too, you know, sharing back, you know, that, I understand that the bookmobile used to go into Silver Strand, really hard place to, for, faraway place for the kids to go to the library, and over to the Colonia area, I remember that, you know, and Oxnard, you know, but I think it's an excellent service. By the way, I was going to ask, do they require a Class II license to drive that bookmobile?
I think that's a yes, right? I'm pretty sure yes.
And you're going to be working with GSA to make sure that the specs are similar to the ones we have for the county and so forth?
Absolutely.
Great. But I want to thank you tremendously for that. I think that it's great things that the credit unions do, you know, for us. So, any comments from them?
Our small communities in particular, really good benefit from the, from the bookmobile, and we have a lot of small, underserved communities out there and stuff, so thank you very much for your help, and thank you to everybody in the Library Foundation for everything you're doing, and library staff. Really appreciate it.
Supervisor Parks?
I think Supervisor Long is first.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you. I went to the bookmobile foundation's kickoff, looking for, for the dollars from our community to make sure that we're reaching out to our, our families out there, our students and so forth. And I just wanted to say thank you, thinking outside of the box when we didn't have that in our system, and to help us with that. So, I appreciate it, and thank you.
I know that I wanted to get the bookmobile going when I got Somus into my district, because there's a community that is rather low-income in the town, and the children there don't have really good access to a library, other than the one at the school. So, that one has like a part-time librarian and all. So, this would be wonderful to have it going to the school, and to the schoolchildren, but also, there's the concept of people in retirement homes and senior facilities, that I think that would just be something they would love, to have this thing show up, and they can take some books, and then have it come back again, so they can return them. So, I, I think there are new markets out there for such a thing, and this is the first time that we've actually gotten a little bit of a description. I feel like it's actually going to happen. I know it's been a while since the Board, I think we put in fifty thousand dollars about a year or two ago, right? So, it's nice to see it moving forward, and really thanking the, the credit union premier for stepping up to the plate on this, and it gets us a lot farther on to actually getting this thing on the road and rolling, so thank you.
Thank you again for, and thank you for the Premier Credit Union. Patty, thank you, and Nancy, thank you for your good work, and I see some other people there from the, from the library. How are you? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any motion? Okay, that is approved. Our next item is Item twenty-four. This is a Review and Adopt Guiding Principles to End Homelessness. Christine?
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. My name is Christie Madden with the County Executive Office. We're coming before you today with our second study session. You may recall that we committed to come back to your Board on a quarterly basis to review issues of significance and importance around homeless issues. And today, what we are presenting are... are presenting are refinements to the guiding principles that you considered back in June. So, the County Coordinating Council met and looked at all of the guiding principles that we had presented to you before, and they were numerous. It was 20, 30. It was a big number. We condensed, collapsed, and organized the guiding principles into some general topic areas. And what we're presenting for you today are what the committee has approved and come up with. Where's my doodad? Doodad? Which way do I do this? Okay. So, the first set of guiding principles address the efficient use of county resources. So, principle number one is initiated, was already initiated by your Board by prioritizing our HUD funding around homeless and other vulnerable populations. Principle two addresses the repurposing of county property to meet the needs of homeless services and shelter and/or housing whenever feasible or appropriate. Principle three addresses the need to continue progress that's being made to integrate data from the various systems across county agencies so we can really look at the efficiency and the effectiveness of our programs and the needs of the individuals that are being served by our program. And look at me going backwards. Guiding Principles four through seven address the need for coordinated services and collaboration. The principles address both the internal coordination amongst county agencies, which is highlighted in Guiding Principle number four, and the need for regional collaboration with our other partners around the county as in Guiding Principle number six. We highlight the importance of utilizing the countywide continuum of care to provide broad policy guidance in number five, while simultaneously strengthening our pathways to home and coordinated entry system in Guiding Principle number seven. Guiding Principle number eight strikes that delicate balance between the needs of those who don't have access to shelter or housing due to the lack of availability and the priority for maintaining community resources for the benefit of all of the county's residents. The County Homeless Coordinating Council members discussed this topic at length with both social services and law enforcement agencies weighing in. The language here represents the collaborative input from the committee to balance those needs. Guiding Principles nine through 10 address the need to pursue best practices, and they incorporate current strategies and policies that have already been endorsed by your Board. The recent approval of the operational criteria for emergency shelter is highlighted in Principle number nine. And number 10 reiterates this Board's longstanding policy for zero tolerance for children living on the street. Principles 11 through 13 address the need to reduce homelessness. Not discharging people into unsheltered situations whenever possible is recommendation number 11. It's recognized by members of the committee that there are in fact circumstances when this is really outside of government's control. People do have personal choice. However, by listening to what people want and need, we stand a better chance of engaging those individuals and gaining their participation. Principle number 12 acknowledges the important role of supportive services in facilitating housing stability. Services are delivered where the homeless people live and therefore should be available throughout the county. The county has conducted a point in time annually since 2007. Although only a snapshot, the count does define general trends. New software for 2018 is going to provide greater detail through the use of GPS so we can get greater specificity about the geographic distribution of our homeless population around the county. So, that's a new thing. We're going to be using a web-based tool available on people's cell phones. So, as they're interviewing and counting people, they will actually geocode their location. So, the County Homeless Coordinating Council is an organization that's represented by the county agencies who intersect with the homeless population and meet the needs of those groups and organizations. While the informal collaboration by the council has improved communication amongst agencies assisting this population, there really still are significant opportunities for continued improvement. By formalizing the structure of the Homeless Coordinating Council and clearly delineating its roles and responsibilities, it's possible to improve outcomes by providing earlier coordination and consultation as programs and projects are being developed. It may be possible to further leverage resources across agencies when applying for grant funding or allocating limited resources. We can ensure that program outcomes are aligned across agencies, thus minimizing unintended impacts to whether county agencies as they implement programs. And by taking advantage of the external partnerships that many agencies have with outside groups and organizations, we can further improve internal collaboration, thereby improving program design and implementation. So, some of the potential responsibilities for the Homeless Coordinating Council include providing early review and discussion about new or expanded programs. That can provide a resource to your Board by getting together and talking about programs and activities early between county agencies. We can avoid duplication and overlaps that might have happened between agencies and departments. We can leverage our resources across and between agencies and organizations. And more importantly, we can ensure that the guiding principles that we are asking you to adopt are actually adhered to in all of the programs that are brought before your Board. Input from the council can help to inform decisions by your Board. And another critical role that we see the coordinating council providing is to monitor outcomes and performance of the individual programs so that we can do more of what works and less of what doesn't work. So, that does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. I think we have some members of the coordinating council in the audience, and I'd like to thank Tara Carruth and our entire community development staff to help pull this together.
Thank you, Kristi.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In looking over these quickly, on Item 8, it says, "Continue to keep our streets and public areas clean and safe while respecting the rights and needs of people who don't have access to shelter." What if they choose not to have access to shelter?
If we have shelter resources available and people choose not to take advantage of it, then it is possible to enforce certain requirements. What's happened is that some communities around the country are facing litigation when they are criminalizing homelessness by people who don't have access to other resources. And they're criminalizing it, then they're getting sued, and the courts are saying, "Well, these people don't have any other place to be. Therefore, you can't criminalize homelessness on that basis." So, what we're saying is it's a delicate balance. We need to make sure that we have resources available to help keep our community safe and clean for the benefit of the entire community. And that's going to require working collaboratively with all of our partners to make sure that we have housing and other placement resources, emergency shelter beds, et cetera, to meet their needs.
Okay. So, in these 10 best practices, are you addressing the affordable housing issue in here? Which one would that be?
Well, I think that gets back to the regional collaboration and coordination with the outside agencies, I think, as was highlighted earlier today in the Board's conversation. Most of our housing is actually developed within incorporated cities in this county in particular because we have very strong LAFCO policies. So, urban development we push into incorporated cities. So, working with cities is going to be important to help meet those needs.
So, should we call that out is what I'm asking, in that when we're meeting with our cities in collaboration, we should be calling out to make sure that we're addressing the affordable housing?
Okay.
And then also, economy strengthening. We've talked about, at least you and I personally, about the need of training, providing training so that people can do skilled work. And how do we address that here? There are certain people that I know that have been on the street because they're lacking the skills needed for certain jobs. And so, how do we work that in here? Because we're trying to give them a foot up, not just completely support. At least I, it's to get them going.
Right.
Right? It's not, we're not, we're not trying to support long-term housing for homeless people. We're trying to get them, leverage, help them leverage to get moving so that they can provide for themselves.
Kristi.
So, I'm just wondering where is that in here, if you could?
Yes.
Item number two, you know, it says, "Use the county surplus property to meet regional affordable housing, sheltering, slash treatment needs that may serve the homeless population with appropriate, when appropriate and feasible." Where is the county property, surplus property? What properties are we talking about?
Well, as we pursue new, like, for example, we're opening a new fire station in Thousand Oaks, and so we're going to have or do have a vacant fire station that's available. We own the property on Knoll Drive that is currently occupied by the healthcare agency, but they are slowly moving out of that facility, and that will ultimately become a vacant county asset. So, whether we use those specific assets to meet these needs or you sell that property and take those, the proceeds for meeting the needs are kind of what we're addressing.
So, are we talking about permanent or are we talking temporary facilities?
All of the above.
The reason you and I met earlier and we talked to the, maybe possibly the use of the JJC. And I'm going to set up a meeting with a MAC, and I kind of talked to the MAC, you know, kind of prematurely. And one of the things that the MAC, El Rio Nylam Acres MAC, is willing to assist with, over at the JJC, but only in a temporary basis. You know, that's what they said, you know, that our chair is recommending. Of course, we're still going to have the meeting. The Board has to decide, but they're looking at a temporary basis, not a permanent basis, you know, for the El Rio area. So, I just wanted to share that with you because I saw that Item 2 on county properties, you know, so I just wanted to share that with you because we don't want it to be the year-round warming shelter, you know, for.
And the Department of Justice has made it clear that any potential reuse of a building at the JJC would be on a very limited-term basis, and it could only be until the end of March when the winter warming shelter is scheduled to close.
The 120 days.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would just say regarding that one's, Item 2, that you might use the word "consider using property" instead of "using property." It should be in our consideration, but as you were saying, some properties are better located, and that's something we really do want to consider, the location of the properties to see that they have access to services, for example. And we were just having a vigorous conversation this morning about the potential of mixed use with the advent of shopping on the internet and less retail need now out there in terms of brick-and-mortar buildings.
Supervisor Bennett?
I really appreciate the efforts that you and your staff have steadily been making. And it's really clear that trying to get this right is important to you in terms of homelessness. So, I just want to say thank you. It's been a long-term, you know, we've been at it all the way back to Supervisor Kathy Long before and all of that stuff. It's been a long-term effort. So, I appreciate that. I think you, just by the comments that we just heard today here from Supervisor Parks and Supervisor Long, there is a lot of sensitivity about this issue, and people really want it right. And, you know, all three supervisors, there's things that they really want right, and it needs to be precise. And it's easy to misinterpret the language, like Supervisor Parks saying add the word "consider" and Supervisor Aragosa about the temporary and all of that stuff. So, I think this is an important day in that I want to make sure that we're as clear as possible as we move, you know, try to move this thing forward. And so, you've basically taken the principles and tried to consolidate things that we said last time at the last meeting and in terms of going forward, et cetera. So, I would like to add a few things that I think this Board has consistently supported that are not reflected in here that we want to do. And one of them is Supervisor Long, your comment about, shouldn't we say that? I think we should add in here the specific words emphasize the need for affordable housing with our city partners. And so, I would like to add that. The other thing is I, in preparation for this meeting, I went back and watched our last Board meeting to try to be really clear about where we are. And so, I have a few other things besides the one that we just mentioned from Supervisor Long about emphasizing need for affordable housing. And I put them in writing because I'd like to have these added to this, and that is prioritize year-round versus seasonal shelters, crisis housing. It was really clear that this Board was pretty frustrated with the idea of the cities coming back every year, asking for money for the temporary winter warming shelter. And Supervisor Foy even said, "I don't want to do it anymore. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for that anymore." I brought up maybe one more year, but, maybe one more year, but of where we would support them in terms of doing that. But I think that subsequent to that, and it was really clear what this Board was saying, was this Board wanted to prioritize a year-round shelter that's open 24/7, that does exactly what you were just talking about Supervisor Long, and that is that gives us that place where we can say there, "We have a place for you to go." If you, you know, if you're on the street, we have a place for you to go, so that we can take other appropriate actions, you know, if we need to. And in my mind, since the Board said at most, we would only do funding for a seasonal, in other words, a winter shelter, one more time, in my mind, it makes no sense for us to spend money on, spend any significant money on a shelter that isn't going to turn out to be a year-round shelter for us. So, that is, so I would like to make sure that that gets captured because it was very clear this Board was saying, "We're done with the seasonal." Just you put it out there and then you get, you get no bang for the buck. The second thing that I'd like to do that I think the Board has consistently said, and that is prioritize addressing family homelessness. And it's one that is, you know, a special emphasis that we've wanted to say from this Board, and I don't think it's captured enough when we just say, try to keep children, you know, off the streets. But we've tried to say that. I want to make sure it's clear. It's been something we've consistently, you know, talked about for many years. And then the third thing is this, and the Board has talked about this, and I think very consistently, everybody has been supportive of this, but it's just not reflected in here. And that is appropriately-sized smaller shelters rather than a large warehouse shelter. Everybody said the day of the big warehouse homeless shelter needs to end. And we really need to have, in as many cities as possible, and I'm talking about the larger cities, in as many cities as possible, there should be a shelter that's, its impact is smaller because it's only for that city and it's smaller, and that you have a number of these smaller ones rather than one large warehouse shelter. So, I'm going, I'd just like to make the motion that we add these four things. The fourth one's not up there. It's the one that Supervisor Long mentioned, which is prioritize, I mean emphasizing the need for affordable housing with our city partners. So, I'd like to make a motion to add this to those because I think they're all things that this Board of Supervisors has supported.
Supervisor Parks?
Two thoughts. One, I think Supervisor Long was also saying, talking about the importance of the services of work training and getting back into the workforce. So, that isn't specifically mentioned that I saw. It's just kind of a broad services. And then also, I'm not that picky. And then also, I'm not that picky to say small versus large, you know, that, I don't know where that stands. To me, you jump on any opportunity you can.
So, you're talking more like storefronts.
Well, I, I don't think anybody has supported the, the large warehouse shelter.
We, we were just talking about, you might have a large warehouse, a Kmart or something that remains empty and you can use that to make, you know, interior improvements for people who are homeless. So, I, I'm not exactly sure what.
Well, you, you might have one, but you wouldn't want to say we're going to put 400 people into that shelter. You may find, you may find a large, I don't mean large warehouse, if there's a large warehouse, but you don't use it as one big, instead of just one big shelter that we have here in Ventura County. I'm hap, I'm happy to just drop that for right now. And let's, let's do the other, the other, the other four, so it's still four items. Let's add the, also add the comment about we're trying to get these people trained to end, to get them to become productive members of society so they can support their own.
And I think Christie, you mentioned that, that part of the, part of the process will be for training to help people with resumes, to make sure that people have the proper guidance to, to hopefully come out of the homeless.
So, if, if we can walk through quickly some of the changes, maybe we can incorporate these from the DIES. Okay? So, on number, guiding principle number two, I think you'd like to see consider using county surplus property. Is that correct? On guiding principle number six, we will incorporate housing into the language here. Mutual responsibility, we could coordinate appropriate roles. I think that's where the housing piece would go is in number six. And I'm not thinking clearly on my feet for that.
You could, you could put it right after and share goals and priorities of affordable housing. Some type of wording like that.
Okay. And then?
Then the, these, these, okay, go ahead.
On number 10, to address your concern Supervisor Bennett about families, places not meant for human, zero tolerance for unsheltered families with children living on the streets. Is that appropriate?
Or families and children.
Or families and children.
I would like to use this language, prioritize addressing family homelessness.
Okay.
And Christie, one of the things that, going back to Barber's and the MAC over at the JJC, one of the things that they like a lot is the families and children. I think you mentioned they'll have room there for.
It's possible that we could do that. I mean, historically, what we've done at the winter warming shelter is we have diverted families from shelter altogether. I mean, that, that has historically been the goal of this board is to not keep families inside of shelter. Now, with this proposed location, it might be a little more conducive to allowing families to be there, to be separated from the rest of the population. But in the armory situation, it was one big open room and it really was not conducive for families to be there amongst all of the single males.
Yeah, protecting the children and the families.
Correct. So, I mean, it's, it's always been our goal with the assistance of HSA to get families out of shelter. Last year, I don't think a family spent more than one night in the shelter before being diverted.
And I agree to use Supervisor Bennett's recommended language.
Okay.
But let's not take out the zero tolerance for unsheltered.
So, we'll just add another, add an additional priority?
I think, what I would suggest is you simply say prioritize addressing family homelessness and maintain a zero tolerance for, okay, that's, that's the way to do it.
That's a good point.
Okay. And then on number 12, I think we can add support formerly homeless persons with their housing and employment needs throughout the county.
That's right.
Yes.
Would that satisfy your concerns there?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And the top one, prioritize year-round versus seasonal.
Right. And that, I think, we'll just make that as separate. And I think that goes under best practices. That'll go under that set of, under that set. So, it'll, we'll renumber them, but that will be on that page.
Okay.
So, you have 14.
It'll be a total of 14. That's, you know, I was struggling with the fact that we had 13 guiding principles. So, you've, you've done us a great favor here.
So, Supervisor, that's part of your motion?
So, yeah, I'd like to make this as, as modifications to this. And then we can go back and, and, because we have staff recommendations or some other things. But anyway, so if I could make those as all the modifications to, to this.
So, for the record, sir, are you approving the staff recommendations in the board letter?
No, right now, I'm making an amendment to, to, to this.
Recommendation one.
Because there's one other area that I'd like to comment on.
Thank you, sir. And in the motion itself, do you just want to leave some of the finer details to staff in terms of where they're putting the exact language and have it more generic? Or did you like Ms. Madden's specific examples of the?
How about, I, I think probably the appropriate thing is to say where we have given specific language, we want to use that specific language, but I think we've been, but so we're directing staff to make these changes based on.
So, if I could, I think I captured that. It's to add an economic principle as Supervisor Long mentioned, and the details can be provided by Ms. Madden, correct? And to change use county to consider using county as it related to the surplus materials or the housing. Add emphasis, add emphasis the need for affordable housing with our city partners and add prioritize year-round versus seasonal shelters, crisis housing, and add prioritize addressing family homelessness. Is that captured and then staff inserts that where appropriate?
Yes. Yes, those were my notes.
I think, I think that's captured, yeah.
I think I, I think I understood.
So, that's, that, okay, so anyway, so that's, that's, that's a motion to modify, okay? And that's what I'm making. Now, the other thing, okay. The other thing I'd like to, to.
Yeah, I think Bennett wants to say, sir, something then. Michael, Mike, you want to share?
Supervisor, I want to go back to the list just real quick if that's okay?
Okay.
On item nine, Christie, I didn't know if you wanted to include in there specifically following housing first principle. I know it says reducing barriers and screening in.
Reducing barriers, screen in.
Oh.
Reducing barriers.
If your board is okay with that. What you.
Pursuing the housing first principle.
And I think also you have a, one bullet that talks about the open door, which to me is the same kind of idea as screening in, right? So, you may not need that bullet. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe just to really be clear about what we're talking about, a housing first approach says, you know, particularly with drug and alcohol issues, finding them a place to live and then getting them treatment at the same time, not, not screening them out because of their drug and alcohol issues.
Right. Not requiring them to address addiction before they get in, but getting them into housing and then providing treatment.
Doesn't work. And so, housing first is sort of a.
Could you clarify because I did not know that's what that meant.
Yeah, I, 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 I just think that we have these principles and I just think you, you start, I, my own sense is.
Specific.
For example, what, what do we exactly mean when we say the housing first principles? That's part of why we've been having this clarification. In my mind, I wouldn't add them because it could create this uncertainty in terms of what does that mean? That's, that's why we were trying to clarify these specific, I mean, there are a lot of housing first principles in here. So, is there?
We have one number nine that we're talking about. Are you saying we should keep number nine in or clarify nine?
I'm fine keeping number nine in. I'm not sure exactly what we mean when we say, you said housing first.
Yeah. The housing first approach essentially means that we're not going to screen people out of housing options because of their drug and alcohol issues.
So, that.
I think it's an explanation of what screening in means.
Exactly.
Yeah, just, just clarifying.
How about, how about this, consistent with housing first principles, we're going to screen in.
Exactly.
Okay. Good. That would be fine. Great. Okay. So, I, I would add that. Are you comfortable with that? Consistent with housing, the housing first principles that call for screening in.
Right. Brian, Brian, do you have that?
No, it's just, it's a, would be in addition to item nine.
Yeah.
Well, that would be part, that'd be part of the motion.
Of the motion.
Supervisor, that I'm making and Supervisor Long is comfortable with, right? Okay. So, so that motion has passed, right? It's for the modifications, right, Brian?
Add it to.
Yes. That's why I was asking if we needed to make another motion.
So, do we have to make another motion Leroy and, or just add two? Another vote? Okay, let's go ahead and vote again for the total.
Do it again.
Okay. Who makes the motion?
I'm happy to.
I know, sorry, we didn't get you.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, and it's a vote.
We just didn't get that in.
Yes.
For number, yeah.
All right.
Please vote.
We're too fast.
Okay, that's approved.
Now, now, that's, that's, that's the, so then now we have, we have modified principles. The other thing I, I'd just like to turn the board's attention to is the second recommendation. So, the first one was review and approve the county of Ventura's guiding principles and homelessness, which is what we've just done and we've made some modifications to it. The second one is affirm that new or expanded county programs, activities and investments to end the homeless be reviewed by the county homeless coordinating council before consideration by the board of supervisors. I'm supportive of that. I think that we do want to have good coordination at the county level. But what I think is important is that we want to make sure that the board's leadership is not lost. And I think you just saw that today. There are, it's very easy, this, this is a complicated issue. It is a very expensive issue. And it, it, there, there are so many facets to it that it's very easy for the board to lose their leadership on it. And you saw us, you know, kind of like trying to catch up on this. So, I would like to add to this, which I think is a, a good, a good recommendation, that, that, that this council, right, that options are not closed off nor commitments made, until the board approves a, a plan of action. Because what I'm concerned with is, you know, we, we're going to have conversations with cities and we say, oh, yeah, well, we're going to do this or we're going to do that. Or concerned that say, yeah, well, well, we're not going to do this or we're not going to do that. And then have this board not be, to have it be already fait accompli before we actually have a time. Because it's just, you see how much sensitivity there is. So, that's what I would like to add to that in the spirit of trying to get this to be as, as precise as possible.
Let me give you an example which kind of goes against that. We acknowledge that it is difficult to locate affordable housing. And there are potentials out there that we want to go and, and look at. Nothing's going to get approved in, you know, financially or anything until it comes to our board of supervisors anyway. But I like the idea of having the flexibility to investigate the potential projects as they come through. And I don't know if what you're saying would limit that ability to be, to have that flexibility among staff to investigate the potential for projects.
Well, I, I, I want, because one of the things people do is they'll look at this. And so, let's, let's be really clear, what does that mean? It, it, you, you want staff to investigate everything and all kinds of things and give us the advantages and disadvantages of all of those things. You just don't want staff to close the options off, okay, before we have a chance to see that.
I was thinking of just the opposite, that what this language might do might avoid, might prevent them from entering into that kind of review.
By, by nobody, they, we, this invites them to explore everything, but don't close options off. Don't say, hey, we're not doing this, all right? And, and the board not even sort of be involved in that. Or, or make a commitment that we're going to do this, a commitment that, that maybe even informally binds. I give you some, you know, you may talk to a contractor and say, yeah, go ahead and start working on this. And then we go, well, we've kind of promised this person we were going to do this and, and that kind of thing. So, that's all I've tried to do is just be clear because this is such a, an important topic, you know, for this board. It's been an important topic all along.
Could you read your motion?
Yeah, options are not closed off nor commitments made until the board, you know, has had the opportunity to approve.
Okay. Can I ask a question, Christie? I'm reading your board letter and it says that the council will be reviewing new and expanded programs, activities, investments to end homelessness before they become, before they come to your board for consideration. So, you're going to bring all programs or are you going to set aside some that maybe won't make it and you will not present those to me?
No, I think what, what the intent with this language was to make sure that as your board is presented information about new policies and programs, that the coordinating council has the benefit of input. And actually, I think rather than limiting, I mean, I understand where the confusion is, but rather than limiting interpretation, I think what we want to try and do is expand the, the breadth of issues that could be raised by new programs and activities, right? By getting all of the diverse voices. Because oftentimes, we find that different agencies interpret success in homeless programs differently, right? I mean, public safety agencies look at success in homeless programs slightly differently than our social services agencies. So, we want to try and get all those voices together so that we can look at this issue as a committee at a group and say, well, have we thought about this? Have we thought about that? So, it's not intended to restrict anything.
So, then also what you're asking is that even if you, you, you all as a group agree that we might not go with one program, you would be presenting the information to us for the final decision?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's the, it's staff's role to present your board as policymakers with the most comprehensive information that we have at our disposal so you can make informed decisions, right? And it's not for us to pre, predetermine what you consider.
We have Supervisor Frank, but Michael, before we go to.
Supervisor, I'll go after you.
Supervisor Frank, do you have any, I see the light on, no.
Just a little.
Michael?
Just a quick background on the coordinating council. The way it, it rose up was because we have so many different departments that work with the homeless. And it might surprise people. We've got behavioral health, ambulatory care, hospitals, social services, public defender, district attorney, probation, and probably a couple more. So, I mean, around the table, we've probably got 10, 11, 12 departments. And sometimes the other department didn't know what the other were doing. And cities would be interacting with one department not knowing there's all these other things going on. So, really, what we wanted to do was get everybody a little, literally around the table, coordinate and integrate services so that as we communicate with our city and community partners, we're on the same page. And I really appreciate Christie's leadership in doing that and Barry Zimmerman and his team for developing a roadmap of putting on just one document, all of the homeless services that the county provides. It's educational. It's extremely complicated. So, the whole idea is to better inform and give better information to your board to make.
And to add to that, Christopher, quick, we are inviting the cities.
No, the cities would not be part of this. This is internal county agencies.
This is, yeah, this is just so that internally, we're all on the same page. And that was a work of skill and effort. And that makes us better at when we're communicating with the community and community-based partners, with the cities.
And then later on, how do we invite?
And it's working.
And then that, the idea that we don't want you to close off any options, maybe we do. How many are we actually going to be looking at? So, I just, I feel like this might be a little bit micromanaging, but I understand the direction that we want to be able to give you the freedom to explore options and to make sure that, you know, before any commitments, which I would think happened anyway towards contracting, that would have to come to the board.
Let me show what I was going to mention. So, this is an internal within the county, but eventually, we're going to talk to the cities.
Yes. And we have, I mean, there's, there's conversations with the cities and that's through the countywide continuum of care largely.
Yeah, because, you know, the city of Oxtard and Ventura really impacted them.
So, then the motion is to agree and to affirm that the process is that the county's homeless coordinating council will consider these items before coming to the board. That's the motion in which you're requesting.
Just to help inform the conversation for the board level. And I, I do want to clarify because I think there is some potential confusion here. The, the goal, our hope as staff is that the board's adoption of guiding principles would help create kind of the outer bounds. I mean, so to your point Supervisor Bennett, I would not anticipate that if a county agency or department was recommending a program that was diabolically opposed to your guiding principles, that we would recommend that it come forward. Right? Because, I mean, the whole purpose of having guiding principles is to create the framework within which we all as county agencies are pursuing our programs and activities.
And at the same time, if, 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 you know, if, if a supervisor's office was recommending a particular program or a particular, particular option, what, what, which, what we, all's, all's I'm trying to do is make sure that the board's role doesn't get undercut in, in this by having that option say, no, that option died at that committee. And the board doesn't even go, well, the board should have, you know, should have the information about why that option died. And, and it, and it shouldn't die, it should be, this is why we don't recommend that. So, any. that. So, any major proposal, it seems like we, we ought to, we ought to, we ought to be given that information. You know, how we're given it doesn't always have to be here, you know, in the boardroom, it can be, you know, information that's presented to all of us. But I just, I want to make sure that there is a, an appropriate relationship and role for the board in terms of that. So, that's what I'm trying to capture there.
Okay.
I, I, by the way, I very much welcome this thing, I mean, I think we're all trying to get the same thing, which is, I don't want one department running off and going, this is what we're doing in the name of homelessness, right? And that not being coordinated, and that's what we had a real problem with. So, this, in the spirit of that, it's just that when you create a, a committee or something like this, there's a, there can be a tendency for it to be, we're the ones that are going to be making the decision, and I just want to affirm that it is the board. So, that's why I would, I would still be comfortable, I think we've captured the spirit of that. If somebody's, somebody's completely opposed, and, but it came from a major department, let's say, let's say the sheriff says, I think we should do this with homelessness, right? Okay. And the sheriff says, I think we should do this with homelessness, and the coordinating council goes, no, we don't agree. Well, I think that's a big enough issue, that we need to know about that.
And I think it would be our hope and expectation that the council would weigh in and give your board the opinion and...
Exactly, and so, that's why I'm saying, and that's why I think it's just appropriate that no major option is closed off without the board being included. So, so to do this, without belaboring this too much longer, I, I would then move the staff's recommended actions as modified, and, but the modification I would put on item two is, all of the language in item two, and then say, a, a second paragraph, I mean, a second sentence that just says, options will not be closed off, nor commitments made, until the board approves.
Okay, so that's motion.
So that we would hear about the sheriff's recommendation before it got completely, because it is such a sensitive topic.
Christie, is that, is that clear enough? We're good?
Very clear.
Okay.
Michael, Michael, you want to?
Just, to be clear, that's the way our office functions.
Okay, so we had a motion.
It's all about making sure you have the recommendations that you want, and all of the information available to make those decisions.
That's why I don't think...
That's what we do.
That's why I don't think there's any problem with this at all.
Right.
That's what we do.
Personally, I don't think we have to call it out, but if a supervisor feels it's that important, then it's just an added reminder.
Okay, we got a first and a second.
Clarity, it always helps.
Please vote.
Yeah, I, I trust staff to be able to determine these options based on the framework that we've laid out, and so I, I wouldn't imagine you will bring us options that are infeasible and...
Thank you, Christie, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is item 25, and I'm going to read this, this is recommendation of Supervisor Zaragoza and Parks to provide direction to staff regarding the preparation of an ordinance regulating, regulating or banning commercial activities associated with adult slash recreational use of marijuana and industrial hemp in unincorporated Ventura County. And, and number, direction is number one, resource management, RMA, to prepare an ordinance expressly prohibiting in unincorporated Ventura County the operation of retailers, distributors, micro businesses, for in the commercial cultivation and manufacturing of marijuana for adult recreational use as regulated under Prop 64, the marijuana legalization initiative's status. And number two is direct RMA to work with the ag commissioner and other appropriate agencies to develop regulations to allow for the cultivation, manufacturing, and processing of industrial hemp, and also to return to the board with analysis and preliminary recommendations. And I'd like to share on my part, you know, that, as we all know, come January 1, we're going to be at the mercy of the state of California if we do not act on, on this act today. But we're not banning per se, maybe moratorium might have been a better word, but sometimes we have to look at this and, and regulate it ourselves. The state allows marijuana businesses, but they have not taken any hold in Ventura County, and this ordinance will take a couple of months to put together, so. At this time, I don't have any speaker cards with me, but Supervisor Bennett, you want to share something before we, or, excuse me, Parks, I'm sorry.
Yes, that we are up against a deadline. In January, the state could start permitting commercial adult recreational use of marijuana, both cultivation, dispensaries, manufacturing, et cetera. I think this is something that the county would want to regulate, and unless we get regulations in place, we can't do that. So, I, I think this is appropriate to, at this point, ban it until something, until the board supervisors can determine how they want to handle that. And secondly, I'd like the ability to consider the use of cultivation of hemp, which I have heard is something that is of interest to some of the growers, as well as some of our major clothing manufacturers here in Ventura County, who currently ship hemp from China. So, this is something that I think could help the, our economy, and help our growers, and something that I would like to investigate. So, part of this recommendation is to look at, have our staff come back with some information on the potential of allowing for cultivation of hemp. My understanding is that it doesn't have psychoactive properties, it's not a psychedelic, it has very low, and it's THC if any, and it's, so essentially, it's not a drug. And I think because it can be used for everything from clothes, manufacturing buildings, to, to paper, all kinds of different products, that this is something that should be considered. And I understand that the federal government does allow for research projects and pilot programs involving hemp, and if we could work within those guidelines and be able to allow for the growing of hemp, that that might be a benefit to our county in terms of the economy, and, and to benefit our growers. I also understand that hemp has a, does not require as much water, and it also does not require as much pesticides as you see with other types of cannabis. So, I think in, in that sense, it's more of an environmental positive for allowing for cultivation.
Thank you, Supervisor. We do have a letter from Dr. Patterson, that he says there's benefits in growing hemp here in Ventura County, so we do have a letter here that, that was shared with us. I have...
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah. I have quite a few speakers, you know, that, that want to speak on this item, so I'm going to limit that to three minutes, but however, before we do that, Supervisor Bennett?
Great, yeah, I'd like to pass out to the board, and if you could pass one of those to county council, I'd appreciate it, to Supervisor Parks, pass out the board. This is a, a way of providing notice to the board and to the public, since we're hearing this issue on the, the commercial ban, that Supervisor Zaragoza and I will be coming back in the next few weeks with a recommendation for medical marijuana in, in Ventura County. We had the motion, and the, our, our motion just didn't direct staff to do anything, and so the issue has just been left out there. And before we're voting on a ban on the commercial, I want to make sure people know that at least the two of us are planning on bringing back to the board an effort. And what we say here in the letter, I, hopefully, the letter is up there on PowerPoint, but it's not up there on the PowerPoint, probably. No, it's not up there on the PowerPoint. So, I'm just going to read the letter very quickly, it's very short. It just says, "By way of providing, providing you and the public with notice in a manner that comports with the Brown Act, we wish to inform you that we intend to file a board letter in the next few weeks to recommend the consideration of allowing limited medical marijuana facilities in the unincorporated area. We will be recommending that the board consider adopting measures to potentially allow one cultivation permit, one manufacturing, processing, testing permit, one dispensary delivery permit for medical marijuana within the incorporated, unincorporated area." The idea being starting very small, something very manageable, and something that we can learn from, as, as the cities are also moving forward. And we can explain more about this later when we bring the board letter forward, but I wanted to just capture the, the basic concept that, yes, that issue will be coming up, because I'm sure some speakers would be raising that issue today, and wanted to make sure that they knew that. So, Supervisor Zaragoza and I were happy to point that out.
And I just want to share with you, the reason I want to bring this back is because there's quite a few benefits that have been realized by use of medical marijuana, or treatment of cancer, like coma, and seizures, and disorders, and so forth, that we'll discuss later, that I think are important to, to the community with the medical marijuana.
I would also recommend that you include the ability to do research and testing when you come forward with your board letter regarding medical marijuana.
Absolutely, and I think it's important that we do that, because I've had a lot of calls of individuals that believe that medical marijuana is, is in a need that is needed now by, by the public. So, with that in mind, then we'll...
Also, if you can look at the Department of Treasury, they have put a list out of very important issues in regards to that, as to labeling, and lots of different information that I want to make sure that you look at, if you're going to be presenting us anything.
Right, and I understand also, and Chris is probably here, that there's some new regulations now, they're combining the medical and recreational marijuana, that's probably not going to change that much, but that, those regulations are not out yet, but those are going to be taken into consideration also.
And for background, as was mentioned, we essentially have a ban right now on medical marijuana, so you will be coming back with the potential of a limited permitting of it, and perhaps include research. But yes, I, I think we have heard, you know, good testimony, and also, a lot of us already know that there are medical benefits to marijuana. What we have before us, I just want to be clear, this is strictly talking about recreational marijuana?
Yes, tonight, yes.
Okay.
Strict recreational and the hemp, but I, I just wanted to share with you that this is a placeholder, you know, so. Anyway, I have several speakers, and I'm going to start off three minutes with Jeff Crowell, and then followed by Steve Sprinkett. Am I pronouncing that correctly, Jeff?
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, City Attorney, Council Clerk. As many of you know, I'm the president of Shangri-La Cooperative, we're one of the three that received a permit in the city of Ojai for medical. I've appeared several times in front of you all, and I'm just blown away by the fact that we've had Proposition 64, and overwhelmingly, in the county, it was a majority that adult recreational be allowed. With that said, medical marijuana, we all agree that it has medical value. But with the permit that we've received for delivery, for example, in Ojai, I'm allowed to deliver in the Ojai Valley, but not necessarily in the unincorporated area. So, for example, if a general contractor was going to do a remodeling, and my home base was in Ojai, I'd be required to come into the city of Ventura, or Oxnard, or Camarillo, or in the unincorporated, to come to the city government and get a permit for remodeling. I really encourage you to write at least delivery options for the unincorporated area.
Yeah, I, I do believe we already, we already do allow for delivery, and our county council can...
Is that true? It's, it's a gray area, let me tell you, I've been trying to get a letter...
Let the county council share that.
Okay.
As I recall, the existing ordinance, it's, uh, delivery is exempted from the ban.
It's exempted.
As is any use that doesn't require a state...
The fact is, I've tried to get acknowledgement of that, and that has not happened as yet, okay? So...
My understanding is, we can't, even if we wanted to, which we haven't expressed any desire to, we can't legally limit your ability to deliver or transport.
Well, under, yeah, that's true, under, that basically happens on January 1st of 2018, the inhibiting of transportation. But I'm hoping, as well as the other two collectives and cooperative, to be in operation in November or December. So, that's why I'm bringing this up at this point.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
And next, Steve Sprinkle, followed by Joe Kyle. Hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly.
Hi, good morning, thanks for allowing us to do a short presentation on this important matter. I'm Steve Sprinkle, I'm an organic farmer in Ojai, and I actually farm on county property at the Old Honor Farm, which is run by help of Ojai now. The title of the, of the presentation, the title of the subject couldn't be more paradoxical or off-putting, because I, I'm here to, to ask for these two items to be separated out, because it's almost as paradoxical as asking people for permission to raise mountain lions in the backyard versus tabby cats. Because although these two plants are in the cannabis family, marijuana and hemp, they couldn't be more dissimilar with regard to their use. And hemp production actually is detrimental to open field cultivation of marijuana. When I was working in Nebraska, and I saw in the Platte River Valley, miles and miles of leftover hemp that had been grown during World War II for use for the military, I stopped and visited some farmers, and I said, boy, this must really drive the sheriff crazy to have all of this hemp growing here. And he said, no, actually, he likes it, because field-grown hemp will affect the quality of the field-grown marijuana, and field-grown marijuana growers will not appreciate having hemp grown. So, I think that's one small example of why the, the production of these two things is so dissimilar. There's no recreational use, drug interest in production of hemp, it's not a Trojan horse that will lead to open field cultivation of marijuana, and actually, they're so dissimilar that they won't be in the same field. I've been interested in the production of hemp for about 15 years, and I've written about it, and I've followed the growth of the, of the industry, and the, and the food industry, and the, and the fabric industry with regard to this product. And I think it's a, a good opportunity for the county to allow for experimental production of hemp, and to see what happens here. And to, essentially, we, without getting into the weeds, pardon the pun, we don't really want to talk about these two things at the same time. So, that's the, the gist of my discussion. Have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Steve, but we'll get a report on that, too.
Okay, very well.
Thank you for sharing. Joe Kyle, followed by Marie Scott.
Hello, Board of Supervisors, my name is Joe Kyle, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I understand the action this board is taking to ban recreational cannabis before January 1st, 2018. I simply ask that this board look at medical and recreational cannabis in depth, just like this board is doing with hemp. I'm, I'm very happy to hear that you guys are writing a board letter, I look forward to reading that and coming back to that same thing. But I hope that, with that, I created the Thousand Oaks Medical Marijuana Outreach, and, and got Thousand Oaks to do what they're doing, and, and my biggest push is that they do not have only one. Do not allow locally mandated monopolies, minimum two, we hope for three, and I am pushing for that in Thousand Oaks like no other. And I hope that you guys look at the same, because allowing one dispensary, one delivery, one cultivation, one manufacturing, it is a locally mandated monopoly, plain and simple. All hemp is a cannabis plant that tests lower than 0.3% THC. Hemp seeds now have to be state-approved in order for them to be, in order for them to be planted. I support hemp production within this county, but I would like to see more than just hemp. Supervisor Parks, when I sat down with you a few months ago, you expressed, expressed support for safe access by delivery services within this unincorporated areas of Ventura County. To be clear, these were delivery services based outside Ventura County unincorporated area, just like Jeff had stated. I realize the board's current ordinance does not ban delivery services dropping off to patients within the area, as long as they are not based within unincorporated Ventura County. I ask that this count, that this board make an ordinance permitting those delivery services with a permanent base of operations to drop off to patients within unincorporated Ventura County. I ask for them to be permitted to, so this, there is never any confusion between law enforcement and these permanent delivery services when they are dropping off to unincorporated Ventura County. This is exactly what the city of, of Oxnard is looking to do. I ask the board to continue the conversation on all things cannabis, like multiple cities within this county have started to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, I think Supervisor...
Mr. Kyle, I just want to point one thing out to you, I appreciate your comments about monopoly, it's something that I brought up earlier, but now that we have cities that are starting to do it, Ojai, Thousand Oaks, et cetera, I don't think that if the county limits themselves to one, that the consumer will be limited to only one, the consumer will have the options to go some other places. But it is something that it's, it is, it does make common sense, you don't want to create a monopoly, and so, to the extent that, that's something we, we'll try to be sensitive to as we look forward with our language, okay?
It can make the land rush in Ventura County unincorporated very interesting, when only one permit is going to be approved. So, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Marie Scott, followed by Monica Gray.
Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors...
Honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Marie Scott, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. With great respect, I truly appreciate several of you giving your valuable time to meet with us, and here are our pleas for help. I know you don't want to negatively affect the cannabis patients that rely on this medicine, but firstly, we still don't have the medical cannabis ordinance promised to us, offering protection to our local providers. Secondly, secondly, next year, most people will opt out of the medical category because of money and inconvenience, in order to qualify as a medical patient, one must pay for an annual doctor's recommendation and pay the annual cost of a state card through the county. This is a failed program, and most patients will get their medicine through the adult-use market, provided they are over 21. This action will have the unintended consequence of affecting the medical consumers, and Dr. Patterson's letter also asked if you had abandoned us, and he didn't want you to move on just to hemp. The state's intention for drafting this extremely detailed legislation was to minimize black-market activities. Regulation means accountability for professionals, which is what this industry is now comprised of. Our cultivators should be celebrated, not criminalized, they are developing new medicine every day, they should be given the opportunity to prove that they are valuable members of our community. Cannabis is always going to be here, the question is, do you want it in the black market, or do you want it in a well-regulated, transparent, professional market? In 2015, for every thousand residents in Ventura County, 680 opioids were prescribed. Locally, 20% of 11th graders are getting high on prescription drugs. There were 64 local pharmacy burglaries in 2016, a spike from six in 2015, and we have a problem, and people want alternatives. It is a fact that in states that legalize cannabis, there is a 25% reduction in opiate overdoses. As legalization expands throughout the county, the stats don't lie, teen cannabis use hasn't been this low since 1994. This defies some of the misinformation put forward by anti-cannabis organizations. What this proves is regulation is effective. I think the better approach for the county would be to educate about safe use, the county health department should talk about minimum effective dosing, the ag commissioner should discuss safe pesticide alternatives and provide material that depicts what mold and fungus looks like, and explain how and if it can be safely treated. And Chris Stevens has done extensive research into developing regulations suitable for the county, I believe he is capable of writing a sensible ordinance, as other cities and counties already have. The majority of our county has voted, has some form, sorry, the majority of our country has some form of legalization, the majority of the state has voted for legalization, your county has voted for legalization, and it's time to take action, we're looking to you to take progressive action and represent what those who elected you want.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Okay, Monica Gray, followed by Wayne Richmond.
Shout out to my professor at VC for understanding the importance of me being here versus me giving the presentation I had today, you know, no, it's no surprise that it was actually on, a study that shows rise in marijuana use is not caused by legalization. Basically, in Ventura County, we have dragged our feet for so long and prevented the establishment of this industry, and then to know that, you know, big business is still being favored over the rights of patients, still irks me, as a patient, as someone who depends on cannabis as life-saving medicine, and you know, it's been about a year, almost a year, since the unfortunate raid on my former job, still unemployed, it'd be nice to acknowledge that and, you know, create some jobs in the cannabis industry, rather than going hemp good, cannabis bad, you have to understand the fundamental differences between the plants. I appreciate that you guys are moving forward with regulations addressing the validity of cannabis as medicine, but the thing is, is that I've heard the quote, "Privilege is when you think something is a, is not a problem, just because it's not a problem to you." Just because you may know a few people that can grow their own, doesn't mean that everybody can, and it's an unfair assumption to think that they can. So due to the endocannabinoid system and the functions that it performs, there is really no distinction between recreational and medical use of cannabis, the only thing standing between people and having a medical card is the money that they pay. You can do telehealth medicine, you can visit a couple of the local doctors that issue those, but it's also cost-prohibitive. The taxes that are going to be added come January make it even more cost-prohibitive for people, and frankly, a lot of people found that when they registered for that state card, it was a waste of money, and only put them on a list of people that will more than likely be targeted for enforcement. Might be a little built-in paranoia, but hey, we've actually had it happen to a few patients I know, so don't think that it doesn't occur. Monopolies and licensing kind of favors cronies and insiders, you know how many people we have in this county that use cannabis? Having so few providers is going to create, you know, an epic battle for the right to do so, and I would say that the general plan failing to update, or the general plan update failing to address cannabis at all, or the possibility for cultivation, manufacture, or anything, is really short-sighted. Also, the Workforce Development Board hasn't addressed the cannabis industry as, you know, really big potential for job creation, that's also a really narrow, narrow view that they're taking, so I would encourage you guys to look at the whole picture, separate the two, because I know people that are out there selling, it's just bottles of CBD, and they're telling people, "It doesn't get you high, so it's so much better," that's incorrect. Look up the entourage effect and learn a little, thanks.
Thank you, Monica. Wayne Richmond, followed by Brian Hamta?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Wayne Richmond.
Morning.
I'm the Executive Director of the California Hemp Association and the California Hemp Foundation. I'm here basically to give you an update, I was here six months ago where I mentioned to you a $700 million annual opportunity, and by that I mean, the United States imports nearly $700 million last year of raw hemp products from China and Canada primarily. Just as a note here, this bag that I'm holding up is Hold Hemp Seed Hearts bought in your local Ralph's Market. This is a legal product, yet your farmers are prohibited from growing this product, which sells for $12 a bag, just to give you an idea. The economic opportunities continue to grow, the CDFA has formed the Industrial Hemp Advisory Board, it has met one time, it will meet again in three weeks, it has 11 members seated, of the 11 members, we know eight of them are happily hemp-oriented. Hemp is a fait accompli coming to California, the question is, how do you want to play in this marketplace? So as Supervisor Parks correctly pointed out, there are a lot of interest in your community, I'm actually here today at the request of Phil McGrath, last week we had meetings with Mr. Sprinkle sitting here and Patagonia, on how we can bring this plant and all of its economic benefits to this community. You folks are actually really well-suited to be the model and the center point of this new economy in California, it's part of your local history, Phil McGrath's father grew hemp in this very county, not 80 years ago, okay? So the history is deep, the packages that I've given for handout today, I hope will give you what is essentially an MBA in hemp in an afternoon's reading, it's the latest of information, and so where we're at, at the moment, is really tying up some loose ends, having some agreements in place, we are, in fact, growing hemp in Yolo County, Imperial is next, you folks could be next as well, everything is in place. What we need to do is basically move from a state-authorized program, which limits the amount of seed varieties that we can try, to in-state product, to out-state, out-of-state, both Colorado, Kentucky, and around the world. The cultivars are many, there are approximately 150 of them, we'd like to try them all because of the various, various microclimates, that's the research part. If we partner with your local college and your ag commissioner, it's, we're two steps away from making this happen in a federally compliant program in your community.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Okay, Brian, followed by Susan Jolly.
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
I'm glad to see that you guys are breaking ground as far as the marijuana laws go and everything, and I just have a few recommendations I'd like to make, as far as everything I've been hearing today. As far as the medical regulation goes, I just want you guys to be aware of that 18-year-olds have access to it and can also purchase a half a pound at a time. That being said, it takes 10 minutes with a Google search to obtain your medical marijuana recommendation, so it's that easy for the high school students that are still 18 to go get a half-pound of marijuana and bring it back and distribute it among the underclassmen. That being said, I want to move towards recreational, recreational's limits allow you to an ounce, and you have to be 21 or older to purchase it. This won't leave room for a black market, if you go forth with medical, you're going to create the black market. Also, I wanted to point out that the whole delivery model is extremely unsafe. I'm the president of Green Bee Collective, I've been running it for four years now, and I've seen so many things happen in these last four years, as far as the industry goes, and just to say, the delivery model is very unsafe, people having to go to other people's houses, having to verify people over the phone, not really knowing what to expect when you show up, it's very dangerous. If you want to create a very regulated, controlled system, I don't recommend the delivery model, the storefront model would be much better suited for that, could be much better controlled, and I also agree with the fact of not creating a monopoly by only releasing one license, I think with three licenses would provide fair enough competition, and also not create a black market at the same time. There's also a lot of other things that I'd like to address, but I don't really have much time to, but I don't know if you're aware with all the different licenses that are, that are coming out in 2018, there's about 12 different ones, and they vary from medical or recreational, so in total, there's about 24 different licenses, and they can all be in different combinations of each other. There is a Type 12 micro-business license that allows for a maximum of 10,000 square feet, and that's to have a fully vertically-integrated company, that means that stores doing their own cultivation, their own manufacturing, and their own distribution. With everything being kept in-house like that, it has to be tested by a third party, so it cannot be tested within-house, it has to be sent out to a testing facility, and in order to pass, once it passes, then they're allowed to sell it. As far as strict labeling and packaging requirements go, that's all coming with Prop 64, so I've seen this county kind of go back and forth with what they want to do as far as medical marijuana goes, I don't recommend going in that direction, the medical patients can receive the exact same benefits of medical marijuana through recreational marijuana.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Okay, Anthony Wallering, followed by Susan Jolly.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Clerk of the Board, and Council, my name is Anthony Wallering, I am the CEO of Sunshine Floral, which is a 25-acre greenhouse operation on Reis Avenue, and also the CEO of Groling, which is a 40-acre operation on Gonzalez Road. I want to bring the point of view across that the greenhouse sector is a high investment situation, we invest more than 200,000 per acre in building greenhouses, heating, and et cetera. As you probably are aware of, we have a lot of flower growers here in Ventura County, and we compete basically with Colombia. Colombia and Ecuador import 90% of orchid flowers being used in the United States. This makes it very hard for our sector, it's basically no equal playing field, they have low cost of land and labor, no heating costs, so since the 80s, when we opened the borders for foreign flowers from South America, 80 to 90% of the cut-flower businesses in the USA has disappeared. Now California produce 80% of all cut flowers, and mainly in Santa Barbara and Ventura County. But there is a need for a profitable crop, my two companies I just mentioned have lasted for many years, the last five years at least. Cannabis could be a very profitable crop, and is very well-suited for greenhouse cultivation. In Salvias Besso County, it's allowed, in Santa Barbara County, it's allowed, presently in Santa Barbara County, we have 400 acres of cannabis, it's well-regulated, they pay high fees, it's good for tax income. So I would request to allow cultivation of cannabis in Ventura County, so that these businesses can become profitable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anthony. Susan Jolly, followed by Regina Stehle.
Thank you all once again for your service, I want to say three things today, first of all, I think Fillmore has been very clear lately that they are not interested in having any commercial or medical grows in our area of the unincorporated area of the county. We feel that enough is being grown elsewhere, leave it there. Secondly, we are not interested in having hemp growers as neighbors, it took us a full year of phone calls and letters to get help to stop an $8 million illegal grow that used stolen water, illegal electricity, posed a fire hazard, and housed a record number of illegal weapons. We see hemp as another foot in the door. Finally, marijuana is still a federal illegal drug, as a mother of four doctors, medical doctors, I urge you to consult your county professionals, you have a medical, you have a medical training center there, and your personal doctors, and read the AMA research, which appears to be coming up with a very different story about medical marijuana and its efficacy. Just because folks talk about medicine and patients, doesn't make snake oil real, be careful.
Thank you, Susan. Regina, followed by Bob Jolly.
Hello, my name is Regina Staley, I'm a farmer and teacher, my family's farm is on Grand Avenue in Fillmore, and they had a farm, a pot farm directly behind it, and directly to the, to the east of us. Our experience with pot growing has been nothing less than a nightmare. We were all aware, we are all aware of the profits generated by this product that are next to obscene, and yet there is so pathetically little infrastructure to lean on to regulate pot, to keep its production and its marketing transparent, to keep it clean of corruption, to keep it out of the hands of our young people. Took the alcohol industry years to develop a system to regulate their, their system. With pot, where's the regulation? What is the regulation? We are walking into a nightmare, as a county, the same nightmare that my family had to walk for years. Please be aware, thank you.
Thank you. Bob Jolly, followed by Wes Rogers.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, excuse me, while following the marijuana cultivation issue before the Fillmore City Council, I listened to opposition from the county sheriff, the undersheriff, the Fillmore Chief of Police, the Fillmore Superintendent of Schools, the County District Attorney, and County Behavioral Health Services. In view of the opposition from these eminently qualified agencies, I seriously fail to understand why this keeps coming up, and I support the ban on commercial activities associated with marijuana use in Ventura County. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Wes Rogers, so last speaker, right?
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
My name is Wes Rogers, medical marijuana, sustainable farming advocate. Here we are, two years after Medical Marijuana Act passed, October 2014, and we still face a ban in the county, my guess is, the playbook will play out in, in the same way for recreational, so I have no expectations in that regard in terms of you rejecting a ban, but there is a flaw that I'd like to point out in the strategy. The defeated Medical Marijuana Ordinance Guidelines this past March derived a total countywide canopy size limit, based upon a... countywide canopy size limit based upon a calculated number of patients residing in the unincorporated areas only. This same approach with adult-use cannabis or an outright ban will assure that the lion's share of marijuana grown will be in the lesser-desirable populated areas. I'm asking the Board to consider the best interests of all Ventura County, including the ten cities, and provide for rural, unincorporated areas as the preferred location for growing the cannabis it supplies to its estimated one hundred thousand-plus users. Many municipalities have banned outdoor grows due to the potential access to minors. Indoor grows may be the most secure way in which cannabis is grown, but it is the worst possible way when considering the energy required to grow indoors. The CPUC estimates that half of all California future power load growth will come from new cannabis cultivation. At the same time, the state is striving to meet its goal of a forty percent below nineteen-ninety levels reduction in carbon emissions by 2030. Experts state the indoor cannabis cultivation releases fifteen hundred to three thousand pounds of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere for every pound of cannabis produced. Conversely, rural, mixed-light greenhouses not only provide the security cannabis requires, but uses one-third or less energy than that of indoor grows. I'm asking for the Board to respect the will of Ventura County majority by not banning cannabis farming in the unincorporated areas. Please consider in your new direction to planning a strategy to allow large, mixed-light, secure greenhouse canopies in the rural, unincorporated areas, providing for the majority of the cannabis grown in the county. This is the optimal balance for security, as well as by far the best way for energy conservation and sustainable farming. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
I just wanted to ask you, outdoor security, so can you tell us a little bit more about what you envision as secure greenhouses?
Well, actually, Chris Stevens was able to react to some of the input that I gave him, and actually proposed a more hard-shell, kind of hard-structured greenhouse, as opposed to what you might envision to be an outdoor greenhouse, which is the typical kind of hoop house that you see all over. So there are secured facilities, fencing, all the things that you would require, but you also then have the benefit of what? The sun. It's really the way to do it.
Yeah, I too was gonna ask what you meant by greenhouse, or green canopy, I think you referred to it as. Secondly, we'll have that discussion, obviously, on medical marijuana that the Board of Supervisor will be hearing, but my understanding from the calculations that Mr. Stevens did, they were not just for patients in the unincorporated county, but that's something we can get clarification on.
I understood it to be something less than nine hundred patients, and so there was a canopy size limit that was derived, that was under fifty thousand square feet.
So when you're referring to canopy, you're referring to like a footprint?
Sure.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker, now, Adam Villa?
Vega.
Vega, okay, it doesn't say Vega here.
Sorry for the bad writing.
It's okay, it's okay.
Good afternoon, Board, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. My name is Adam Vega. I'm a community organizer and lifelong resident of Ventura County. I attended Oxnard High School thereafter, Oxnard College, and this past major, recently graduated from CSUCI. So the reason I mention these three specific points on my educational journey is to bring to light one common thread, and I'm not talking about the strange mascot choices of the schools, no. So the fact is, these schools where our children, brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers, friends, families work and attend are surrounded by fields, beautiful fields which provide food, which feeds, you know, the world. Such a service to the world does come at a price, accomplished at the expense of those in the fields as well as the surrounding areas. These sacrifice zones are exposed to some of the worst pesticides which have been linked to IQ loss, birth defects in children, and not to mention countless diseases which are developing dormant, diseases we've yet to see take their toll. I'm here today to urge you to please support hemp production in Ventura County, allowing the people of this county to have a choice in which crops are grown in the fields surrounding them, allowing a crop that is drought-tolerant with low to no pesticide use, which is safe to harvest and grow naturally. At a screen of the Lores last night over there at the Fifth Street Plaza, we were reminded that, you know, Cesar Chavez himself did organize here in Oxnard not so long ago. One of the most important issues surrounding their work was the need to end pesticide use in our fields, you know, for everyone here now and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that's the last speaker, and Board members, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item. You know, I'm sure that a lot of people, I want to thank all the speakers that spoke today, you know, it was passed by the voters, you know, and I think that this is important that we, that we put a placeholder on this item, because come Gen One, as I mentioned before, we're gonna be at the mercy of the state, and I believe that we should regulate for the cannabis, whether it's recreational or medicinal, on the behalf of our residents, and it's a placeholder, and I think that this would allow us to make probably much better recommendations for residents.
And as we look around the county of Ventura and all the cities, I don't think any of the cities are looking at opening the door to recreational marijuana at this time, but they are interested in medical and because of the legitimate purposes of it. So I'll look forward to seeing what the Board brings back on that. In regards to hemp production, the idea that it can be done under the federal guidelines and be compliant, and at the same time offering our growers a new economy really, on which they can take, that they can enjoy, I would like to be able to give them that opportunity. You can get research and pilot programs approval from the federal government for growing hemp. The state allows for it, and so what we're asking here is to, let's look and see if the county, what the county staff comes forward with in terms of legalizing it here in the county, so.
Supervisor Bennett, I think, and then, Bennett and then, go ahead, Long.
So the direction is to ban this currently until there is an ordinance that is provided to us?
Two different requests, right? The first one is to ban the recreational adult, and the second one is to have staff come back with a report on the ability to do hemp growing, and that's something that, you know, I would like to have us investigate, because it does have that opportunity to assist the growers, and also even our, like, they mentioned Patagonia, interested in purchasing it locally instead of having to ship it in from other nations.
And Supervisor, and I still believe this is a placeholder until we, you know.
Okay.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I thought it was interesting, one of the speakers who's opposed to marijuana use and cultivation, et cetera, was asked the question very appropriately, where is the regulation, you know, that is out there? And with this being something new, the regulation has to be developed, has to be developed at the local level. So I have expressed before, and I still believe, that we're better off having some kind of regulated market than we are having the black market out there. And the question is, how do local governments develop the knowledge, skill sets, abilities to properly regulate the market? So faced with a situation here that's not, in my mind, ideal, but it's what I'll end up supporting, because it's not ideal, because given our Board, it's likely that this won't be a temporary ban, that this will become, this will be a permanent ban, that we won't go forward, but we're faced with, if we don't do the ban right now, we lose all local control over this, over this, you know, and so I'm not ready to lose all local control at this point in time, and that's why I'm glad that Supervisors Zaragoza and I are in agreement in terms of coming back and at least beginning the process of having county government be involved in some of these aspects of permitting, so that we start to develop, along with the cities that are doing the same thing, we start to develop some of the skill sets, knowledge, et cetera, to find out what we can and can't do, what we should, shouldn't do, so we can have the sheriff weigh in, look at this is what's happened with this operation, et cetera. So I will support this action, and I clearly support the industrial hemp concept. I think that's a win all the way around for everybody, but I'll support this ban, but it's not because I think this is the ideal or that, but because it is better to do this than to lose the ability to regulate the market altogether if we don't do something by January twenty eighteen.
One thing I want to mention, too, that the state is still not finished with the regulations, you know, the combining regulations with the recreational and also the medical marijuana, so I just wanted to show that.
Can I just say one thing? And when we talk about cannabis or marijuana, and we state only one agency, it gets me leery, because when we talk about hemp of ag, there's other items along with that. When we talk about medical marijuana, there's more than, just in growing on hemp, I'm extremely concerned because of water. If we're talking about cannabis for recreation or medical, it's, we're talking about water issues, energy issues, law enforcement, kids, or healthcare, labeling, safety measures, we're talking about legally, federally, can the county take in money for recreational usage? We're talking about business, business license, state license, property tax, and so forth. We're talking about behavioral health. I've gotten a long, long laundry list of items in which we need to make sure we are considering for the safety of our community. We're talking about economic endpoints. Just because you grow recreational marijuana doesn't mean they can't make a honey, can't make an edible. There's a lot of different other businesses that are associated with that. And ag replacement, we do our top ten crops all the time, and we know that they rotate. We know that berries are going down to Mexico. We know where, things are changing here, and I just want to make sure that we're not pushing something, that we're making good decisions based on our community. I appreciate everyone being here and showing the support, but as a board and as representative of the county, we also have to look at all these other items. So it's not just a quick, easy fix, and I appreciate our Board making sure that we're going slowly for the safety of our community. It's not to say down the line, we might change our minds based on the rules and regulations that are given to us on the state and federal level, but I want to make sure that you know that we are working with you, even if you don't feel like we are right this minute, but that we are making sure we are looking out for the best for our community.
And Supervisor, I'm sure that RMA is gonna give us a good report back, you know, Chris has really worked on this diligently and.
And Supervisor Long, the concern you have for hemp, what I heard was water, and from what my understanding is, it's almost like a drought-tolerant plant compared to what they're growing right now in the field. So if that's your one concern, it seems like it would behoove us to at least hear back from staff on the legal potential use of cultivation of this.
Right, no, I look, I'm not saying no to it. I think we should look at it, but make sure that we get all the information. That's what I'm asking. Like, if you have a mixture of seeds, if you have this and that, safety issues, I just want to make sure that we cover it.
I see Chris in the back, he's calling again.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add one thing. We understand Recommendation One, Recommendation Two on the industrial hemp. We just want to add, we're not clear that the county can allow the cultivation of industrial hemp. So that's, there's a threshold issue. Part of the direction is gonna be to work with staff to see if we can, and if we can, then develop regulations that would allow that.
To make sure that it's legal and.
Just because we haven't really crossed that threshold yet.
And that's why I'm asking for all items, all departments to be about this, because if we were able to do it, why haven't we already?
So Leroy, can we add that to the second recommendation, that it has to be?
If feasible.
Right, if feasible.
You got that, Brian? Okay, so then we got a motion, a first and a second with that addition. Please vote.
We were doing great with Laurie last week.
What else you typing in there, Brian?
What's going on, Brian?
Okay, please vote. Okay, thank you, that's approved, and thank you to all the speakers today. Thank you so much. We are, we're going into closed session, and we'll be back at one thirty. Leroy, we gonna have any announcements? We just come back from closed session, we don't have any reporting to report at this time, but we're gonna go on to Item Twenty-Six. This is a receiving file, a presentation on the status of water in Ventura County by Supervisor Long and Supervisor Bennett.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. I appreciate all of you in the audience and anyone who's watching. Supervisor Bennett and I have had a lot of discussions about water since I've been on the Board, and with our recent five-year drought and the passage of the new state law regulations on groundwater, and the update on the Ventura County general plan, we believe that it's very important to be understanding where our water is coming from and how do we get more of it? We can't just always have a, us more rain and, you know, get our rain sticks out and do our dance. So it's important that we understand collaboratively where and how we're going to have our water. So we have on the state level, we have on our county level, and we have also the groundwater. So today we have three very special people, Susan Mulligan, we have Eric Berg, and we have Jeff Pratt, coming to talk to us today, and I appreciate your time and effort, and I'm welcoming you here to make sure that all of us are educated upon water. So with that, Mr. Bennett?
Supervisor Bennett? Great, thank you, and appreciate the opportunity to work with Supervisor Long on this and other water issues. We're gonna follow, although we're not in the same seating arrangement, we're gonna follow essentially the same format that we followed in the past. So Susan Mulligan will be on first, she'll make her presentation. We'll turn to the other two experts, water experts, to see if they have anything they want to add, or comments that they want to make about Susan's presentation, then we'll do the same thing for Eric, the same thing for Jeff, and then we'll open it up to the public and to the Board for any questions or comments. Great, so Susan. Susan's PowerPoint needs to come up, I believe.
That would help, yes.
And do you have the clicker down there? Okay, great. Finally, a new clicker, by the way, thank you.
That last one was really not a good one. This big button to go forward?
Laurie?
So I'm going to set the stage for my presentation, and I'm going to talk countywide, even though I'm from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, which is a part of the water picture, I'm gonna talk countywide about water supplies, going back in the past, talking about issues currently, and what we might expect in the future, and what we can do about the future. So the first supply infrastructure in this county was diversions that the missionaries put in, then there were some diversions on some of the rivers, and that is in the nineteen twenties in the Selmas area. Groundwater was so plentiful that they drilled a hole and it just came pouring out of the ground. So things went along fine for a while. Fast forward to the nineteen forties and fifties, I'm gonna read you just a few sentences from a Camarillo News editorial from nineteen fifty-three. It said, "And so the demand for water grew greater and greater, little by little, and then by leaps and bounds, the underground water supplies were used and depleted. Wells were drilled deeper and deeper, until the look of concern has become a wondering fear of the frightening eventuality: dry wells and seeping saltwater. This today is the situation faced by every resident of Ventura County, and to a greater or lesser degree, by every watershed in the county."
Nineteen fifty-three.
Over sixty years ago. What goes around comes around. What goes around comes around. So they had a big problem in the 50s. Those local resources were tapped out at that point. And three agencies were formed within a three-year period. United Water Conservation District had been Santa Clara Water Conservation District with a few little facilities, but it was formed as United in order to build Lake Piru. They built Lake Piru. Years later, they built the Freeman Diversion, although they were diverting down there. And so they captured stormwater and got it into the groundwater basins, starting in 1950. Casitas, 1952, same timeframe. They were formed to build Lake Casitas, divert water through the Robles Diversion off the Ventura River and deliver water to Okeechobee, Ojai, Ventura area. And finally, the East County and South County didn't have those same local resources. There was no big watershed in that area where there was a way to capture local stormwater and bring that to the area. So their only choice was to find imported water. And they formed together and formed Cuyagus in 1953. And Cuyagus went out, got imported water, brought it into the county and distributed it. So by the mid 1950s, you had three agencies essentially following the three major watersheds that covered the county, all really for the same purpose, although the supplies were different, to bring in supplemental water because the supplies we had weren't enough.
Excuse me, Susan, I'm just going to ask you because you're on that one. Is there a reason why Oxnard was not with United, but since it's surrounded by United instead of Cuyagus?
There's a story there. Oxnard is annexed to both. Oxnard was annexed to United, and they were a latecomer to Cuyagus. And there was a lot of discussion by United, by Oxnard, and by the pumpers on the Oxnard plane about whether United was going to have enough water for them. And the city of Oxnard decided, we're not sure United's going to have enough water for us, we're willing to pay more and buy into Cuyagus. The farmers made a different decision, decided not to join Cuyagus. So Oxnard actually is in both supplies.
And Susan, Oxnard was really got involved more so when Procter and Gamble came in. Because Procter and Gamble needed water, and Chuck Luther at the time was a water superintendent that worked with Cuyagus to tie into Cuyagus.
Yes, and they get only Cuyagus water, so they get the good quality water.
Exactly right. It's a direct line to Procter.
And I should mention, now that I've insulted his water supply, we have Anthony Emmerit from United Water Conservation District...
He was with Oxnard for many years.
...to help me out if there are any United-related questions. We work closely with United since we share service areas. Now I'm going to talk about where all the supplies in the county come from and where they're delivered to. So we have local surface water, one source is Lake Casitas, and the other is Lake Piru. And those blue areas show where those supplies go to, those local surface water supplies. Then you have groundwater, Jeff's going to talk about this, but there are groundwater basins in most of populated Ventura County and irrigated Ventura County. Places that don't have good groundwater basins is Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks. They have salty groundwater basins, and there may be some use for that water in the future, but right now they're not usable. Let's talk about imported water. The primary source of imported water comes through the Santa Susana Pass in Simi Valley from Metropolitan and serves the Cuyagus service area. In East County, Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks, they are essentially 100% dependent on imported water. In Moore Park, about 75%, Camarillo and Oxnard, 50%. Overall, that whole area, despite pretty aggressive development of local supplies, is 75% dependent on imported water. They just don't have the local supplies in that part of the county. There is a little bit of imported water that comes into United, quantity's quite a bit lower, from Lake Pyramid into Piru, and then that supports United's service area, does a little bit of groundwater supplementation there. And then just this last year, United was able to get some extra water because it was a wet year on the state project, and deliver that straight from Castake Lake. That was a unique opportunity. So these are the ways that imported water get into the county. Wastewater. These are the wastewater plants in the county. And we in this county do a darn good job of using our wastewater. All of the water, except when it rains, from all of those plants in that part of the county are either used as a recycled supply, or they recharge the groundwater basin. The water doesn't hit the ocean except in rainstorms. Ventura and Oxnard are in process and working towards fully utilizing their discharge supply. And I have to confess, I'm not familiar with Ojai Valley sand, what their plans are as far as their supply.
I can fill that in for you, and that is, Ojai Valley sands, their supply's already committed to providing a steady water supply in the Ventura River.
So it's committed as well.
It's committed, and it goes to keep the flows up in the Ventura River.
So once Oxnard and Ventura have used their supplies, we've done it all. We've done everything we can on recycled water, except for rainstorms, and I'll talk a little bit about that, because there's ways we might be able to get that water. Okay, those are the supplies. Let's talk about the problem. I think we're all aware that water isn't going as far as it used to. We have these shortages and cutbacks. Well, why is that? There are four main reasons, well, four main threats to our supply. Weather is one. The need to protect habitat is another. We built our infrastructure back in the 1950s, 60s, and nobody thought about the impact on the environment when we did that. And there's no question that if you take water out of rivers and you aren't careful about it, you're going to hurt the habitat. There needs to be a balance, but we can't be doing it the way that we used to do it. That's a reality, that's not going to change, and we need to do something different. But it means we, people, get less water. And I want to talk a little bit about tragedy of the commons. I'll tell you more when I get to that slide. And then salinity as well is a challenge to our water supplies. And these are Ventura County challenges, but they're frankly the same challenges statewide. So we had four record-breaking years recently in California. Dryest, hottest, lowest snowpack, all in a row. Two years later, wettest ever on record. Is that the beginning of a new weather pattern? Or is it just a few crazy years? Time will tell. I think we do know some things about the weather patterns. These are just some headlines out of the papers. There are thousands of them that you can find online. And this just shows that each of those three supplies that we developed in the 50s is going to have less water because of the need to protect habitat. So there's United in the Santa Clara River, Casitas on the Ventura River, and then Delta pumping to Southern California restricted, that's the Sacramento Delta, and the need to change the way we get water from there, and to frankly get less water from there because of habitat. All those three supplies that people were counting on then aren't giving as much as they did. So tragedy of the commons. This concept dates back to the early 1800s, some of you probably know about it. But if there's a common piece of grassland in the middle of a village, the commons, and it's not owned by anyone, but everybody gets to use it, and there aren't any regulations, people start to graze their sheep on this nice grass, and they all benefit from it. And based on the size of the field and how fast the grass grows, there's a carrying capacity, the maximum number of sheep that it can handle. Well, if you put more sheep on the land, the grass dies and it doesn't come back. But there's an incentive for each individual to put as many sheep out there as possible. So it's an inevitable outcome that if everybody gets to do as much as they want, their individual incentive is to do as much as possible. It occurs in many different situations in the world, and for us, it's occurred in groundwater statewide and in the county. Because without regulation, each individual incentive is to use as much as possible, but it depletes the whole. So this county and statewide, that's a challenge for us, and I'm sure Jeff will talk more about Hanging gardens of Babylon. So Mesopotamia was an early, successful agricultural society in a dry area. They harnessed water for irrigation, and that civilization fell, not as a result of drought, not as a result of war, but as a result of salt. If you bring water in to an arid area and you keep irrigating and you keep irrigating, the plants take up the water but leave the salt, the evaporation takes up the water but leaves the salt, and over time, your soils get saltier and your aquifers get saltier. And again, kind of like tragedy of the commons, this is inevitable. This happens everywhere, this is just what happens. And as the water that's pumped gets saltier, the people who irrigate need to use more water because they're pushing the salt down. So it just gets to be a worse and worse problem. We also have this challenge in this county. Okay, so off of all those things, what are the trends? Well, we don't know everything about what climate's going to do in the future, but I think the scientists generally agree, the temperatures are getting higher and more precipitation's going to fall as rain rather than snow. So we need to adjust the way we get water to deal with that. We also know that more water's going to have to be left in waterways to sustain habitat, and we'll be negotiating with regulators for decades on how much that is, but it's going to be less than we used to get. We're also not going to be able to pump as much groundwater. We are getting towards the end of the tragedy of the commons. And our soils and aquifers are getting saltier. So those are the trends. How do we address these problems?
Could I just, real quickly, I just want to point out, the other reason that our aquifers are getting saltier is seawater intrusion.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Correct. Yes, this slide could probably go on forever with problems, but we'll move on to some solutions. So how can we overcome these challenges? I just picked four of maybe the major ways to address the challenges. So how can we overcome them and improve reliability as cost-effectively as we can? It's not going to be as cheap as it was. The cheaper supplies have been developed and we're getting less of them, but we need to be as cost-effective as possible. One way is conjunctive use and storage, and those are really kind of the same thing. And the key, and it ties in with climate change, is to catch water when it's available and put it in storage somewhere. It's pretty obvious how to do that in lakes. In aquifers, there's actually three ways you can do it. You can recharge it in spreading basins, you can inject it in injection wells, or you can change the way people pump. And I think you're all familiar with this, but basically, if there are other sources available, don't pump. Pump a lot less then, save the water, and then pump more when you don't have the other sources available. And that's conjunctive use, and that is using the groundwater basins as a storage reservoir.
Susan, last question. On the storage or pumping more into the ground, Oxnard has the desalt plant, you know, the gray program. And I'm sure we probably don't know, where are we right now with the state allowing that water to go into storage?
That is underway, and it, the state is developing regulations, and it should be doable to either inject it directly into groundwater wells, or, and I'll talk about it a little bit later, maybe putting in United's spreading basins.
Because that water's going out into the ocean.
Yes, and that needs to change. That's a resource. We don't have many resources left, and that's one that it would be great to make use of. Yes, absolutely. But the challenge with conjunctive use in groundwater is, who'd want to store water in an unmanaged aquifer? That's like, you invest in a project, you put money in a bank, and anybody can get the money out. So to make storage work in groundwater basins, management needs to come first. So supply diversification, I'm going to give you some examples of supply diversification. Multi-agency cooperation, the days of doing it on our own are long gone, some of us have been doing it for decades at this point. And water use efficiency is a supply that we're definitely going to need to make use of, and I'll talk a little bit about trends there. So I'm going to talk about some multi-agency projects that are going on in the county to just give you a flavor of what's happening out there. So about 20 years ago, Camrosa and Thousand Oaks, and actually Pleasant Valley County Water District got together, and they decided that they would take wastewater from Thousand Oaks and from Camrosa, and Camrosa and Pleasant Valley would use that for irrigation. And that project is up, and it's been running for about 15 years, and it's a very successful project, but now they're looking to do more. Oxnard, as Supervisor Zaragoza pointed out, has a recycled water treatment facility, and they have now connected temporarily through Cuyagus' salinity management pipeline, ultimately through permanent pipes, to Pleasant Valley County Water District. So now you have all these agencies connected in that have a recycled water supply, and they're all working together to maximize the use of it. Well, it gets better than that. United is working with them, they have their pumping trough pipeline system right between Oxnard and Pleasant Valley. They're working with these agencies to try to connect that in, to use more of the water. Even better, this is where the conjunctive use comes in. In the rainy season, this water all goes to the ocean, even the stuff from the inland plants. They discharge to the creeks, the water's gone. Well, United has this valuable resource, these spreading grounds. Take the recycled water, deliver it up to the spreading grounds, then you can use all the recycled water. When it's raining and nobody needs the water, put it into the groundwater basin. And United's working on that project as well. And last person to the party, by no means least, Camarillo is working on an arrangement, I think they just entered into an arrangement with Camrosa, to connect their recycled water system to this whole setup. So you have all these agencies, they'll use all the water as much as they can, and when there's not demand for it, it goes to United, goes into their spreading grounds. So great multi-agency situation. Pipe interconnection. Supervisor Bennett had a meeting on this maybe six months ago, between the three major wholesalers and the city of Ventura. So the concept is Ventura, and the three agencies other than Cuyagus have rights to the state water project, but they can't access it. United does through Piru Creek, but there are some flow and habitat constraints. So Cuyagus is connected to the state water project. So they can connect to Cuyagus' system over in Spanish Hills and tie it to the city of Ventura with a new three-foot diameter pipeline, take it over to Ventura. It goes past a number of United's spreading basins. So United could get access to this water as it comes by. And Casitas Municipal Water District, although they won't be tied in directly, they have rights to state project water, and they can tell Ventura, instead of taking water from Lake Casitas, use our state project water instead. And that's an in-lu arrangement, so it's not piped to Casitas, but Ventura uses Casitas rights instead of pulling out of Lake Casitas.
So may I, the proposal then is to take potable water from the delta and put it in United's spreading basins too? I wouldn't think you'd be putting potable water there.
Well, if we had access to untreated water, we certainly would put that in. But the only access we have is potable water.
Right.
So that's all there is. If they need extra water, that's the only extra water they can get. The only way to get untreated water is to build a pipe all the way to Castake Lake. So that's the only water there is. They would like untreated water, but they don't.
It does seem like there are recycled water lines here and there, but not there.
Oh, to put it into their spreading basins?
Yeah, it just seems like such a waste to take potable water and put it in spreading basins.
It wouldn't be the ideal solution. Yeah, it isn't the ideal, but they are connecting recycled water to their spreading basins. They'll use the Oxnard water first. This won't be their first go-to option.
But Susan, we're losing the water anyway, right? Because of the rain and draining right into the ocean and so forth. So we're losing it anyway.
We're losing it anyway, and it comes down to economics. They can get this water, United, for about $800 an acre foot. They can actually get it for cheaper than Cuyagus, because we pay for some reliability projects from that, and this is as available water. So for $800 an acre foot, they get water that they can put in the ground. Oxnard's water is even more expensive, so it's just economics.
Okay, and I would think that there's also something out there beyond economics. I know, I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
Like what?
Like taking water all the way from the delta that's good and drinkable and putting it in the ground here because it's cost-efficient. You know, to me, there are better uses for water, but I need to hear more.
I think it's just a question of, the Oxnard plain doesn't have a lot of options. They just don't have much access to water, and this may be all they get. They've got Oxnard's recycled water, and they've got a groundwater supply that's, they're going to have to cut back a lot.
Well, for example, I mean, if you mean actually putting it underground into spreading basins, something short of that would be putting it on the ground to water the crops, and then it can go from there. But it just seems like such a waste of a resource beyond the economics.
They would have the plumbing that they could also deliver it straight to Pleasant Valley County Water District or pumping trough pipeline. So the plumbing is there that they could do that as well. But this year, for example, they're having difficulty with their potable supply. But this year, for example, they're having difficulty with their potable supplies to Oxnard and Port Weneme because the groundwater levels are so low that they have nitrate and manganese problems. So spreading would help with that.
Right, so that's where I kind of get into this idea of priorities. Certainly, drinking is the most important thing you can do with that water, and then, you know, this would be near the bottom of my list because there's so many demands for it, you know, from agriculture to drinking, et cetera. Just to put it into the spreading basins doesn't seem like the best.
I'll just try something here, and Jeff Pratt might be able to do it, but I suppose, I completely understand what you're saying and agree with you. I suppose the only scenario I can think of, because I'm not really thinking this is going to happen very much, would be when you have the wettest year ever and the heaviest snowfall, and the state water pipeline actually has more water than everybody can use. So there is excess water out there, so there's this extra 10,000 acre feet, and they could subscribe to it, and they see that the cost makes sense, and this water would essentially not be used and not be stored, you know, and so they, so there's, in other words, if there's excess water, that's the only way I would see that likely happening in that scenario.
They actually have a better option when it's that wet. Because there's so much water, they could actually get it out of Lake Castaic, float it across the county line, and get it into basins in the county, and not pay for the treatment that Metropolitan does. So it's just a question of how they put the pieces together. Salinity Management Pipeline, we talked about salinity. The basins in this county are getting saltier and saltier. This is less a question of a new supply than it is using the aquifers and making sure that we can still use them as they get saltier and saltier. So this is the portion of the pipeline that's been built all the way up to Somas. You've got some desalters that are discharging into it. In the future, the next one in line is a Camarillo desalter and a North Pleasant Valley desalter, and there are a whole bunch that are in the planning stages. And I want to finish talking about group projects. So this is a group project because Cuyagus is building the Salinity Management Pipeline, but lots of other entities are building all these desalters. So it's a matter of working together. The last piece, there's a pure water project, Potable Reuse, which is the newest thing in water. And that is taking recycled water and actually making it into a potable water supply. They need connection to a brine line to make that project happen. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that project.
Could I ask about the desalters?
Sure.
In the Oxnard Plain? They pump the water up and they treat it versus osmosis, I guess?
Yes.
And then they distribute it for other uses. What keeps the saltwater from, you know, wouldn't that encourage saltwater to move in as you pump out, even though you're cleaning it and using it?
What keeps saltwater out is the Fox Canyon GMA.
Okay.
The pumping needs to be regulated. Yeah.
So the answer is, you only are allowed to take out so much to do the, going through the desalters?
Jeff will probably address that.
Okay, because it just seems, because they're all over, everyone's doing desalters, but it still involves pumping water out.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, absolutely. So last project I'm going to talk about, Triumpho Sanitation District is in County of Ventura. Las Verginis Water District is in County of LA. They actually share a wastewater system. All of the water goes to the Tapia Wastewater Treatment Plant. They have a joint venture where they both contribute to that. They have a very robust recycled water system. But in the rainy months, they don't have demand for it, and it goes out to the ocean. And this is too bad. So their plan is, during those rainy months, when they don't have the demand for recycled water, build a high-quality water treatment plant with reverse osmosis, treat it to a very high level. The state is getting, is working on regulations for this, there's every reason to believe it'll happen. Treat it to a very high standard, put the brine into the Salinity Management Pipeline, deliver that water to an open reservoir that they have, their West Lake Reservoir, and then it goes through a regular treatment process and goes to people, and it's part of their potable water system. It's a new concept, people need to get used to it. The state is regulating it tightly, but it's a way to make use of the winter supplies that otherwise go to the ocean. And we in the state are not in a situation where we can be all that picky about our supplies. We don't have a lot of them. Our supplies are dwindling, and we've got to be creative.
I know my concern with this project, which would feed my house, is the idea that you can't get rid of some things, like pharmaceuticals. They're having difficulty being able to clean it to a pure water standard. So I know that's the technology, and they're working towards that, but it isn't a perfect solution either, I don't think.
Ventura did a lot of pilot work on this, and they did a lot of testing, and they sent labs all over the state. And they found that they removed all but maybe one, and they tested for hundreds and thousands of them. So there are pharmaceuticals in all of our supplies.
In everything, even stuff from-
In everything.
-that were getting imported in all.
It's everywhere. It's ubiquitous. And it's unfortunate, but there are so many people in the world that it's the reality that we live in.
And so many pharmaceuticals in the world, right?
And so many pharmaceuticals in the world, yes. Yes. These are among the challenges. But they're going to have to prove that out. The state is very strict about health standards, and there's only a small blend of it compared to the imported water they've got in that reservoir. So they'll work their way through it. Okay, let's close out. Water conservation. This is our future. The governor in 2016 said water conservation is going to be a way of life, and that means we need to be efficient all the time. And the state is working on regulations. Use water more wisely, eliminate waste, strengthen drought resilience, and improve ag efficiency. What the legislators are working on at the state level and were not able to get through this year is some regulations that put budgets on all of the water agencies in this state based on 55 gallons per person per day in an area, and a certain amount of water that can be used outdoors, and that's not going to be a big lawn. That's going to be maybe a little lawn and a whole bunch of drought-tolerant. We are not going to be able to have big lawns in this state anymore. Whether you agree with it or don't agree with it, we're headed that way, and that legislation is going to happen.
Is that retro or for the new?
Retro for-
For the existing lawns and so forth, or?
Well, people with existing lawns are going to have to do something to cut way back, or they're going to end up having to pay a whole lot more for water. So people are going to have to change, and it's going to be painful. It's getting painful on a local level, and it's the state setting the regulations, and I've had some discussions with them about that. You set these, but we're the ones who look like the bad guys. But that's the reality, and it's going to be statewide, it's not just going to be one city.
So we're going to need a lot of education, or continue the education with the public?
We are. And I think people need to understand, you know, water has a carbon footprint, water is taken out of the environment. We're going to have to do this, and that's the ethic in California about how we do things.
When they say that water, the transportation of water is the highest energy user of any in the state?
Yes, it is. And I think people don't think about that water is part, a big part of carbon footprint. Yeah. So there will be these, this is Cuyagus's Metropolitan's rebate program, Ventura has them. Another thing that's happening along the lines of water use efficiency, Camarillo and some of the other cities and water agencies have this net zero policy where new development is contributing to a program that Camarillo uses to retrofit other people's homes with high-efficiency toilets so that new construction doesn't create more water demand, and Camarillo's really translated it into a very quantifiable program. So I'm going to just end on this note. Like it or not, we live in interesting times, it's not dull. There are times of uncertainty, but they're more open to our creative energy than any other time in history. And we just need to be energized and challenged by that, rather than go hide under a rock, like it sometimes feels like we want to. So I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Susan. What do you have next, Sue Roger?
First, on Susan's, basically focused on surface water and the connections and stuff, do our two panelists have anything you want to add specifically to her presentation?
(inaudible)
And then we'll open it up to board members. For Susan, anything that we didn't ask while she was making her presentation?
The question I have, and I think you mentioned that, that we need storage, storage, storage. Is that, you know, as opposed to, we're thinking about bringing water down from up north, but we need a place to store it when we get that water, when it rains, and also with the desalt plants.
We do, and I think that's where the county can provide leadership here. I think that with good management of the groundwater basins, that consider storage within the sustainability rules, we can actually use our groundwater basins to capture storage. If United has access to a whole bunch more water in a particular year, if we manage those basins properly, then-
We can store that water.
Yeah, or maybe others can store water in the basins. But that's, that's a really, that's the storage we've got that we haven't used, and frankly, the storage is starting to be used up by seawater.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
The only comment I would make off of Susan's presentation is the fact that many of the projects that she just showed you, those regional projects, wouldn't be possible without the imported water supply coming in from the Hill Canyon wastewater plant down into Santa Rosa Valley. That's the water that's being recaptured. That's 100% imported state water. The Pure Water Project that she mentioned in Oak Park is 100% imported state water, at least it started out as imported state water. So I'm going to talk about the imported water supply, and here we're looking at the Mount Lassen area flyover of some of the river systems and reservoirs at the north end of the Feather River watershed, just so you get a sense of the location. Ventura County shown here, so you have a better sense of how much water we're bringing into this region. Any particular year, there's the Morgan Stanley Towers. Some of you have seen my presentations before, so I apologize if some of this redundant. If we're to construct not one, not two, but three Morgan Stanley Towers, not 13 or 14 stories high, but 20 miles high, and fill them with water, not so much water we bring into our service area every year. It's about 100,000 acre feet, that's been our average deliveries over the last 10 years. We're currently about 83,000, 85,000 acre feet, given the drought conditions in recent years and the state requirements for cutting back. We've been as high as 128,000 in 2007, 2008 timeframe. Now, you see the International Space Station there. Why do I have that up there? Well, International Space Station is 250 miles above ground surface, right? The amount of water we've brought into this region last half-century would extend 800 miles. So we'd get to the International Space Station three times in another 50 miles with those three towers that you see there. A lot of water that's been imported in this area that, dare I say, without it, many of us in this room, in this county, wouldn't be here today. We wouldn't be able to live and work within this region. Water supplies, local water supplies just wouldn't support it. So let's fly up roughly 400 miles to the Feather River watershed, roughly 300 square-mile watershed shown here, that includes four tributaries of the Feather River, all which drain into Lake Orville, which you heard about in February, and the concerns with the spillways that are in process of being restored as we speak. Well, why don't we go to Northern California? Most of us in this room, I'm sure, are well aware, but those who may be tuning in online may not be. Well, those blue bars that you see there, that's the water availability, essentially the amount of water that falls in a particular watershed on average. This is not an Eric Chart or a Cuyagus Metropolitan, this is State Department of Water Resources. And the blue bars you see there, roughly 25 million acre feet of water available on the surface systems in the Sacramento River and the North Coast, and as you head south, get to the point where you can barely see, here in the South Coast, a fairly small amount of natural runoff within our region. So a relative blip on the California water availability radar here in the South Coast. So roughly 85, 75, or over 80% of the annual runoff occurs in the Northern Sierras, the Cascades, and the North Coast ranges. As far as use, you see there cultural use, shown in green, the urban uses, shown in tan, and not much on the urban side, except, exception up in the San Francisco Bay and of course down on the South Coast. The remainder, we're going to call environmental water. Either water that's been designated for specific environmental uses, or water that makes its way ultimately out into the ocean. As you can see, most of the water in the North Coast, the eel, the trinity, the clamath, makes its way out to the Pacific Ocean, very little development. Even the Sacramento River, which is our primary supply, most of that water makes its way out under the Golden Gate Bridge. Talk about snowpack water content, where we've been this past winter. We're just going to focus on that top chart there. If you look at April at the bottom of the chart and just continue straight up, April 1st is typically where you're going to see your peak snowpack. Well, this year in the Northern Range, that Feather River watershed in the Shasta area, we're about 150% of normal snowpack, average snowpack for this past year. Pretty good year, not historic. 1983 and 1998, our true super El Nino years were 225, maybe even 250% of average, but a decent year, given where we've been the last five. So some recovery in the snowpack. A lot of folks, you know, we tend to focus on the concerns over snowpack water content and the projections for the future, which may very well, much, may very well come. But what we've seen historically in the Feather River watershed is this chart that you see here, going back to 1930 when records were first kept. The 20-year average, moving average, you can see, is only about an inch below the original 1949 20-year average. So it's been fairly steady in that Feather River watershed, the snowpack water content. Just some snapshots of some of the images up in Tahoe early this year, Placer County, that's the bus stop in Placer County, the bus is going to be late that day. This is Emerald Bay, south end of Lake Tahoe, 30, 35-foot snowdrifts. This is a quick video clip from Caltrans, I'll let it run for a second.
(inaudible).
This is Caltrans worker heading over I-80, so Donner Pass, commenting that visibility was zero, yet he's driving. There were a number of opportunities this year to remove water or snow from I-80 heading over into Tahoe, again, just emphasizing the degree of snowpack. If we talk about snowpack water content and rainfall combined, you get this chart. And in the top-left corner, you see the state of California. You see roughly nine gauging stations, if you will. The three that are outlined in red are within the Feather River watershed, so very key for our resources, our water resources. In any given water year, from September 30th through October, October 1st through September 30th of the following year, you'll have roughly 50 inches of total water fall within that region. Where we've been the last five years, from 2000, the winter of 2012 through 16, anywhere, anyway, is shown here. Winter a year ago at 57.9 inches, so about 115% of average, a pretty decent year. Well, this is what occurred the past winter on the Yuga Rivers and some of the other river systems ahead, and all which drain into Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. Massive flows into the system. Where we currently are, as of September 14th anyways, that dark blue line, we now are at an all-time high of 94 and a half inches, which beats our 1983 record of 88.5, so roughly almost a half a foot above our historic high. So a banner massive year in terms of water resources in Northern California. We also wanted to look at historically, what's changed up in the Northern Sierra Range? Well, looking back to 1923, again, when we had reliable records, we're looking at that red line, not the dash line, the dotted line, but the other red brownish line, 20-year moving average actually has increased by 20%. And that probably shocks a lot of you. It shocked me, actually, when I came across it, not too long ago. Well, yeah, I tend to read a lot of articles and stories about the decline, the concerns over loss of snowpack and possibly loss of total precipitation. Well, this is just a snapshot in time showing you where we are as of today. Am I going, oh, I'm going backwards, that's the problem. Okay, so we've talked about snowpack, we've talked about total precipitation, total runoff, the amount of water that's ultimately going to drain into the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta just from the north in the Sacramento River, projected to be at the end of the calendar year about 40 million acre feet. We haven't seen numbers like that since 1983. Reservoir storage. This is a chart that takes us back to middle of August last winter, and I mentioned, the winter of 2016, we had 115% of overall precipitation, so a good year. Well, the three reservoirs I've circled there in red, Lake Orville to the north, you can see the gold region or yellow regions are the gap, essentially the available storage. The red lines are average for that point in time. So below average in Lake Orville, well below average in the San Luis reservoir, the second reservoir to the left there, we actually plateaued about 10% of capacity, which was virtually a historic low in San Luis reservoir, in a year that we had 115% of average precipitation. Why? Because of regulations. That's very- That's very disconcerting to us because the San Luis reservoir is south of the Delta. It's the primary state and federal reservoir on both the state project and the Central Valley project. So when you see it at 10% falling in an above-average year, you should be concerned about that.
Could you elaborate?
Sure.
On when you say because of regulation?
Yes, and I'll get to that in future slides. But primarily due to the biological opinions related to Delta smelt and some of the salmon issues that have required the state and federal operators or contractors to throttle back pumps at the south end of the Delta to allow for more flow throughout the system.
And so it's disproportionately impacting San Luis as opposed to all the other entities that receive Delta water?
It's impacting the state and federal water projects, and that's what that reservoir is for. It's not for a particular locale. It's for essentially all locales south of the Sacramento Delta.
And for some reason, it's disproportionately affecting San Luis?
Well, that's the primary reservoir where we park water. That water, that reservoir does not retain any local runoff. All of the water that makes its way into San Luis started out in the Sacramento River, either in the Shasta or Feather River watershed.
And the others, however, get water from other areas, too?
The others.
The other reservoirs that you have on this list?
Well, everything, everything to the south. Castake is state project water only. So that's water that either made its way directly down the California Aqueduct into Castake or was parked temporarily in San Luis, released in the Aqueduct, makes its way in Castake. The others on to the right, Don Pedro, Exchequer, those are part of the San Joaquin River system. That's water that's retained before it even hits the Delta.
Okay, so this doesn't get any water retained before it gets the Delta water, then?
The San Luis reservoir, no. If I understood your question, is purely Sacramento Valley River water from Northern California. So that was August. I'm going to bring you fast forward to mid-June of this, of the current year. And you can see some good recovery. More blue, the better. The reason you see Lake Orville not even at average conditions in June is because of the concerns with respect to the spillways, and they wanted to maintain adequate storage capacity within that system as they made repairs. Otherwise, it would have looked very similar to Shasta. The sister reservoir just to the left, which virtually was full by this time, by that time of year. San Luis reservoir, you see that virtually full. Very good to see that, but it took a massive year, water year, for us to fill that. Castake also in good, in good shape. This is the Lake Orville, just an aerial of Lake Orville showing the spillway. And just for a sense of scale of what occurred here, back in early January, over four or five days, that lake rose 55 feet. It did it again in early February. And that didn't lead to the failure of the spillway. They're only moving about 100,000 cubic feet per second through that spillway, which is rated for 250,000. It's just simply that after 50 years, the wear and tear, perhaps some preventative maintenance issues, they're still trying to identify the root cause. They began to have a failure of that system and had to shut it down. Diamond Valley reservoir, which is a reservoir constructed by the Metropolitan Water District of which Cuyahoga is a member agency you're aware of. It's a $2 billion reservoir constructed, finished construction in 2001. We've been living off of that reservoir in the last few years, given the drought conditions. And that chart tells the story from 2012 on. And we're in a good shape, we're in decent shape now, where we're virtually going to fill that reservoir by the end of the year. But that's been our water supply lifeline. Similarly, looking at Lake Kachuma, even though it's outside of our service area, this is a video from a year ago. As you can see there, that pipeline that's feeding water in Lake Kachuma, that's state water. That's the only reason Lake Kachuma stayed alive over this last drought concern, drought cycle. They were able to move some more state water into the system to keep it at least at that 7.5%. Now they're roughly at 40%, given Mother Nature cooperating last winter. But another couple of dry years, they'll be back, right back to where they started. So as we head down from the Feather River watershed into the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta, just going to talk about some of the high flows that we've seen in this system. Typically, in an average year, 80% of the natural inflow into the Sacramento Delta comes in from the north, from the Sacramento River. 5% from these eastside tributaries, the Casumnes, Tohome, McCombney. 15% roughly from the San Joaquin. So the Sacramento River, Feather River is key for state water. A lot of folks tend to believe it's Southern California. It's the Central Valley that's essentially draining the Delta. Well, again, this isn't a Cuyahoga or Metropolitan chart. This is a DWR chart. And this is a wet year that you're seeing here. This isn't the current year, but it's representative of a wet year. Two out of every three gallons roughly that's making its way into the Delta is making its way out of the Delta, out to the Golden Gate Bridge. The state water project, that purple piece that you see there at 8%, roughly half of that is Metropolitan's entitlement. So 4% of the water used out of the Delta goes to the benefit of roughly half the state's population, 19 million folks here in the Southland, over 50% of the state's economy that's generated within that region. But that's not a bad return on investment from our perspective. That's the reality. In a dry year, the Delta outflow is still right about 50%. Not going to get into these tables, just want to speak to some of the regulations that are in play on outflows that are required in the top part of that chart, water quality standards, salinity standards, particular times from January through December, provisions or regulations that could be in play that, again, require the state and federal operators to, contractors to throttle back on pumping. We add the fish restrictions shown here in a similar matrix, October through September. Those bars that you see there are potential timeframes where pumping could be reduced based upon regulations that are in effect. The bottom line is, how's that impacted our state water reliability in recent years? Just want to focus on that red line, which is the 10-year running, moving average. Last 10 years, we've lost about 40, 45% of reliability in terms of the amount of water, the allocations on that state system. Fortunately, you can see 2017, we're back up to about 85%. But again, a massive water year in order to get there. What we've seen historically, going back prior to 1980, if you combine the federal and the state water projects, typically pre-1980, we're looking at about 8 million acre feet of water available to those systems. And with the various regulations that have come into play over the last 30-plus years, you can see the decline in reliability to a point now that we're roughly 50, we've lost roughly a little over 50% of that water that we historically have had, while the population has continued to climb, of course. And the concerns are that what's occurring currently in the State Water Resource Control Board, the regulatory community on the Sacramento River side, the state board is now looking at possibly increasing unimpaired flows on the Sacramento River from any range of 35 to 75%. That essentially means just leaving more water in the river system. 75%. The impact of that on that chart is going to be dramatic. If we're not even considering that, we've still lost that over 50% historically. We factor in a 75% unimpaired flow in the Sacramento River, we're pushing three, probably a million acre feet, if not less, between the two projects. Not sustainable from a water supplier's perspective. So the valley flows, the Sacramento Valley River flows we've seen this year, 92,000 cubic feet per second of water at its peak on February 8th. Just so you know, a basket ball is about a cubic foot. 92,000 of those passing you by every second as you're standing there just south of the city of Sacramento. All right, for perspective, the Rose Bowl would have filled every two minutes of that day. One-day flow through that system would be greater than a two-year supply for Cuyahoga's service area, so at 92,000 cubic feet per second. On the eastside tributaries, massive flows also peaking on February 10th at 43,000. From the San Joaquin, peaking later in February, 41,000 cubic feet per second. A lot of water moving to the system. So for the first time in 24 years, we've been able to operate pumps at essentially 100% capacity on the state side, as you can see there, for over 10,000 CFS, direct capacity, going back to late January through the middle of February. We haven't seen that in almost a quarter century. And when we did in 1993, it was one day. River flood control diversion. So that's a lot of water that's in the system, right? That stays in the system from the Sacramento, San Joaquin, the eastside tributaries. Let's talk about what's out of the system, much more. The Yolo Bypass, some of you may be familiar with it. It was, it's been in operation about a century now. And its design, its original design was to keep from flooding the capital. Good, bad, or indifferent, it just is. So the Yolo Bypass shown here is roughly 40 miles in length, three miles wide, at its widest point, 10 feet deep when it's filled with water. It's filled with water at the extreme northern extent of it. That's a two-mile-long weir. They have proposals to extend that another mile and a half. There's also another weir just near the red lines that you see there, sticking off, looks like a little arm, much smaller weir, allows water out of the Sacramento River, get it into this low-lying ag land, and get it out of the system. It doesn't make its way back in the system until the south end, as you can see, of that green area, back into the west side of the Delta. But once it's daylighted back into the system at that point, it's not accessible by the state or federal projects. It's gone from a water supply perspective. Makes its way out to the San Francisco Bay. It's out on the Golden Gate Bridge. How much water have we seen this year? A lot. This is that smaller weir that I was, mentioned a couple of minutes ago. I'm going the wrong way. No, it's not cooperating. I got to get trained on the clicker. There's the weir. It's about 1,400 feet. The other is two miles in width. And you can see the water from the Sacramento River flowing down into, into the channel. It's a video that should have played. It's not. But the amount of water, 250,000 cubic feet per second. 250,000. That's enough to fill 10, 3,000-square-foot homes with eight-foot ceilings with water, again, passing you by every second of that day. And it's not just one day. They're not the flashy flows like you see on the Sacramento River, the LA River. You can see the data. It's every day for days for weeks. That amount, this amount of water is making its way into a flood basin. So it's stormwater. Talk about stormwater capture. For perspective, here's the LA River, 800-square-mile watershed. San Fernando Valley up in the northern portion. The red dot there is at Long Beach. At its peak this year, in January, the flows there were 17,000 cubic feet per second. And they lasted for a day. And they dropped off, just like the river systems that we see here. So the water is in Northern California, and that's why we went there 50 years ago and continue to. How much water have we lost just through the Yolo Bypass this year? Not in the Sacramento, the San Joaquin, just in the Yolo Bypass. Amount equivalent to not one, not two, not three, four. Full Lake Orvilles flowed out through the Yolo Bypass this year alone. 14 million acre feet, equivalent to a 25-year supply for the city of LA. Over 19 months, from June 2015 through December of this past year, statewide, urbans saved 2.5 million acre feet. It's great. Did a good job on urban conservation. However, over 19 peak runoff days this year, more than 2.5 times that ran out under the Yolo Bypass. This year to date, over five times that urban savings has gone out through that, stormwater has gone out through that Yolo Bypass. Total inflows in the Delta from October 1st through June 11th, nine months roughly of the water year, almost 49 million acre feet. 92.5% of that out to the bay. Outflow through Golden Gate, equivalent to an 80-year supply for LA or over a 200-year supply for the San Francisco PUC. That's not just the city. That's also their retail providers along the peninsula in south that buy water from the city of San Francisco. Again, just for perspective, good, bad, or indifferent, this is the reality. So let's talk about climate change. Sierra snow cover could drop by 50% by the end of the century. Western US snowpack could decline 60% by 2040. Well, here's a recent study from April 2016. Just a couple of things to call out here about snowpack. From the 5,000 to 8,000-foot level, in California, there was no trend at that elevation. Also, in the Rockies, no clear, no clear trend towards more rain as a percentage of all precipitation during the winter at any elevation. Last line, notable exception of regions above 5,000 feet in the central Rocky Mountains and Sierra Nevada in California. So this was a study of Mediterranean climates throughout the world. And in most of those Mediterranean climates, the concern is, or the trend shows, that there's declining precipitation expected, except for the Sierras. Into the Rockies. Here's just showing, in the blue barred or highlighted area, showing all the active snow courses in the Feather River. And you can see, there's only two that are below 5,000 feet. So most are well above 5,000 feet. Snow sensors, there isn't one that's below 5,000 feet. Again, just speaking to our, the source of our water supply. Also, from a recent UC Riverside study, looking forward, see a 12% increase in precipitation through the year 2100. Not saying it's going to fall in the form of snow, but that precipitation overall could increase, with the exception of Southern California. Just enough, just one of many studies that show a variety of different results, but this is a fairly recent one in July, as you can see. Last scientific report here, precipitation and warming world, hydroclimate changes in California, and again, Mediterranean climates. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of things. In California, these global climate models robustly project increased extreme precipitation frequency and intensity. Tendency towards wetter winters. So climate change, is this is the new normal? Less snowpack potentially, but similar amount of precipitation, if not more rainfall. Yolo Bypass, other flood facilities are going to fill more often, flow and fill more often. We had, this state has a massive, serious water management problem when you look at it from this point of view. And we must rethink conveyance, how we move water and how we store that water. The state, Governor Brown came out a couple of years ago with his water action plan, numerous references to the need, calling for more stormwater capture and storage. Well, I just showed you an example of tremendous volume of water that's coming through the system. And that doesn't happen every year. I'm not claiming that Yolo Bypass flows like this every year. It doesn't. But with the climate change concerns, it likely will become a wetter environment in the future. And we need to do something about it. So there's this increased need for focus on projects with multiple benefits that can help simultaneously improve the environment, flood management, and water supplies. Well, most of the focus up to this point in time has been on environment and flood management with respect to the Central Valley. This report here, cover sheet from just earlier in this year. Right out of that, increased flood volumes by 10% to 20% over the next 50 years within the Sacramento River Basin is their, their projection. However, when you look at the types of actions that they're looking at in this plan, I circled Action 5 and 7, that's right out of the state's, the governor's plan. They wanted to see, how does their flood protection plan mesh with the state water action plan? They said, well, for Actions 5 and 7, manage and prepare for dry periods and provide safe water for all communities? Well, you'd want to go over to that right column and find an action for the flood control project that meets those. Well, they don't have any. And that should be troubling as we go forward. As Susan mentioned, making water conservation a California way of life, that is a primary state focus at this point in time. That focus is primarily ratcheting down, tightening the screws on water use. Again, good, bad, or indifferent, right or wrong, pro or con, however you feel about it, it is the reality, and it's not going to change. Our concerns is it can't be on scale. You need both supply and demand management. And that's where the water fix has come into play for us. And we've been very supportive of that, as you very well know, would include three new intakes at the north end of the system where you have 80% of that freshwater flow into, into the Delta. It would also include the two tunnels, roughly 40 feet in diameter, buried about 150 feet below ground surface. This isn't the first time we've been there. Again, as you know, there's a peripheral canal over the 19, early 1980s. But it was part of the original proposal for the state water project, going back 60, 70 years. There wasn't, they knew that there was going to be a need to move water more efficiently through the Delta, and that facility would be required. They weren't built because you have five or six counties that extend into the Delta that, none of which want to see a drop of water move out of that region. They also had some financing issues back in the 1950s and 60s. So Governor Pat Brown Senior decided, let's throttle back. Let's just place the pumps at the south. And we've been paying for that decision ever since, from a reliability standpoint. So the benefits of the program, 25 million Californians rely on water supplies through the system. Two out of every three people in the state. 19 million just here on the South Coast. About half the cost of large-scale local projects. The blue bar on the far left is the cost of California water fix for Metropolitan, arranged from $840 to $1,200, that blue bar. You can see desalination, recycled water, distributed household stormwater capture. That's onsite stormwater capture at residential or commercial properties. Very expensive in terms of their water yield. Reduces conflicts with the environment. So you have a natural flow coming down from the Sacramento, the north, the San Joaquin to the south, making its way out through the Delta, shown here. Well, when that southern pump, those southern pumps fire up, you have a reverse flow that's created. And the problem is, with those reverse flows, the Delta smelt, poor swimmers about the size of my pinky, they're an indicator species. As the smelt goes, many believe so goes the ecosystem of the Delta. And those, those smelts are pulled into the pumps and they have no way to get out. That's been the concern now for half a century. The idea is to provide dual conveyance opportunities so you can pull water from the northern extents of the Delta or at the south pumps, depending on the location of fish populations, salinity levels in the Delta, where it makes sense. It'll be a managed system. Roughly 50% of the water will be pulled from the south, 50 from the north. During wet years, more from the north, of course. So it addresses earthquake concerns in climate change. So it addresses earthquake concerns in climate change. The state in recent years, USGS here, it's seventy-two percent probability of a six-point-seven or greater magnitude earthquake in the San Francisco region over the next twenty-plus years, twenty-five years. A long period, this is right out of a Department of Water Resources study, a long period of water export disruption can be expected on the order of one or two, and this is really disconcerting, or more years. For an agency like Cuyagus, that is virtually seventy-five percent reliant in our service area on imported water, that'll keep you up at night. Rising seas, so climate change, we're all aware of what the expectation is going out to the year twenty-one hundred. Now some projections are five to six feet. Well, the beauty of this California water fix, the current pumps are located at three feet above sea level, the new pumps are at thirteen. So new fight in water wars. Critics say it will be used to drain Northern California dry and further harm native fish. Well, one I wanna focus on here is drain Northern California dry. It's just ridiculous. Why? Here's the reality. The bar chart shown here, at sixty-four thousand CFS coming down the Sacramento River, you're only gonna be pulling that green portion, nine thousand cubic feet per second. At no point are you draining the Sacramento River, ever. It's not misinformation, it's disinformation. So federal agencies, green lighted, proposed Delta, there's been a lot of traction, a lot of momentum over the last year on various regulatory permits. And now we're in the process of lining up official votes of support by the various agencies that are gonna have to chime in. You have folks like Peter Boyle or Moyle, who's the fish biologist from UC Davis, who made a recent statement, the status quo isn't working, the only alternative that really works is the tunnels. If we're gonna do anything, this is it. Last couple of slides, I promise. Metropolitan Storage Reserves, the green bars there, that's our dry year storage. Whenever we hit about a million acre feet in Southern California here, we all start getting nervous. Metropolitan, it's member agencies, and that's when we start instituting mandatory cutbacks. We did that in two thousand nine when we hit a million acre feet. In two thousand ten, then we started to rebound, so we called off the allocation. We did it again in two thousand fifteen before Governor Brown came out with his twenty-five percent sliding scale mandatory cutbacks. Nonetheless, if we had had California water fix a decade ago, what impact would that have had on our supplies? There it is. Not one of those years would we have had to enter into an allocation program. That should speak to our ratepayers, your constituents, those that have invested in Diamond Valley Reservoir, in our storage in the Central Valley, in our demand management programs. This is what they want. We're tired of the roller coaster that we've been on, particularly in recent years, from dry and wet conditions. No matter what Mother Nature can throw at us during those wet years, if we can move water through that system and get it into storage, we can live off of that storage during the dry times. Last slide, as I mentioned, just to end. Roughly fifty percent of the population residing in that service area. Cuyagus shown at the extreme northern end of Metropolitan Service Area, over fifty percent of the state's economy, only roughly five percent of the Delta water use out of that system. So local support, you're well aware of all the agencies that have chimed in support for the California water fix. There's just twenty-four shown here. We have a number also that have joined a statewide coalition in support of the program and I wanna call out a couple. Ventura County Taxpayers Association, Democratic Club of Camarillo, Democratic Club of Moore Park, Vasita. This is not a partisan issue, it's not a left or right. It's an issue for California in general. Recently, the city of Thousand Oaks sent a letter in support of California water fix. So we have every city in our service area. So we're well over thirty cities, agencies, and organizations that have supported us. Today at Metropolitan, Metropolitan's board had a special meeting on the water fix. We had ten folks from the Cuyagus service area, including Susan, providing public comments to their board. And in addition, we had members of various city councils within our service area, we had Ventura County taxpayers and others. We feel good about where we are with respect to Ventura County and we'd like to have the county of Ventura on board. If there are any questions that I can ask or answer at this point, I'll do that or turn it over to Jeff.
Mr. Bennett, can I, let me share something. I think this excellent presentation, Eric and I, you've done probably this presentation several times, I'm sure.
Few times.
But the, the other thing I was gonna share with you is that it's alarming, the waste of water and the lack of managing water up north, you know, it's just alarming, what you were showing there, the, the loss of water into the ocean.
It is.
You just.
What's disconcerting, and the reason I show you the Yolo Bypass, even though the, the water fix would not connect to it, just to show you the sheer volume of water that's up in that area. And here we are clawing and scratching to get two, three, four thousand CFS more out of the state project through the water fix, yet we have three, two hundred and fifty thousand CFS going into a flood control channel.
Let me ask one other question.
Yeah.
We, we talk about Northern California, we talk about the water, we talk Fox Canyon and so forth. The cost that we have water here in ocean with trillions and trillions of acre feet of water. And I know it's very expensive to treat ocean water. Have we even looked at that too?
Yeah. And Susan made great presentation in December, I believe, at Supervisor Bennett Forum, and the cost is roughly triple our imported water cost if we were to pursue a regional desalter here.
Is there any way to reduce that cost somehow?
Over time perhaps.
In the future.
The low hanging fruit right now is the imported water.
Because, I mean, we, you know, we're two miles away from the ocean with millions and millions and trillions of gallons of water.
It's physics. It takes a certain amount of energy to get salt out of water. And you can't push it too far. You need a lot of electricity and energy to get that salt out of the water. The ocean is a lot saltier than these brackish desalters, so I don't think there's a lot of hope that the cost is gonna drop much. It, it is, it's tempting. The ocean's right there.
I mean.
But there's cost, and then there's some environmental hurdles to that as well and some permitting hurdles that may be insurmountable.
And there's another county that is doing that, correct? San Luis Obispo? They have, they're doing the desalter, isn't it?
Santa Barbara has an ocean desalination facility, but they got their permits in the nineties.
Okay.
In San Diego.
And San Diego has a large desalter, but they are taking it through the intake of a power plant. And that power plant can't take the water in after next year.
Okay.
And it's not clear whether they can get permits to continue to take that water in from the ocean. And we will see how they do on their permitting for that.
Thank you.
I think it just goes back to show what you presented here is our forefathers are pretty clear. You manage surface water, you don't deal with a lot of the problems and the pumping and everything else, and we've just done a poor job over the years to continue to manage this water. And I think you're looking at some better ideas to make sure that happens. Yeah, no question about it. We have all the water we need.
Supervisor Bennett, it's management.
Thank, thank you very much, Eric. And Mr. Pratt, Susan, do you have anything before?
Yes.
No, Mr. Pratt, you have anything to add before we? Okay, I just, just a couple of things. I, particularly after going through the, the desalinization presentation, I, I think I would disagree with, with Eric in terms of the percentage about it being three times as much and desalinization cost won't grow as fast as a state water project cost will grow. So there is, there's gonna be, there's gonna be a growing narrowing between the cost of state water and desalinization water. Now, there are permitting issues with desalinization, but you can see there are obviously enormous permitting issues going on up here. I would love to hear about Yolo diversion more, but because of our time, I'll ask you that question offline in terms of what's, what the rationale is and what the politics are with that and all of that. But thank you very much, very thorough presentation and stuff.
I think Supervisor Bennett.
All right, I also can wait till offline, but I'm curious as to what happens when the earthquake hits? If the county water, if the agencies throughout the county have some kind of MOU in place before it happens that they will share? I just hate for it to get to a situation, you know, of, you know, the community's not stepping up to the plate to assist other communities.
Right now, because of how dependent our area is on imported water, no matter how much anybody shared, there wouldn't be near enough water. If the tunnels don't get approved by Metropolitan and everybody else in this state, we don't have a choice. Cost, no cost, permits, no permits. We need to build seawater desalination.
That's.
There's, there's no good solution. If the tunnels don't get built, the costs are gonna go up and we have to do it because it's only twenty-five percent of the supply for our whole area. That's not enough for health and safety.
And a giant hole was blown in the tunnels project just a couple of days ago.
Right.
When the, when the farmers decided not to, not to fund seven mil, billion dollars of the, of the cost of, the farmers in Sacramento.
I think that's surmountable, though.
What's that?
I think that's surmountable. The tunnel water, because it's much less expensive than other supplies, I think there'll be buyers for that water.
Well, just so you know, it's not shocking, but Eric has an hour and a half presentation that he shorted in a half hour. So there's more information that he can provide us on the earthquakes and so forth. And that's why we thought it was so important for our board to see this, because these are gonna be hot topics for our board to come. So he has more information, he can set means with you as well.
And, and we don't know what damage, because we don't know what size earthquake and all that, but just that strict question, is there an MOU between the different water agencies on, you know, like we have with our fire departments, we'll come to each other's aid?
The, the challenge is getting the quantity of water we need is, is just not possible.
So we don't have any kind of agreement?
We, we don't. Cuyagus would certainly.
I mean, for example, let's say you're down for ten days or you're down for four months, or it's enough of a period of time where it actually will be very beneficial if those who have share with those who haven't. I'm just wondering if there was, it's always better to do those kind of things in advance. So I just was wondering if.
And in the Cuyagus service area, where seventy-five percent of the population lives, we have about six weeks of reliable supply in Lake Bard and in the Los Poses Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project. So we're okay for six weeks. And we would provide water, as is state law, according to need, in our service area.
Susan, can United, can United then supply that water? Because.
United would certainly, and United did, and we have an understanding, although not written, that United would supply Oxnard and Port Winnebago, and they did after the Northridge earthquake. So there is the possibility to get through for a few months. And Cuyagus is working on the potential of getting local supplies to last for six months. But planning local supplies to last for years and years is, is an incredible cost. And that's the challenge.
It might be something more for like our emergency preparedness folks and to look at in the event of those kind of emergencies, what would we want in place?
Yeah, and we work some with yours, but we might have a water focus meeting to talk about that. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. We'll, we'll move on to Mr. Pratt. I, I would point out, one of the things that'll happen is there will be a restriction of water use in that situation.
Absolutely.
And so the vital staying alive will continue, but water uses that are not essential to people staying alive will simply be restricted. And that's, that's how, that's how the water supply will be stretched in Ventura County. Mr. Pratt, thanks for being patient.
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair Zaragoza, board members, Mr. Powers for the record, Jeff Pratt, Public Works. Today, I'm joined by a number of colleagues and acquaintances from the groundwater world. I think I recognize almost everyone out there. There's some groundwater sophisticates who'll be able to help me if I stumble on anything and certainly with questions at the end. I'll open with a complaint I asked to go before Eric, but didn't happen. Eric is such a PowerPoint showoff. Groundwater, there's no sexy pictures of groundwater, except for pumps. So I've got some pump pictures for you, but no weather, no flooding, no dams over for any of that stuff. As both Eric and Susan talked, the water supply situation in Ventura County is a complicated one. There's a large portfolio from which the water suppliers pull and they include all sorts of things. And I'll just go over a few because they got interspersed with, in their presentations. There's the reclaimed and recycled water. Supervisors there goes asked about ocean desal. There's nearshore desal being proposed by some. Stormwater capture, although Susan started with that, that's becoming an up and coming thing with our new permit that we're going to get from the regional board and some of the environmental concerns, which like to see us put a bunch of water in the ground, stormwater in the ground. And just as a point of interest, the enviros have asked in our previous permits that we capture and treat up to the two-year storm. And as counterintuitive as it may sound, if you do that, you capture about seventy or eighty percent of the total volume of rainfall over time. It, you know, a lot of people like to think those big storms where all the water goes, but that's really not the case. If you capture the more frequent ones, up to a point, you really start capturing a big amount of volume. That's just an aside. Susan talked about something that's up and coming. I've even heard Oxnard discussing, it's called direct potable reuse. They take their sewage water, treat it, and send it back and drink it. There's indirect potable reuse, take that same water, put it in the ground, pull it back out. There is brackish groundwater, which Susan referred to with her brine line. There's a brackish being developed by the Sea of Camarillo. There's even a proposal by your county waterworks districts. Imported surface water, the conservation efforts they mentioned, and last of all, groundwater, which I'm here to talk about. Now, this is important because the groundwater agencies now are shifting gear. For years past, they've been mostly about demand side, you know, how much you pump. Only recently have they started to talk more about the supply side, and that's, I'll tell you why in a moment. Understand that this portfolio requires that there's cooperation regionally. You've gotta be able to shift the water around the county where it's needed. And Susan spoke to some of that with some of the plans they have with the water wholesalers that she talked about. That is going to be a theme, you know, this, this fact that now where we find ourselves, there's going to be this regional cooperation required to fully maximize and effectively use water and keep the costs as low as possible. With that said, something that's familiar in the GMA and to them, it's almost a mantra, all the cheap water's gone. Or it's been spoken for, let me put it that way. The groundwater is all spoken for, that's generally the cheapest water. And it's like, and sometimes orders of magnitude difference between what you can pump the water out of the ground for and what you have to pay for water that comes from other sources. So my presentation is just gonna be an overview of what, when, where, how, why on groundwater. I'm gonna talk about the structure, your, your board's authorities, because they are mixed and they're very confusing. I hope to collect them in one place and get you to ask questions about that. But with that, I'll get started. This is the way water's used or where water comes from in Ventura County. This is countywide, it's from a water report done in twenty thirteen. And again, this is snapshot, this varies from year to year, but it's roughly representative. And what you see is about somewhere over sixty percent of, of water supply in Ventura County comes from groundwater. What you see, the remaining forty percent or so is in those other colors. The recycled water accounts for about three percent. Surface water from sources other than imported, Lake Casitas, river diversions, et cetera, account for about eight percent and then imported water. Cuyagus brings in imported water and the largest supply of imported water, I believe about a hundred thousand acre feet a year.
Little less now with conservation.
Round numbers, and then United typically brings in about five thousand when they can. This, what we know about groundwater is that, oh, and I should also say, water users are broadly placed into two categories. And I'll be using those categories just interspersed here, but there's the agricultural side and then the municipal industrial side, which includes cities and gravel mines and all that other stuff. Ag, self-explanatory, of course. Whoops, sorry, back to, whoops, whoops, whoops. Groundwater levels are largely related to rainfall in our county. This is what this graphic depicts. The bottom's bar chart is rainfall over time from about nineteen seventy-three to twenty fifteen. Where the bars go up, if you look above, that same period is covered. The bars go up, groundwater levels go up roughly. You can see that we monitor groundwater levels in a lot of locations. You see something close to the ocean in the Fox Canyon, and those little black spots are monitoring wells where we check the water levels regularly. As I said, generally groundwater's the least expensive source of water and it also provides local resiliency. It's heavily relied upon in a drought, like we're just hopefully coming out of. But when we're in a drought, groundwater gets hit the most, the hardest, because ag is a big user and of course, if they don't have the rainfall, they need to pump. Ventura County, of all the counties in California, is probably the most complicated from a groundwater perspective. I found that out when we were working on Sigma up in the state, meeting with other groundwater agencies. There are thirty-two significant basins in Ventura County. You see them mapped here. Some of them are relatively simple, they have, there's supply enough for those that use it and they have good water quality, while others are much more complex, and we'll while others are much more complex and we'll talk about some of those, and heavily subscribed and have water quality issues. In our county, as you can see, the groundwater basins, I don't have a laser pointer, are largely adjacent to the river systems. And in our county, you can see four major water systems there. Cuyagus is the lowest, Cuyagus Creek. The next one up is Santa Clara River, then Ventura River, and up in the upper left-hand corner is Cuyama Creek, which drains-
Excuse me, if I could just ask the clerk, do we have one of those pointers?
Oh, there we go. I looked at my pen, sorry.
Your hand is good, but not that good.
There we go. So this is the Cuyagus system. This is a watershed that's largely self-contained in Ventura County. This is the Santa Clara system. We share this watershed with LA County, which will become important later in the conversation. This is the Ventura River system and the unique thing about Ventura is it's entirely independent of state supply because of the way they've developed their resources. Now up here is Cuyama and we're the headwaters to Cuyama. We share that with three other counties and I don't know how many cities. Cuyama? Yeah, Cuy, C-U-Y. So Cuyama. So the, and anyway, I'll get to more on these basins in just a bit. They, so the streams do, with the rainfall and the stream flow, the groundwater systems are recharged. Of these, the Department of Water Resources has determined that 11 of them are what you call high and medium priority basins. And those are basins that the Department of Water Resources have decided are going to get special treatment. Those 11 high and medium priority, they've classified four of our basins as critically overdrafted and those get extra special treatment from the state and I'll be talking about that in just a moment. This is an example of a complicated, complex groundwater system. It's a cross-section. This is a cross-section through the Oxnard Plain roughly running from, let's call it the Pacific Ocean, cutting through the ground and going through the city of Camarillo up into the Las Poses Valley, call Somas about here. So you can see it's actually several different aquifers sandwiched. It's named for this aquifer down here because at the time they formed the Fox Canyon, it was thought that the Fox Canyon aquifer underlay all of those aquifers that were pumped and therefore would be the deciding or governing condition as far as the boundaries were concerned. The two basins or the three basins you see here, Mound, Oxnard, and Pleasant Valley, and Oxnard Four Bay is just part of the Oxnard Plain, are all three critically overdrafted basins. And of course, what you see out here, heavy ag, the city of Oxnard is Port Winnebago and up here you have the city of Camarillo, Las Poses Valley, and Somas. This is a cross-section through the rest of the Fox Canyon aquifer, which T is a 90-degree angle into this and it's called the Las Poses Basin. And then you can see the Fox Canyon through here, which would connect right about here. But you could see that just by this, it's an incredibly complex job to try and figure out where water is and where it's going and how to regulate it. Big issues in this are, you know, there's five cities and there's seawater intrusion at the coast, water quality problems throughout, and the Fox Canyon Board is struggling with that.
You know, that diagram is fascinating. Is it something that's scientifically proven that this is the way the layers are? So if I go down this far, I know I'm in Magoo water. If I go down this far, I know, and you know, is it that much of a-
What this is derived from is I've always understood it, are well drilling records. So, and they're widely spaced and then we draw lines between the wells, assuming that they're, you know, they're equal and we have some information, but we have thousands of wells, you'll see in a moment, in Ventura County from which this has been constructed. So it's as accurate as you can get with those few pinholes in the cushion, so to speak.
Jeff, Jeff, how critical or how bad is the saltwater intrusion?
It's at the coast and I think I have a slide that speaks to that a bit later. It's getting, so it's been known about, as you heard from Susan, since the 50s. DWR came to town in the early, late 70s, early 80s and said, you fix it or we'll fix it for you. That's why Fox Canyon was formed. It's very similar to what they did with Sigma. They've been fighting it ever since, but it's intruded some.
But can we pump some Oxnard water to push that salt back, you know?
That's a possibility that has been discussed and it has its attendant costs and then the question about who pays for it and who benefits and it gets incredibly complex from a public policy perspective.
And the credits too now.
Oh, yeah. And then, yeah, Oxnard wants credits for it.
And was the arresting of the saltwater supposed to be done by 2010?
It was. So when the GMA was formed, it was given the task of creating a sustainable, or a safe yield and arresting seawater intrusion by the year 2010. That didn't happen, but the GMA made some progress, but they didn't reach sustainable yield and the seawater intrusion has continued.
Will you address now or is it later in your slides, the question I asked earlier about whether the pumping for the desalters is bringing in salt intrusion?
So actually, Susan, well, so the answer to that is no, it's actually taking salts out. And the reason is because you pull the salty water up, it creates a void. Rainwater fills it or better quality water fills it. You pull it, you treat it through RO, you get a salt stream that you put in the brine line and send to the ocean and you get better quality water that gets applied to the ground. So in theory, you're actually improving the situation.
So there's this water that comes from rain or something that fills it when Camrosa or whoever's pulling it out, it's actually being filled with clean water?
That's the idea. That's right.
That's the idea or is it the practicality?
Well, so all the proof's in the pudding, we'll be monitoring over time, but in theory, that's the way it's supposed to work.
And could I, could I help with that here in that there's, a lot of that water is Simi Valley?
In the case of Las Poses, right.
Yeah, that the water, the water where you're seeing most of those desalters is up in that Moore Park, Somas, all of that area.
I'm thinking about like Cal State Channel Islands and all in that area there.
Yeah, that's down lower, but those ones-
That's the Oxnard Plain is what I'm talking about.
Okay, yeah, the ones up higher, I think it's, it fit more, the example that Jeff is talking about, but it only works if there's sufficient rain to recharge those because if not, more of the salty water coming from the recycle plant of Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks will fill those areas if the fresh water doesn't. Is that correct?
That's correct. And what has happened over time is that plume that is created by that discharge has started spreading into other parts of the aquifer.
So it's, yeah.
Well, my question was specific though. I was thinking about in the Oxnard Plain, the desalters that are there that are being built and we saw a map with several of them, when they pull the water out, wouldn't that further the desal-
Intrusion. So, no. So what happens is Camrosa, and I don't have a good place, but let's just talk about the city of Camarillo. So there are desalters right here. Pleasant Valley spills into the Oxnard Plain. These are all interconnected. It's false to think of them as isolated and self-contained. They all are interconnected. Las Poses to Pleasant Valley, Pleasant Valley to Oxnard Plain and so forth. So down here, they're pulling, they've got a big mound of salty water that is thought to have been created by the discharges, the stork discharges. They're pulling those salts out, treating them, getting better water that they're using for and sending the salts to the ocean. So there's a net export. Camrosa's doing the same thing, but it's down at their treatment plant. And I have, I'll try to speak to that when I get an aerial overview. So the, but in any case, I was talking about the special treatment we're getting from-
I'm sorry, but before you leave that, would you go back one? I just wanted to be clear on this. But Supervisor Parks, I would agree with you, the, up in Pleasant Valley where you're further away from the ocean and the water-
Can you point that out?
And the water has gotten polluted from the Simi Valley discharge. That theory works. What Supervisor Parks was talking about, but down and closer to the ocean in the Pleasant Valley area, if you could show that on there.
Down here?
Well, I guess closer to the ocean above the perch zone there, that's where it's much more of a question mark if, in my mind, if you pull, if you take desalted water out, are you just going to be causing more saltwater intrusion to come in?
Oh, and you're talking about seawater intrusion versus, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I was not clear.
See, I thought you were just talking about net salts, right? So seawater intrusion.
Yeah, because you wouldn't think there'd be seawater intrusion in Simi Valley, right?
Yes. So should you create pumping troughs down here? Yes, you will draw in more salt, seawater. That's correct.
So the question I had asked, well, what's stopping that seawater from going into those pumps that they're putting throughout to do desalination? And the answer was the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency.
And that was the exact, that was the right answer for the seawater intrusion. So the seawater, so the Fox Canyon, they're tracking that and they're trying to deal with it. So what they do, what happens right now, and there are a lot of people that understand this better than me, but they're actually direct deliveries of water from the Santa Clara River to the folks in Pleasant Valley to offset that pumping so that they don't pump as much, there's not as much. And that's been going on for years and it's part of the way they're combating, the Fox Canyon GMA is combating and United is combating the seawater intrusion. So they're aware of it and they've put measures in place to, net, net, I don't know the answer to the question of whether net, it's, the seawater has continued to move and it's a combination of things that are driving, I suppose.
If I might just clarify maybe one point. Those, that pumping for desalters on the Oxnard Plain isn't more pumping. It's managing the water that's there. It isn't intended that those desalters promote additional pumping. So it's a matter of managing-
Like they just built a new one right over there behind Cal State Channel Islands, for example?
Right.
And so that would be like additional pump in the ground or did some others get turned off?
Well, that was an existing well. So it's, the salty water is all part of the balance.
Okay.
It's not free water and you're right on that point. It's, sorry.
Camrosa was here, he left. You must have heard the question.
You're on point. Every single desalter and the pumping for that desalter needs to be managed as part of the water supply. It's not free extra water. It's managing a quality issue. It's not free extra water.
Just to clean it up is what you're doing there, cleaning the water up? Yeah.
Yeah, just a different type of water. Same water, volume. Yes, and it is cleaning it up, but it's the concern of the sucking of the seawater when they're cleaning up, once it comes out, you brought more water in. So I just wanted the overall net benefit is a desalinated aquifer.
Ready? All right. So back to DWR and their special treatment of us. This is a bird's eye view of all 11 of the high and medium priority basins, just so you can be familiar with them. It's Ojai Valley, Upper Ventura River, Cuyama, Mound, Santa Paula, Fillmore, Pireu, Oxnard, Pleasant Valley, Las Poses, and Arroyo San Rosa. I think I got them all. So, and that, from a state perspective, is one of the more complex systems in the entire state that I've seen. And all of these are charged with getting their basins into sustainable yield by round numbers the year 2040. So how are they doing this? Getting to Supervisor Parks' question, there's several ways. One, which we've talked a lot about in the past few moments, is the Fox Canyon GMA formed in the mid-1980s to battle the seawater intrusion, bring it into sustainable yield. This is a big and important basin to the county. Right, for the past few years, during the drought conditions, we've been pulling upwards 140, 150,000 acre feet out of this a year. Now, that's just a number, but let me, the safe yield of Lake Casitas, which you've got a real good visual on, it's about 20, 21,000 as I recall, just four or five times the yield of Lake Casitas. That's how important this aquifer is. Supports agriculture all over the Oxnard Plain, five cities, agriculture in the Las Poses Valley. And it's managed by a group of stakeholders that are appointed and represent the, all of the stakeholders in the basin. So you've got a city representative, a county representative, United gets a seat, an ag representative, and the mutual water companies all get a seat and they help determine how things will go. What has been a problem for the GMA, we'll get to this later, is when they were formed, they were only given demand side authorities, i.e. the only way to solve problems was to restrict pumping. Of course, that's not going to work, you know, not only has the cities developed, but ag use has gotten more intensive and it really, you know, you really couldn't get to where you needed to be by 2010 unless there were draconian cuts, fallowing of land and stopping development and that, that didn't happen. What has happened more recently, so it's a very reactive form of management and another problem has been that, you know, it's managed mostly by water levels and not until recently have we had predictive tools that help us do the what-if scenarios. So if you do this, what happens, so to speak? So that's all changing and, you know, it's promising for the future. Another management area, and the three I'm going to mention quickly here are special, is what's going on at OB GMA. They also have a special board, much smaller basin, about 5,000 acre feet, I think is safe yield for that one. And then Santa Paula Basin, which is an adjudicated basin. And adjudicated is a fancy term for we went to court and the courts told us how to, how to do it and who got what share. That's expensive, time-consuming, and I'm told by everybody that I've worked with that you want to avoid it at all costs. Now, this is the new tool. Sigma's brought to us, called groundwater, GSA stands for Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And it only applies at this point in time to those 11 high and medium priority basins. The other 21 basins or so are still out on their own. The requirements and responsibilities of a GSA are detailed in Sigma, but chief among them are that they bring the basins into sustainable yield and they do it within a prescribed period of time, as I said, 2040. The previous three agencies I met were given special status inside of Sigma and they were given the first right of refusal on whether or not they wanted to become the Groundwater Sustainability Agency. All three of them chose to be the Groundwater Sustainability Agency for their areas, so those three were settled. What does that mean to us? That the long and short of it is, your board told us to participate in the GSAs, there are six of them instead of 11. So I'll talk more about that in a little bit. So you saw before how water's used. Now here's the way water's used by both M and I in the silver on the left and ag on the right. For ag, the bulk of their water, 85%, comes from groundwater. There's a little bit, about 9% from surface water, a little bit of recycled water, 4% and then some growers, I believe mostly in Las Poses Valley, use some state water, District 19, District 1, that's about 2%, that accounts for about 2%. Whereas on the municipal industrial side, the bulk of the water's imported, which Susan spoke to. There is a large component of groundwater, 34%. What does that do? Keeps rates down. State water's probably six or seven, six times more expensive than groundwater as you pump it, not counting the treatment, I suppose. Now, of course, ag, the importance of low-cost water is important to ag, but even there's a resistance of, by M and I, to give up any of their groundwater shares because of the impact it has on rates. Your board, the next few slides describe sort of the different ways in which your board has interacted with, on the waterfront in the past. I'll be very brief, but a lot of the stuff's not well-understood by many and I thought it was important to go through. You have, your board has five basic ways it weighs in on water issues. There's first is a county well ordinance, which we're going to talk about quickly. And what you see here are approximately 9,000 wells that we track and follow inside, as county staff in Watership Protection District. Also, you have the Watership Protection District Act and that act's 1947. It gives your board a variety of authorities. It's a huge shopping list. It includes, you know, preventing diminution or export of water and includes buying water supplies. There's a whole bunch of things. We've largely been focused on public safety and flood control with watershed in past decades, but the last two decades, that's changed a lot. Third, you have land use authorities, which both directly and indirectly impact water supply. How many people are there, whether or not they're on septic, what do you allow them to do with the building codes, that sort of thing. Now you're also, your board's a pumper in several basins, Mound, Cuyama, and others. You have water districts which pump from the groundwater. So those are all different authorities you exercise in the pursuit of sort of sound groundwater management. Now well ordinance, so you've got 9,000. Of those 9,000, approximately 4,000 are active. Of the rest, about 550 have been abandoned. Abandoned is different than destroyed. What the well ordinance tries to do is say, check water levels, check water quality. If somebody gets rid of their well, make sure they destroy it and if you want to, put a moratorium on, well, you've used all of those authorities. Well, these are the wells that people said, we abandoned them, but we're not going to destroy them. We like to keep them around for whatever reason. So there are open penetrations into the groundwater aquifers we all use, which have the potential to introduce constituents you don't want there. We have accounted for about 2,500 destroyed wells. Now if you're doing the math with me, we still got about 2,000 that are missing. So what those are, we call can't find, can't locate. A lot of those predated the well ordinance, which I believe was late 60s and have subsequently been covered by land development, you know, cities and so forth. been covered by land development, you know, cities and so forth, and/or they just can't be found. Let's see, I got to catch up on my, whoops, 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 notes. So we conduct water level measurements, water quality sampling, we supply that data to others. We maintain a database that goes back, for wells anyway, that back to the 1970s when we started this, and some where we had information from others going back into the early 1900s. All this data is shared with others in the hopes that it helps them manage the resource a little better. Here's an example of Fox Canyon. This is something the Fox Canyon Board sees on a regular basis. What you see are groundwater levels. Those are topos, if you will, the groundwater levels. If it's red, it's below sea level, way below sea level. If it's yellow, it's below sea level. As you get into the greens and blues, that's when you're reaching the sea level. So, and this is just one example, at one stage in time, it's not, so I'm not trying to draw any trends from this, it's just how the data's used. Here's another way it's used, in Fillmore Piru Basin. What you see on the bottom are concentrations of various things we track when we're monitoring the quality, and then the various water levels, the hydrograph you see going from '72 to 2014, where we're measuring those wells there. So it should be, it's important to note that Watership Protection District is the keeper of the water record, and I'm talking about rainfall, every, stream flows. We got dozens of gauges and all these wells that monitor. And we collect, compile, and produce that data for others on an annual basis. And it goes back, some of our water records go back to the late 1800s. And that's not well-understood. In the past, groundwater management has been relied on this data that was collected, and it's been used by a variety of water management agencies. Historically, they've operated with independent missions and within their jurisdiction areas, sort of separate from one another. It's a collection of water companies, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, and individuals operating in their, essentially their own interest. It's very much tactical, it's not strategic. You stay around your borders, you look at the, you know, the status quo, what's coming up in the near future. Infrastructure improvements outside of your jurisdiction are hard because there isn't really any authority or any large coordination. The drought has changed a lot of that. The drought has had people start talking to each other and working together more than they had in the past. And there's no forcing function, which is what Sigma is, on intra or interregional cooperation, and no regional mechanism for funding. So this is what the water map looks like. There's more than 150 water purveyors in Ventura County operating as sort of independently. And of those, somewhere near 50 supply drinking water. Supervisor Parks had a very important part of the water supply. They come in all shapes and sizes. You've got the wholesalers, and you saw how big they were, they're the watersheds, it's Casitas United and Caigus on each of the creeks. You've got the retailers, that's the cities and so forth, and some smaller ones. You've got mutual water companies, private water companies, non-county Ventura, county water districts, like Pleasant Valley County Water District. You've got small water companies, and it goes all the way down to individuals. Now, what Sigma's done is asked all of these people to start working together, and I'll get into more of that later. Now, the other authorities of the, I'm only going to talk about three of those sorts of authorities that you use, are Watership Protection District authorities. And the way you've used those authorities in the past is you purchased state water. Your board, in the middle of the 60s, purchased 20,000 acre feet of state water, and then you sublet it to others. You're still attached to that because once you touch the state water, you're, you're married to the state until the state water project goes away, and I think that's 2050, something like that.
Hopefully never.
Or, you're married to them until 2050 at least, and so there may be another chance to renegotiate. So the, and you, I think, built the first major water supply feature, Matilla, which was surface supply, but what a lot of people don't know is there's a long pipeline out of Matilla that recharged the groundwater in the Ojai Basin. And that was going on until the 80s, when the person who had the recharge field in their property dug it up because interfered with his ag operations, apparently. That's what he told me. So, and I don't know much more about it than that.
Mr. Pratt?
Sir?
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have, still have closed session that we have to go back into, and, and I have, and my, my antenna says, saying this board is having trouble following the intricate details. My question is, can you-
Oh, yeah.
-in about 10 minutes-
Easy.
-do your, do your thing?
I'll do it in five.
And then we, no, I don't want you, last time I did that to you years ago, you rushed so fast, we couldn't get anything out of it. I'm just, I'm just trying to say, we probably should shoot for about 10 more minutes. Can you do the highlights in 10 minutes?
Sure. So you've got the district authorities, and we'll skip over that. This is what the district brings to the table. You've got the county authorities. This is what the county brings to the table. And really, chief among these are land use. These are all different county practices, and I'm talking about separate from, but the land use stuff is important. And traditionally, it's been only loosely tied to the resource usage. Now, with what's going on with the GSA, for example, in Arroyo Santa Rosa, one of the high and medium priority basins, we're already meeting with environmental health, talking about what to do about septic systems, and, and that has traditionally been a disconnect because there are water quality problems in the Arroyo Santa Rosa Basin that need to be dealt with. And traditionally, the water agencies haven't had the ability to do that. So, and of course, the building codes. You know, if you want to use purple pipe, you know, recycled water, you're going to have to build that into the building codes, require builders to, if you want to use gray water, you want to use advanced septic treatment, that sort of thing. So, so back with things where plentiful, groundwater is largely unmanaged, Fox Canyon is the first sort of foray the state had into coming and saying, hey, let's do this. Ojai Basin followed just after that, and the Santa Paula adjudication was done in 1996. And then, more recently, the game changer, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So there's been an evolution along with those requirements and just the strategies that have been used to manage groundwater. And I could say that, you know, based on my experience at the state, and Fox Canyon's long time working on this, that in Ventura County, we are way ahead of the rest of the state in our approach and evolution. One of the things you did prior to Sigma, because the drought had everyone's attention, was you put in place a well moratorium, you did that using the well ordinance. Sigma came along just after that, and I can talk, you know, I don't know if you've heard enough about Sigma or you'd like to hear more, but I can talk a little bit about that. But essentially, it says either you do it local, or we'll, we'll do it for you. It introduced two new stakeholders formally to the process of managing water. That were the land use authorities, i.e. local governments, and the environmental community, which, and they have formal seats at the table, they're called out in Sigma, and it wasn't, it's, it's a new practice. Another thing Sigma did that is incredibly important, it gave supply side authorities, it gave the ability, after adopting GSPs, to generate funding for projects that could be regional, that can increase supply. Because as I said, there aren't many who want to continue cutting supply. In fact, I don't know anybody that wants to do that. Another thing Sigma demanded was stakeholder participation. That means the whole community. When we presented GSP for any of the GSAs, we're going to have to show that we worked with everyone, and that everyone had an opportunity for input. What you see here is something going on in Fox Canyon where there's a call for just ideas on projects. How do you think we should increase the supply? We hope to get some input from all sorts of sources on that, and we hope that we'll be able to use some of them. So what Sigma says is that you have to avoid undesirable results. And those undesirable results come in six categories: surface water depletion, storage reduction, degraded water quality, seawater intrusion, lapsed subsidence, and lowering, chronic lowering of groundwater. So, and I don't know why these slides are messing up, they didn't do that before. I need to get Eric's help.
How come you're going like that?
Can you fix this, Eric, on the fly? So, anyway.
I don't know why the suppressor's going like this, you know?
Time? Yeah.
I'm not scratching.
Eric uses all my time. Let's see, so, I'm ready, I'm ready. Yeah, so the theme that I didn't express too well is all the regional planning, regional cooperation that's, that's played out through Sigma, and it's starting already. And then, you know, this is the future of, of water projects, they're going to have to be multi-use.
You're doing good, Jeff, you're doing good.
And, wait until you see this. I'm done.
Well, I, I'd just like to thank you, Jeff. We were giving everyone 20 minutes, and we allowed you to go over, but it just shows us how much we have going on in groundwater. So on the state level, on the county level, I, I just think it speaks volumes for how much we're doing, and there is not enough time for us to be able to talk to that. But we can all contact you also, Pratt.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and any, and I've got a fleet of staff behind me that can actually do this better than I can. The, and I should say, in my own defense, it was the questions that caused me to go over, not to, and Eric got an hour.
You're right.
I do, I don't, I don't, I didn't see that slide, Jeff, when you were going fast, I didn't see the slide go through, but, but maybe we missed it. But do you have a slide that shows what the groundwater levels are now in these various basins, so that the board has a feel for how far below we, below sea level we are in Pleasant Valley, and how we're actually not below sea level? You know, we actually have plenty of water in Las Poses, that, that weird, you know, distinction. I don't know if you have, I didn't see one of those.
I have only one slide that speaks to that. And it's, we only, because we haven't done the studies, I mean, I don't have relative, the up and downs of the other basins, we have those water levels, and we can prepare something, but we don't have anything off the shelf. What I have, what I showed earlier is a slide that's been used at-
There you go.
And so what you see there are that, that in what is essentially the Oxnard Plain and Pleasant Valley, and this is the west Las Poses, that most everything's below sea level. When you get to this green right here, that's zero to 20 feet below, so this is, starts to be kind of sea level. And then up here in Las Poses, there's a fault right here. And this fault separates the east Las Poses from the west Las Poses. But what you see here are water levels that are way above sea level, and there's a variety of factors that contribute to that. But one of them is that, you know, there's all the wastewater that comes in from Simi Valley. They have two sources. One is from their treatment plant, and the other is the fact that they have to pump groundwater down to the low end of the city because otherwise the buildings would float. Simi's perched like this, they put water in up here, it comes out down here, so they pump it, and, and so there's two sources that constantly feed that. It comes into the Arroyo Las Poses, and then it bleeds over into the other parts of Las Poses Basin.
But this talks about elevation, not how full they are.
No, that is, that is how full they are.
Well, it's, it's-
Well, I mean, how far is elevation? I mean, that, the red is more than 100 feet below sea level, right, Mr. Pratt?
Oh, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so when you say-
Right, but how much water is in it? Is it completely full, or is it?
Oh, no.
That's what I'm talking about. So this is all elevation of where the water resides versus how full the aquifers are? Am I correct?
Yes, but, yeah, so Susan showed you a slide that showed historically if you poked a hole in this, water shot up. So that was water, that means the bowl was full. Now, the, it was in, so the, so this is, what you see is a bowl that's emptying. I don't know if any artesian, are there any, so even in Las Poses, where it's blue above sea level, there are no places where it's artesian.
So it's accurate to say that back, back, back before, before pumping started, all of these aquifers were above sea level?
I, that would be, yeah.
Although we don't have exact data, it, you would assume they're all above sea level because as soon as you punched a hole in them, there's an interesting picture, but when they originally did this, you could pump water to a second-story home without a pump. You just put the, you put the, you put the pipe in the ground, and there was so much water pressure. So you certainly weren't 100 feet down. So yes, basically, if you're 100 feet below sea level, there's 100 feet of capacity in there. So the basins are not full.
Correct.
And this shows you, and once they go below sea level, then you introduce the risk of saltwater intrusion. And so that's where you have it. It's most severe down there, closest to that. Can you show where the saltwater intrusion is primarily coming in?
I can. There's two primary locations, Enraf, Mudoo Canyon, and then right here in the Port One Inere.
So you see those two places. But out of everything about groundwater, if there was one takeaway slide, I think it's this one. We have this weird situation where in Las Poses, you actually have high water level, high, high water levels, but poor water quality. And then down lower, the water quality isn't as bad, although it is, we're starting to get saltwater intrusion. The water quality is better, but it is, has been pumped much more, you know, it's not just been pumped, but there hasn't been this constant replacement, so it is quite a bit below sea level at this point in time. That's the biggest takeaway, I think, from groundwater for our board at this point in time, for them to hold on to.
Yeah, we're seeing degraded water quality and, and seawater intrusion.
Did you, I know that we now have some technology out there that can tell you how much water is in an aquifer. Do we have that available? Are we using that kind of technology?
I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Wasn't United working on something like that? Was there a-
Yeah, I've heard, yes.
So that, that might be coming in the future, being able to have a reliable understanding of how much water's in the aquifers?
And I might point out, for example, in Ojai, there's a lot of water really deep, but whether that's water that people can access in any kind of reasonable way is, is a secondary question. So you might find that there's a lot of water, but if it's, if it's really deep, or if it causes saltwater intrusion-
Or land subsidence.
-seawater intrusion, et cetera, there's, so there's multiple factors besides just how much water there is.
So right here, we're really deep with the pumping, and what we're finding here, what we're seeing is the water quality's being degraded, not by seawater intrusion, but by the salts that are in the sediments that surround the water that is at that depth. And so that's increasing. So you get, you sometimes get more degraded water quality, and then you have the additional problem potentially of land subsidence when you start. So while there may be a lot of water in there, it may not be water you can use.
And could you speak to the desalters going in in the Las Poses Basin? And now that you have the chart, perhaps it's, it's a little more obvious that what you're doing is treating the poor quality in the Las Poses Basin. There are a number of desalters that were on Susan Milligan's chart in, up in that area.
There were only two that I saw in her chart that were in the Las Poses. One, one is proposed by Water Works District 1, right about there. And so the mechanism I described about the salts that were importing into the system is the correct one. The salty water would be pulled out, treated, used, the better quality water would be applied to the land, the salts would head down the brine line, and then it would create a void that the rainwater could fill. That particular aquifer fills very quickly, sandy, and, so that's one. And then Cam Rio has one down here in the Pleasant Valley area that has been approved and is under design, as I understand it right now.
Right, okay, good. Hey, to the three of you, thank you very much. We went a long time, I know, way, way over 20 minutes with each one of you. And Jeff, you got the shortest stick. We, we appreciate you, but I know you worked hard to get those slides ready, but with us having a closed session in there, et cetera, it was time for us to-
Yeah, sorry about that.
-to, to move on. So Supervisor Long, thank you very much for joining forces on this. I'll turn it back over to you for-
Just closing comments is, thank you very much. It was a lot of education at one time, but we felt it was more important to have the information, especially when we are all sitting on many different boards that are talking about water. And to have that in the back of our minds is extremely important. So thank you very much.
And also want to thank you, Susan, and Eric, and Jeff. Very educational, very educational, and good presentations, too. Eric, boy, boy, you were really going into it. I loved your presentation, that was great.
So I'll move to receive and file.
Receive and file, okay. Got a second? Please vote. And we're going into closed session again, and Leroy, are we going to have any announcements after that?
No announcements. No announcements.
So we're going to adjourn from closed session, and we'll adjourn from there. Thank you.